Gracious God, we have gathered here tonight to conduct business of the town. We do so recognizing our responsibility to our citizens and ourselves to deliberate together and to make the best decisions possible. We ask for your guidance tonight, that our thoughts might be quickened by your spirit, that we might exercise our own wisdom and giftedness that each member has. We recognize, Father, the manifold blessings that you have given us to live in such a wonderful country, such a blessed state, and a wonderful town, with wonderful citizens that care very much about the welfare and quality of life issues in our town. Be with us now, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored under Texas law, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. It is now time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Holly, I don't see that anybody turned in a speaker's form for this?
No, Mayor.
Does anybody in the audience want to speak during citizens' presentations? Hearing none, we will move on to announcements and reports. Item number one, Town Manager Sedell's update regarding the following discussion and provide input regarding same: aquatic facility schedule, town hall construction, Lakeview construction, and street reconstruction. Stephen?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to provide a few updates. The first is the aquatic facility schedule. So, the regular season ends August 21st. That's, I think, the day before school starts on the 22nd. And then, we are open on the weekends through September 5th, which is Labor Day, and we'll be open on Friday as well of that weekend, since some folks take that Friday off. So, overall, the pool's been great this year. We've got a lot of great feedback with some of the ways we, I think, improved it for our residents and look forward to enhancing those features over the off-season. Town hall construction, it's very exciting. I know you guys can see what's happening down there. The piers for the main part of the building have been drilled. We did not have any significant issues. I think we only had one or two piers that had any type of water, and it wasn't very much. Now, they'll be drilling this week the plaza part in front, where the front door's open, and I believe there's either 16 or 19 piers in that section. And they'll start laying the grade beams probably this week or next week, and they're starting the retaining wall, and that'll take about three to four weeks. We did get our sewer study back, and there is capacity in the existing sewer line, so we should be able to move forward with all the utility locates as planned. So, that was all good news. The dry weather, while it's hot and miserable, it's great for construction and great for us, so keeps us on schedule and hopefully ahead of schedule. So, overall, things are going very well. I think, once we have finished the piers and some of the other work, we'll be able to come back to council, and we'll have a pretty good idea of where we stand, because the entire project's been bought out. And so, at this point, it's really what do we want to do with the remaining, some of the remaining funds that are available. The Lakeview construction, Lakeview, we should finish rolling or installing the sod by this Friday, and followed by a walk-through of the project next week with Tignall Perkins. And we anticipate soccer being able to use the fields probably the beginning of October. We're watering them now, and we want to make sure that turf gets really well established before we let kids and everybody else on those. And so, it looks like probably the first part of October, we'll be working with soccer to let them know that. And then, finally, street reconstruction. I know folks may be seeing different parts of town have minor pieces of panel replacement, and what we're trying to do is extend the life of our streets without doing a full-blown reconstruction of them. So, we're looking at areas that have failed, perhaps if we can extend the life by a few years, that helps buy us some time. One area that we're going to go back and fix is probably along Trophy Club Drive. It's the southbound lanes, and this, you know, it's north of Durango as you head towards Bobcat, so it's southbound on that side. It's the original part of the street. They've been there for a very long time. And with all the moisture and then the drying out, that street portion has really deteriorated very, very quickly. It's on our capital replacement plan for a few years, a couple of years from now, but we're not sure that the lanes will be able to make it even six months. So, what we're trying to do is plan to replace part of those lanes, and what will that will probably entail is, we will change the mix to get a higher PSI, so we can get traffic on it sooner with breaks, but more than likely, we're going to have to probably shut down that part of the street and reroute traffic. So, we'll be working on a traffic management plan when that comes to fruition and make sure the public knows kind of what's going on with message boards, social media, et cetera. So, overall, we're trying to extend the life of the streets using that street maintenance sales tax and letting our visitors pay for street maintenance in town and trying to have a great investment for everybody's homes and businesses. So, that's it.
Thank you, Stephen. Council, any questions that you have about those items? Hearing none, we'll move on to item two. Town Council Liaison Updates: Discussion of Same Economic Development Corporation 4B. The liaison is Councilmember Rowe. Parker Recreation Board liaison is Philip Schaffner. Ryland, you have a report?
No, sir. I did not attend the meeting. My wife had something to go do that night, which is pretty common, so I stayed home, and Stephen's got a great report for us.
I have an excellent report on the EDC meeting. It was a very short meeting. It was predominantly all budget-related. They did approve or recommend adoption of the budget. You will have that budget before you to adopt as part of the regular budget process. The biggest change really is the additional sales tax dollars that the board will be receiving this year is actually going to go towards an incentive line item, which essentially is fund balance, so that when there are prospects out there, such as breadwinners and others, that we're capable of being able to help make that a reality. So, that's the biggest change in the budget.
All right, thank you. Anybody have questions about that meeting? All right, hearing none. Stephen, I mean Philip.
I did not attend the meeting either, so Ryland and I are two for... Oh, the reason I didn't attend is because there was no real, I don't have the excuse of my wife. There was really no, there were no real agenda items, only approval of minutes and staff updates. I did listen to the audio and everything that was mentioned. Council is already up to speed on, so I really have no report. I think that's why we went last year from 11 to 7, so maybe it's time to go to 5.
All right, any comments there? Yes?
Yeah, it's kind of a cross between that and the Lakeview construction. I heard kind of through the grapevine that TCR Football is looking for more field space. And, you know, I want to make sure with Lakeview coming online that we are realizing that's a multi-use space, that we have to come up with a plan for soccer football and maybe lacrosse. And I want to get out ahead of it, that I don't want to be sitting here in a year from now hearing the same thing. So, I don't know if we have to call the associations in, if we have to come up with a plan, but I want to get on it now, so.
Right. It'll probably take a coordinated effort to make sure how we allocate that time.
Right, right.
We'll work on it internally.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, I would like to pull number five.
All right, so Councilmember Schaffner wants to pull number five. Anybody else have an item? All right, hearing none. I'm going to read items 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, and 9, and afterwards would entertain a motion to approve those items. Item 3, consider to take appropriate action regarding the minutes dated June 28, 2016. Item 4, consider to take appropriate action regarding the minutes dated July 12, 2016. Item 6, consider to take appropriate action regarding the award or rejection of proposals for professional auditing services for the Town of Trophy Club and authorizing the Town Manager or his designee to execute all necessary documents. Item 7, consider to take appropriate action regarding financial invariance report dated June 2016. Item 8, consider to take appropriate action regarding a resolution repealing Resolution Number 2016-14, authorizing participation in various cooperative purchasing programs and adopting a new resolution, authorizing participation in various cooperative purchasing programs in accordance with the town's procurement policy and procedures authorizing execution of any and all necessary agreements and participation in the cooperative programs by the mayor or his designee, and approving related contracts and the payment of related fees in accordance with the budget and providing an effective date. Item 9, consider to take appropriate action regarding an interlocal agreement between the Town of Trophy Club and the City of Roanoke for the purchase of goods and services and authorizing the Town Manager or his designee to execute all necessary documents. Do I have someone wishing to remove consent items 3, 4, 6 through 9?
I mean approve. I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items 2, 3, 4, 6, 8, and 9.
I'll second.
Mayor Protim Lamont makes the motion, and Councilman Perro seconds. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. All right, we'll go to item 5. Consider to take appropriate action regarding a utility billing agreement between the Town of Trophy Club and Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number 1 and authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute all necessary documents. Philip, you wanted to pull that item.
Yeah, the reason I pulled that item is, I started reading through the agreement, and the MUD is asking for a flat fee of 12, is it 12?
$14,400.
It's $14,400 a year.
It's $1,200 a month.
$1,200 a month. So, if you notice on your utility bill, there is an item at the bottom that says that if you are past due, there's a 15% charge, late fee. And our fee is, what's the total monthly fee for a, like 12?
I can tell you, just a second. For garbage?
Yeah, for all of it total.
$22.17.
For all, it's $14.94 plus sales tax.
$22.17.
And then, $6 for storm drainage.
That's correct.
So, it's what?
$22.17.
$22.17 is our total. So, 15% of that is $3.33. I found out today that we don't keep that late fee. That all belongs to the MUD, every bit of that. So, if you go to their packet for the last couple of years, you'll find that they list every month late notices that are sent out. And so, if you calculate that, and FY 2013, there were 4,982 late fees sent out for a total of $16,590.06 just in our late fees, not in the MUD. The MUD gets additional fees for wastewater and water. That's our fees that the MUD keeps. 2014, it was $5,137 late fees for $17,106.21. FY 2015, $5,648 late fees for $18,807.84. And already this year, there's been $3,860 for $12,853.80. Now, I went and listened to the meeting where they discussed this fee, and what they did, how they calculated this fee of $1,200 a month was to take their service fee, which is done by Data Pro, and their staff time. So, they came, they come up with, they spend $2,346 a month for Data Pro, which bills everybody in the city. And then, staff time, they calculated our fee being about $677. So, they totaled that to $3,000. It's about $3,000. So, what they did is they took, our part of Data Pro is 2346, so it's probably $4,600. So, they took just a little bit less than 50%, and that's how they came up with that $1,200 fee. There was no mention that they keep these late fees that we provide. And so, I think that, you know, I think that people get frustrated at dual government. You know, we hear it all the time. "Oh, you're duplicating services, you're duplicating services." And this is one area that we don't duplicate services. This is one area that we have worked together throughout these years, where they bill our storm drainage fee, they bill our trash fee, they pay the town. Now, all of a sudden, they want to change this agreement, even though they're getting these fees, which more than cover their cost, these late fees, they want to change these and tack on an additional $14,400 to the residents. And so, I think that's where people get frustrated, that, you know, the dual government is costing us. It's costing us more than what we should be paying. They like that we're cooperating and working together, but then, all of a sudden, the MUD wants to change that and tack on an additional $14,000 that the residents have to pay, when that coverage in late fees is already more than covering that. And so, that's why I wanted to pull that, and just, I don't think that, I don't even think the MUD Board fully understood that they were already getting those late fees, and that was more than covering that cost associated with, you know, that billing services. So, that's my little rant.
So, is your proposal to refer this item to the Town Manager to communicate with the MUD and get back with us?
I think that we probably should tap the brakes a little bit before we approve this, because I really, honestly, listening to the MUD meeting, I don't think that that was ever mentioned that they get those late fees that are tacked on, in addition to their late fees, they're also tacking on our late fees. Now, don't get me wrong, we need the MUD to bill. You know, it's kind of hard to, for us to bill on our own. It's going to cost additional money, and how do we recoup that money? We can't stop trash service, you know? We can't give allied waste a list of, you know, addresses not to do trash services. So, they have the upper hand where they can disconnect water. You know, you get your water disconnected, you're going to pay your late fees, and you're going to pay to get that service restored. So, we need them, but I don't think they fully understood that those late fees were more than covering the cost associated with this service. So, perhaps there should be a referral back to the MUD Board, you know, to see if they've considered that and bring that back to them.
All right, so...
So, I will make a motion that we refer this, you know, back to the MUD Board and have the Town Manager get with the district manager and see if we perhaps can come to a better agreement.
I'll second.
It's my motion.
All right, so we have a motion to refer the item to the Town Manager to get with the MUD district manager, express the concerns about this particular charge that we're talking about, and bring up the fact of the monies that they're collecting in late fees related to our revenue. It is seconded by Councilmember Rowe. Any further discussion?
I'll just say that I want to give their board a chance to discuss this, because I think Philip caught something, which he tends to do. The latest in the long line of minutiae that Philip's caught in the last, however many years it's been now, that are beneficial. So, I want to hear what they have to say about it, because it almost sounds like the late, hanging on to the late fee is a perfect way to recoup the cost and everybody's hole, and there's no additional contract that has to be maintained. So, maybe that's why, maybe this is why there was never a remittance back to the town for billing services. And like Philip said, not only do we not have the mechanism by which to enforce something upon someone if they didn't pay, but who wants to have to deal with paying another bill to the town for $22 every month? That's a major pain in the back, so, yeah.
And logistically, it doesn't work.
Yeah.
You know, you, people can put trash out, you know, anytime. We won't know, you know, the trash folks pick up the trash. There's really no recourse, and so, we need the utility billing aspect, because that's how full-service cities do it. We're not really set up that way. What we'll do is, I would love to have one less agreement, because that's just one more thing to have to create and manage and review. So, I'll go back to the district manager and discuss.
Yeah, and...
All right, so...
And let me just say this, because the Mayor Protim actually passed out a draft language, you know, had we not gone down this route. And I don't disagree with what he's done. There is a cost associated with what they're doing for us, and probably we should have some sort of mechanism that if at any time, late fees drop below that certain level, that we recoup whatever they're out.
Make them whole.
Yeah. And it may be that $14,400 was conservative, I don't know, but that's something that you can take to them.
All right, we have a motion and a second before us. Are you ready to vote? All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. The matter is referred to the Town Manager to communicate appropriately. It is 7:22 PM, and we will convene into a public hearing. The first item on the public hearing is to conduct a hearing regarding the Trophy Club Crime Control and Prevention District CCPD budget for fiscal year 2016-17 submitted to the Town Council by the CCPD Board. Is there anyone wishing to speak on that item? Hearing none, we'll move forward to item 11, the second one on the public hearing. Conduct a public hearing regarding amending Section 14.02.251 temporary use of the Town Council Code of Ordinances in order to add the use of a portable classroom and provide for other amendments. I believe I have some people who signed up to speak on that item. Right, Holly?
We do. First up is Erin Myers.
Myers, if you would come forward, identify yourself into the microphone with your address, and then you have up to four minutes.
Okay, my name is Erin Myers, and I live at 10 Winstead Court in Trophy Club. So, I'm a parent, have three kids. Well, I have two kids at Beck. One has graduated to Medlin. I've been a volunteer at Beck in the PTA for six years, including being a past PTA president. And I first want to start off with saying what a great school we have. We have decorated teachers, a decorated principal. We're very lucky to have the school that we have. We also have very involved parents, which is, I think, why a lot of us are here, to be involved in what's going on with our school. We all know our district is growing, and we, I mean, obviously, you have to deal with that, but one of my main concerns is I feel like the district just kind of tried to drop the portable in our backyard without saying anything. And everyone at Beck, we're used to being communicated with. Our principal communicates with us, our teachers communicate with us, our PTA communicates with us, but the district never sent out an email, never let us know what was going on, why it was going on, and the only reason we found out about it is, I think, they realized, oops, there's an ordinance, we have to ask for permission. So, here we are, a couple of weeks before school starts, having this discussion. So, what are the concerns? Well, safety, I have no doubt that if there's any safety concerns, Mr. Conklin and Mrs. Smith would not ever let students go out there. But there are the what-ifs, you know, the rare instances. This portable will go outside the brick and mortar of the school, even though it will be locked up. There's weather concerns. Also, the length of time that it's going to be used, this could possibly be two to three years, which could be nearly half of a student's career at Beck. And the way that it was done, no communication, we weren't given any other options that were looked at. I mean, maybe they did look at other options, but they didn't explain that to any of us. And then, also the concerns, if the portable doesn't pass and we have to have students on the stage and art on a cart, the kids that will be in class on the stage will have the lunchroom to deal with, that will be their learning environment, and they'll have an entire grade level, one at a time, in their learning environment, making noise. Even if you try to keep the kids that are at lunch quiet, I don't know how many kids per grade there are, but picture 100 kindergarteners try to stay quiet, so a classroom on the stage can learn. And those kids need to be able to talk and visit with their friends during their lunch hour. And then, we also have a wonderful art department, and I would hate to take that classroom away for our students to have that opportunity. So, suggestions, redraw the lines. Lakeview and Roanoke both have rooms in their schools. Has this been looked at? Is it a good solution, is it not, and why? Bus kids to other schools. Ask maybe kindergarteners or fifth-grade parents to volunteer. Kindergarteners haven't started at the school yet, so if they started at Lakeview or Roanoke, they probably wouldn't know any different. The fifth graders will be going to Medlin in a year, and they can rejoin their Beck friends at Medlin, or move some of the students that live with the Roanoke address to Roanoke Elementary. So, I think the bottom line is, our parents want to be involved, we want to be communicated with to let us know what the district is doing and why, and we want to be able to support our students and our teachers and our administration through this process. And I guess my last point is, we need to be proactive. So, when the bond is introduced, are they looking two years down the road? Are they looking five years down the road? Are we going to build onto the school, and in two years, need another portable? And so, those are all my questions about the situation. So, thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. All right, the next person that signed up was Tiffany Nefius. Do you want to, Tiffany, you want to come forward and identify yourself, state your address in the microphone, please?
Hello, I'm Tiffany Nefius. I live at 214 Fresh Meadow. Now, the cost of this building was estimated, I believe initially, at around $100,000, but that was without a bathroom within the building. Adding a bathroom is great. P&amp;Z was able to calm several of the parents' concerns by making sure bathrooms will be included. I know several people, thank you. It will also, including the bathroom will also increase the cost of the portable, require more installation factors, and take longer to complete. I do not feel a portable is the most fiscally responsible decision the district can make when addressing overcrowding. Along with a higher cost for the building and higher cost for install, there'll be higher cost utilities. I believe portable buildings are priced, or priced at residential rates versus commercial rates for utilities. And I actually sent them an email the other day about water. If they have the bathrooms in there, that's great, but what about the students refilling their water bottles throughout the day? Are they going to have to go to the building? Are they going to have, like, the five-gallon jugs delivered? That's also an additional cost, and what I could find, it's going to be about $300 to $500 a month. The district is in a unique situation, because this area has grown at a very rapid pace. However, the town is in a unique situation, because we have two very good elementary schools within half a mile of one another. By granting waivers, as was suggested at one time, little to no money would be spent by the district. Parents would not be forced to go out of their way either, a large number of Beck students passed by Lakeview on their way to the school, as is. The district essentially already has that waiver process in place. It's called an intra-district transfer. I requested one of these transfers prior to the last school year for my girls, and I wrote, I handwritten a letter, saying that the school was already overcrowded, the family that bought our house did not have students, and we were one street over from the zone. They denied my request. It does not look like they're trying to address the overcrowding situation in a more fiscally responsible manner. We are likely to be hearing of a bond proposition soon to add space in classrooms to Beck. This would be a third expansion in five or six years. I completely understand that it is hard to prepare and plan for exponential growth, but the district should have been aware of this growth during the previous expansion and planned accordingly. Now, the town is faced with a situation where they are asked to completely change an ordinance and spend countless hours researching a topic that should have been avoided and can still be handled in a more cost-effective manner. That's my thoughts.
Thank you.
I've got a question. Tiffany, can I ask you a question?
Just a minute. They're making their comments during public hearing.
I just want a point of clarification.
Okay.
She said she asked to transfer her kids, two kids, right?
I have two. A third one will be starting this year. One of my kids has thrived at Beck, the other one, not so much.
Okay, but you asked to transfer from Beck to Lakeview, and you were denied. I just want to clarify that was a...
When we were at, no, when we were at Lakeview and had moved, we were zoned for Beck. But prior to that year starting, I had sent in the request, or the transfer request, to stay at Lakeview, to keep my kids where they were, what they were doing, knowing that overcrowding was an issue. The girls were already acclimated to their space. And I mean, I handwritten a letter explaining all of that.
I just wanted to make sure I understood. I just wanted to make sure I understood what she said.
And apparently it's happened to others as well.
Okay, so I'm going to ask everyone, if you have questions of the speakers during public hearing, we'll hold those till we get to the agenda item. Public hearing doesn't allow us to debate the issue. All right, so the next person is Wendy Murray.
My name is Wendy Murray, I live at two-five-two-two Roseville Drive. I'm first going to apologize to council because you're going to hear my story again, it's probably like the sixth time I've told the story, but it looks like we have people from the district here who maybe hasn't heard me. Even though I emailed them on July twenty-second, I got nothing back from the superintendent or the school board. So I just wrote a little letter here because that's the way I kind of get my thoughts together. So this is a letter from my mom, who's extremely disappointed and let down by her school district. In two thousand and ten, we started researching school districts for our then-three-year-old daughter. After much consideration, we settled into our home in Trophy Club with the best and most sought-after school district. Kindergarten came and went and our eyes were open to the fact that our little school that we love so much was about to change. In two thousand and thirteen-fourteen school year, Beck added a bigger cafeteria, two music classrooms and two art rooms, and many more students. Our school can now hold eight hundred and fifty kids. So we were told by the district representative at the time, that we, that's what we were told by the district at the time. We were also told by the district representative that our school board will not allow Beck to go above an eighteen-to-one ratio because the school board believed that was the optimal learning ratio. There was a very concerned granddaughter of a first, grandfather of a little first-grade girl who asked the district, with the growth going on in Trophy Club, what their plan was, if it pushed past the eighteen-to-one ratio. The district representative assured this grandfather that since optimal learning was an eighteen-to-one, per the school district board, the board at the time, that they would rezone before they went over the eighteen-to-one. Fast forward to two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen school year, that little girl is now going into fourth grade and our school is bursting at the seams so much that we can't even house our own events. The ratio is twenty-two-to-one and I've heard rumor on Facebook, because I didn't get communication back from the district, that there are waivers in place for a twenty-five-to-one kindergarten classroom. One of my concerns with the addition of the portable is the amount of kids we are trying to shove into one school. If we further dilute our classrooms, cafeteria, library, and gym with more and more kids, how does the school district learn, live up to their vision of every student future-ready, ready for college, ready for global workplace, ready for personal success? My daughter has already been affected by the dilution that's going on at Beck Elementary last year. Plopping this portable down does not fix the problem. Medlin is also bursting at the seams and eventually the bursting will move to Barron. So I guess we will see portables move from school to school to school. Another one of my concerns is the safety of the kids. And we can talk at length of bad weather, kids with allergies, the molds that grow, the HVAC systems, all of that at length. I don't believe in the buddy system. I did learn of the buddy system the other day, which again, was not presented to me from the district, was presented from someone else on council about what the buddy system actually was going to be, because I had no idea what that meant. Over the course of the last three months, NISD has behaved in such a manner that I'm not sure I could trust them again. What other town has NISD come into and expected them to change a city ordinance to accommodate their lack of planning? Council asked several times for Mr. McClure to come up with other options besides a portable and to date, he has not provided any. This feels like, in fact, this makes me feel like they're the schoolyard bully, my way or the highway. I sent an email to the school board, as well as Mr. Warren on seven twenty-two, and neither one replied to me. NISD's lack of communication and willingness to work with our town really has opened my eyes. When the next school board election comes, I will be the first in line to vote in a new board. Finally, I beg this school board, and you, Mr. Warren, make your first action as a superintendent, not only what is best for the kids, but what is fiscally responsible. Pen to paper to allow waivers or rezon has to be the only decision. This constituent does not support sixty thousand dollars for a temporary trailer.
Thank you. Next one is Kristen Hildebrand. Did I say that right?
All right. My name is Kristen Hildebrand, I live at four Parkway Court. And I'm actually here to ask you to approve the portable. So I know there's been a lot of grumbling, there's a lot of opposition to the portable, but at this point in time, it is the most reasonable solution for the students at Beck. We're less than two weeks from school starting. I just, I cannot see them rezoning at this point. And full disclosure, I am an employee of Northwest ISD and I have worked at campuses with portable buildings and it has been more than okay. Northwest ISD is very good about ensuring the safety of students and the teachers that have been in the portable buildings have had a positive experience. But more than a Northwest ISD employee, I'm a parent at Beck and I'm going to be really angry if my students end up having to do art on the cart or if they are on a classroom on a stage. I mean, I guess my main concern is, we are going, the people who will be impacted the most by this decision, by what you guys decide, will be our students, five-to-twelve-year-old kids. And really, are we going to put that on their shoulders to be responsible and be affected by the decisions of Northwest ISD and this town? That's really the heart of the matter, is what's best for students. And with less than two weeks to school starting, I mean, I just, I feel like the portable is the best solution. And I feel like we cannot expect for kindergarten through fifth-grade students to have to pay for the decisions of adults.
Thank you. Holly, did anybody else turn in a speaker's form?
No, Mayor.
All right. It is seven twenty-seven, we will close the public hearing and reconvene into regular session. Item number twelve, introduction of Dr. Ryder Warren, the new superintendent of Northwest Independent School District, and receive an update regarding the district and Samuel Beck Elementary, discussion of same. Dr. Warren.
Mayor, council. First of all, let me tell you how proud I am to introduce myself to you guys. You are my first town council. I have, after tonight's meeting, I will have completed day thirteen of my career here in Northwest ISD, so I'm very proud to be in front of you. Just a little bit about me, I'm coming from Midland, Texas. My wife and I, my family, lived in Midland for six years. We have, our oldest son is a junior at Texas Tech, they've asked him back for another year, so life is good. We're about to take my daughter for her first year at Texas A&amp;M. And then we have a son who is going to be a junior at Eaton High School. So we're very excited about that, we're very excited to be a part of the Northwest family. You know, it's going to be a very unique challenge for me. We have fourteen different municipalities. Guys, one thing during my career, this will be the start of my eighteenth year being a school superintendent. You know, going up through the ranks of our Texas public schools, I have always enjoyed working with the municipalities that I have been a part of, that I have lived in and the school district has been a part of. We were actually, we were actually, I was the superintendent of schools in Marble Falls, Texas, outside of Austin. And we serve five, I mean, just different cities, communities there. And so I got, kind of got a taste of what we go through. Of course, we go through it on a much bigger scale here at Northwest. But we're very, again, we're very proud to be parents of this school district, we're very proud, and I'm very proud to be a part of you. Just what I normally like to do, and this is completely your pleasure, but I always like to start off the school year after, after the first day of school, I like to come to you and give you a beginning of school update, kind of show you what the real numbers are after, after the kids are in and they're settled after Labor Day, and give you an update with the real numbers. And then I always like to come to you at the end of the school year and give you another report at the end of the year, just to kind of tell you what we've done and how we've done it. And then pretty much I'm at your disposal throughout the rest of the school year. Whenever you need me, I will be here, I will be at your disposal. So again, very pleased, very proud to be a part of this and anytime that you do need me for anything, I will be here for you. Okay? Any questions before I get into Beck? Tim, before I forget about it, Joel Johnson is our director of athletics.
Yes, he is.
If you will call, or if you will have any of your contacts with U-Sports, call him, we'll make space available at the schools. So here in Trophy Club, we'll make, we'll make sure we schedule some Byron Nelson grass or some Medlin grass.
Okay, great. Yeah, I sit on this Shack committee.
Okay, good.
So I know Joel.
Good. Yeah, we actually talked about that just the other day, trying to get better, better relationships with our U-Sports and things like that.
Appreciate it.
So just tell them to call him and he'll get it scheduled.
Great.
You bet.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, guys, you are my first official challenge of the school district of my career here in Northwest. So let's talk through the Beck issues as I know it and let me, let me tell you what we would like to have done in partnership with you. Let me tell you why I'm excited, and this specifically addresses this issue. I had a really good lunch with Mayor Sanders a couple of weeks ago, and with Stephen, and it was, it was a good meeting. One of the things that I told him was, I would be, I would be very nervous about this meeting coming to you had I, the news that I was going to share to you and telling you that the school board, our Northwest Board of Trustees, had a totally different philosophy about portable classrooms than you did as the city council. What I can report to you after I've had this specific discussion, because we did discuss this with my board, knowing I was going to come to you and give you your report, the philosophy of the Board of Trustees is that this district will not use portable classrooms as permanent fixtures at any of our, any of our twenty-eight campuses. We just don't believe it. And really, that's a breath of fresh air for me, and I'll tell you why. I was part, Midland ISD, when oil got up to a hundred dollars a barrel, we were growing about two thousand kids a year. We went from about nineteen thousand kids in 2010 and they'll start the school year with about twenty-five thousand this school year. I'm leaving a district with a hundred and seventeen portable classrooms on the ground. That is what that community expected us to do. Before we would ever come to them with rezoning issues, with building projects, they wanted us to completely max out the available space we had on campuses and use portable. There's been portables in place for decades in Midland to be able to use them for portable classrooms. That was their philosophy. This is not the philosophy of Northwest ISD, nor, as the mayor and Stephen did a very good job explaining, is it y'all's philosophy. We are a fast-growth district and most fast-growth districts pretty much understand that portables are a way of life as you go through the planning processes between building projects and building projects and you get everything in line to maximize those things. So it's very unusual for a board to pretty much say out loud that they do not want their children permanently in those, in those portable classrooms. So we think we have a plan in place and, and again, y'all have been working on this a long time and I've been working on it a short time. But as you go down through, and I just had this committed to paper, kind of telling you what Sandy Conklin, our excellent building principal, what his plans are about the co-teaching situation until we can get that portable in there. Again, it's been my, it has been my practice, it's been every district that I've been associated with's practice, you know, we're going to comply with the ordinances that you set for your community. If you go back through case law and you look at school districts being in partnership with cities, the ordinances that you pass on the aesthetics of the building, the ordinances that you pass on the maintenance requirements of those buildings, those things, we are fully, we are fully going to respect and we're going to follow to the, to the letter. The only thing that you need to understand from my point of view is, being a fast-growth district, we do sometimes have to make these kind of decisions to place these portables, again, in a temporary fashion because of the philosophy of our Board of Trustees. You look down and see what the addition of the portable building will do pending your approval. And then under, at the very bottom, under future considerations, the Board of Trustees received the latest demographic report last night. We had our regular August board meeting last night. We had an excellent demographic report brought to us. We have about seven campuses right now throughout the district that are hot zones and Beck is one of those. And so, you know, rezoning is going to be part of our lives. Some parents have absolutely no issues whenever time a school district has to rezon, some parents, it just scares to death about children having to change, having to change schools. So we're going to be very pragmatic, we're going to be very careful in what we do. And of course, a building project will be proposed and, and you know, the two things that I can tell you are in line for Beck is, an addition will be made for Beck to make sure we have the space available. I really don't know the history of the lady who talked about the eighteen-to-one, but I know this board does mandate a twenty-two-to-one. Texas school law, it is mandated K-12, kindergarten through fourth grade, the state recommendation is twenty-two-to-one. If you go over that, there is a waiver process in place to be able to do that, but this board wants us to staff and wants every campus staffed at the twenty-two-to-one mark. So that's the, if you look at the seventeen different elementary campuses in our district, that is what we're going to assure through the future building projects that we have looking forward at the demographic reports and trying to align those, trying to correspond the demographic reports and the projections with the building needs. We will do our best to make sure the buildings will hold at a twenty-two-to-one mark throughout the, throughout the building. So that's, again, that's also very unusual for a fast-growth district. Most of them just know that you have, that you have, you just automatically go after class-size waivers. You know, if you look at other metroplex schools, Houston-area schools, hundreds of class-size waivers are sought after and obtained every year. That's not really something our board would like to talk about. They really want our teachers to have a true leg up on the, on those class sizes so that we can get to those, that individualized instruction that I think we're known for and that we pride ourselves on. So I humbly request that you, whatever you need to do for, to make it right for yourselves for this community, I humbly request that you approve that. We will, we will make sure that we follow your, your needs to the letter when dealing with this and this will be, this will be temporary. If we say a year, a year and a half, two school years, I don't think the board, my school board, will accept anything longer than that as we plan for the future and looking at, you know, exactly what we can afford and what can we can, we can plan for the future to be able to do so. So that is our plan. I wanted to make sure you knew we had a plan and if, if I can answer any questions for you with the limited time I've been here, I will. And of course, we have Tim and we have Sandy here to answer any of your questions as well. I will, I will make one apology if I did miss an email on day two of my career, I apologize. And if you resend it, I will absolutely answer you. I've got about seven hundred in my inbox right now, but I will, I will definitely get to that. I try to pride myself on communication. I absolutely appreciate parent involvement, whether you like what we're doing or not. I love to have that communication, I expect that as a father as well. So anything that you need, a lot of the, a lot of these things that you heard tonight, our board would love to hear. So the next school board meeting, I absolutely invite you to come up and talk about the same kind of things. And I think the board would be very receptive to hearing that kind of feedback.
So you started going down your list here, as I read it, your plan is to put two music classes and two art classes together?
According to Mr. Conklin, we have two excellent art teachers, two excellent music teachers. They will have bigger classes, but in co-teaching, and that's done, co-teaching is done to be able to do that, until we can place that portable, we will be in the coaching, no classrooms on a stage, no classroom in an area that we can't control, but be able to team teach for the first part of the school year, maybe the first month and a half of the school year till we can get those two classrooms on the ground and be able to spread out again. Yes, sir.
All right. And then...
And Mayor, one other philosophy, and this is just me, and even with the hundred, the hundred and seventeen portables that we use in Midland, I do not like putting what I call babies in the portables and I call our young ones, you know, the pre-K, K through third grade, the nine-year-olds, the ten-year-olds, the fourth and fifth graders handle them just fine, but I'm not going to put the little bitty ones, especially the ones who don't get to go to the bathroom by themselves, who are still able to do that. So we're going to, only fourth and fifth grade will be in these, in these portables if we, if and when we have to use them.
All right.
That's just personal, that's just... That's just personal, that's just personal preference.
And so, your plan, if approved, would be to put a portable that did not have a restroom, is that correct?
I, I definitely, if, depending on what your, your rules are going to be, I would not recommend that we plum these, these portals. That, that just makes, makes them more permanent. We can, we can administer, Sandy can administer the, rearrange the school where those kids in the portable would be just as close to bathrooms as anyone else in the building. Am I saying that right, Sandy? Water fountains, bathrooms, the facilities on that. Really, the, the water, the water to that makes it more permanent, and that's just not something that we would, I would recommend.
Let me ask a question about that while we're on that. We received a email back, back in July, July the 12th, that if the portables are put in the back there, that the students will return, that, that they're going to use a, a access fob that is given to them by the teacher, and they will implement a buddy system to further enhance student safety.
Okay.
Is that, does that still hold true?
Sandy, would you come up to the microphone so we get that, please? Thank you.
Where we're going to place the portable at, it's going to be right behind PE, and so, they're going to have a direct access to that door, about 10 feet, 10 to 15 feet away. There'll be, as I understand, they'll be awning over there as well, and so, they'll do, they'll use a buddy system, access to building using that fob. Of course, we're going to have some other systems put in place to hopefully limit that, classroom restroom breaks, those sort of things, but there will be a buddy system.
So, so my question on that, because I have, I have actually twins that go to Beck, so I'm part of the problem of overcrowding, you know?
3rd graders, right?
Second, second graders, yeah. They, they're in separate classrooms. They're, we, in fact, I've sent Mr. Conklin an email, and he's a twin, so he suggested separating them, which was good advice, because they have different friends, different, different experiences. I, I will say this, I, I don't know that I'm comfortable. So, so if I understand this, i- if there's a buddy system, you're actually going to take somebody who doesn't need to use the restroom out of the classroom learning environment. So, I'm not sure that I'm real comfortable with that, because I, I'm not sure that I would want one of my twins taken out to go buddy, you know, with somebody and, and not, you know, be able to have that learning experience or, or be deprived from that learning experience. So, I don't, that's, that's my concern on the buddy system.
And that's a valid concern. You know, we always want to protect instructional time and not take away from others. It's simply one option that we would have. Allowing classrooms to, to use the restroom, you know, as, as a classroom would eliminate, hopefully, some of the, the need for an individual or few to go. If it's several, then of course, the classroom teacher would be directed to just have a quick classroom break, and, and that would be done during transition time. So, there's natural transition times built into the schedule. Obviously, specials, lunch, those sort of things. So, we would encourage that the whole class take restroom breaks at that time.
And I, I'm actually, I'm actually, we've asked several times, and I think that the reason the bathrooms were brought up is because nobody could answer, or Mr. McClure cannot answer what grade would be in this. So, I'm, I'm actually, I'm a little bit happier to know that it's the 4th and 5th graders and not, you know, kindergarten through 3rd.
And I, and I really, I can't give you any solid educational data on that. It just, it's always been me. I just would rather reserve those for the older ones who, who, you know, we try to, try to teach responsibility all the way up through as the kids grow up, and, and, and that's just kind of an added responsibility. You know, council, and, and I don't know if we've got any more dads. I know we've got moms and dads in, in the audience. I will tell you, I, I do have a concern after, in fact, after I had lunch with Nick and Stephen, I had, I had Tim to take me over, and we, and we walked around the building and looked at everything and what the plans were. We, we are going to make some changes with the portable, and, but not just because of the portable on, on that campus. I've, I, something just screamed out to me, and, and you may have seen it as well. We have a, we have a sidewalk that runs right through our campus. I've never seen that in my life. I mean, and it, and we have a, we have a fence up, but we have gaps in that fence, not a, not a gate, but a, a true gap, where folks can just walk through the campus at any hour of the day freely. And I've, I've never seen that in my life. So, if, if that's a community expectation, that we have that walking path behind it, okay, we're going to try to protect that expectation, but we are going to fence those things and making sure that, that no one can walk among our children. And, and I, I'm not, I'm not trying to show, to scare anyone, I'm not trying to send up any red flags or anything like that. But I just did, after I looked at the campus, I just did a quick search on DPS website. I mean, there's 11 registered sex offenders in the Roanoke, in the, in the Trophy Club area. And, and we've got to make sure that, so we're going to look at, we're going to look at all the campuses around Trophy Club, and, and I think that's part of my responsibility as a new superintendent coming in, that we look at all 28 campuses. I, I really appreciate Patrick, and we just, we just signed agreements to, for the SRO program. But I think I've got to look at every single campus that we have and make sure we're locked down during the school day. And so, we are going to add some more what I call security measures, because that one just screamed out to me.
Sorry, Nick, I sort of, I have other questions, but I'll yield back to you.
So, Greg had to stand up for a question.
A couple. On the waiver, what would be the requirement to go up, to bump up how many students in a classroom?
Greg, it is a simple form, it's a form that you fill out to TEA, the, the Board of Trustees.
I, I get the process. I'm talking about, what would the number of students be in, in the, in the classroom?
Anything over, anything over 22, you have to seek a waiver.
And how many would you require?
Well?
Like 24, 25?
Greg, different districts have different philosophies. I mean, some, some districts actually budget on an average of 24, maybe even 25. Midland, Texas, we were, and I, I don't know if you've ever had the discussion, the Texas School Finance Discussion about Robin Hood and recapture. We were a very rich, property wealthy, the board, the, the state saw us as a very property wealthy with all the oil and gas values out there. We sent more than $50 million of our citizens' tax dollars back to Austin for redistribution. So, we actually had to go up to a 25 to 1 ratio in our elementary schools and up to a 30 to 1 ratio in our secondary schools. That's something we didn't want to do, it's just budgetarily, we had to do it. This board, the Northwest Board, has asked us to both budget and staff on that 22 to 1 in all elementary schools. So, that's what we're going to stick at. And, and, and Greg, I think that's some of the reason why I'm standing here before you today is because we set that expectation as a board, as a district, that we were going to protect the 22. So, that's what made us have to spread out in all of our campuses, which also created the issues. But you, you gotta, you gotta balance out what are the academic positives versus the, the financial.
Now, what's the negative of the problems to, to keep the two music teachers and the two art teachers all year long?
Well, the negative is just that, that?
I, I know, I get that.
No, no, it's, 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 it is a, it's, it's larger kids, and team teaching, team teaching is fine. Hopefully, our teachers get along with each other. Okay, good. It's, it's just a different situation than having your own classroom and being able to teach in your classroom, and, and the kids really latching on to that person and, and creating those relationships like we want to have. There's nothing wrong with it if we continue to do that, just the optimal thing for us. Again, knowing that it's going to, hopefully, it'll be a temporary, with, with your permission, it will be a temporary environment that we will have the classrooms, be able to do the one-to-one, the classroom to the teacher, and then be able to redistrict, and, and redistricting is in Trophy Club's future for, for, for all of the schools that, that Trophy Club has within its city, city boundaries. Redistricting is going to happen, and, and the building projects are going to come again. And, and, and that's, that, that's just the life of a fa- fast-growth district like we are.
Back to one thing I would add, the one thing that I would add to that, too, I think the, the negative part of that is, we'll have about 44 kids in the art room, in that one room. So, when you're thinking about 44 kindergartners or first graders, that tends to change the dynamics quite a bit on what they can actually do and getting teachers around, helping and supporting those individual needs. So, it, it's, it's a much larger classroom.
All right, any other questions, Greg?
No, I'm good.
All right, so Garrett had to stand up.
If we're asking questions at this point, right? Thanks for coming and talking to us. I think I was one of the people that wanted you to come here and speak to us. And full disclosure, my wife taught for Sandy for three years, math.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, so I'm very familiar. I'm not a fan of class-sized waivers. Some people might be. I, the husband of a teacher, I understand the demands it puts on the kids and the, you know, some people say one or two kids. I think it makes a difference. I'm also not a fan of government. If anybody who's ever been to one of these meetings knows. I think government is horribly inefficient, and unless you have the right people up here trying to, to guide the right administrators, you get more inefficient government. I think the town has done a phenomenal job in efficiency in government, but I think it was Tiffany and Wendy both made the, the statement of fiscal responsibility. And I'd say, if that was your expectation, you may need to get it down a little bit, because we're talking about government. There's not a lot of fiscal responsibility. But my point is this, what, where my frustration is derived from is not necessarily that, goes without saying that this kind of got dropped on us late, we can rehash this. Citizens, majority of them do not want portable buildings. Where my frustration is derived from, and I guess it's a question that I wanted to ask you, and I'm glad you're here, is, do you personally, not the board, but do you have the ability to, I think it was Wendy or Tiffany said that she asked for a waiver for one of her kids to go to another school. Do you have the ability to approve that, or does that have to go to the board? Is that an administrative thing?
No, that is an administrative decision. Now, there is no decision I make in the, in the school district that cannot be appealed to the board.
Okay.
But, but administratively, you know, we have folks who look at, and, and of course, this, this is my, this was my process in Midland. The, the folks who needed, for whatever reason, we, there's a, there's a specific reasons the state gives us to allow transfers between schools. And then, most school districts have some other local things that we consider as well. And then it goes whoever the administrator who is in charge of that. For us, it's the two, it's the two executive directors. It's Michael Griffin, who is the, she is the executive director of elementary, and Logan Ferris is the executive director of, of a secondary school. Be very impressed, I remember those names, thank you. But they consider, they are the ones who make the decisions, and then we have an appeal process to me, and then ultimately, there can be an appeal process to the board.
Okay, so what, the, 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 thank you. The point I'm getting at is this. What I would like to see, instead of saying, we got to have art on the car, we've got to do these things, and what we've asked Tim to do, and we understand, Tim, you're kind of taking orders from the top, that's why I wanted you here, is for, for you guys to come before us and say that some common sense solutions have been vetted.
Sure.
And Trophy Club being so unique that we have one elementary school that's not full, literally, right down the street from one that's too full.
Right.
And we're really looking at 40 bodies, 40 little people at the end of the day, is what's throwing this?
It was 19.
It's 19.
According to Tim's numbers, it was 19.
But let's say it could go up to 40, depending on who moves into town or not. So, it's, it's, it's somewhere in that number. And I guess where my frustration comes from is, I would love to see somebody from the school district say, we can send out a mass email, we can have a, a city meeting, we can have the parents come in tomorrow, next week, and say, hey, our school's full, are there any of you, Tiffany might be one of them, who would like for your kid to go to Lakeview versus Beck? And I can waive it right here, come on and sign up. My guess would be in this community, with the streets intertwine, intertwined like they are, the way that it works, you would get your 14 to 30, and it's that kind of common sense application to this problem that I haven't seen.
Right.
And that's why I hate to see this, because I think with a simple meeting, you could find that, hey, I like my friend, they live down the street, I'd like to go there, you got a mom, then all of a sudden, you've got smaller class sizes and they fill up. Now, I'm not saying that's a permanent solution. I know redrawing boundaries and all that has to happen. But I haven't seen anybody say, let's try that. Let's have a town hall meeting, and let's have all the parents come in and say, hey, can I get 25 or 30 of you guys, 3rd graders, 2nd graders, whatever grade it is?
Right.
To go to school over here? My guess is you would get it, you wouldn't have the portable buildings. Sandy, you wouldn't have to deal with all the, all these things, you wouldn't have to deal with the mad mamas. Trust me, we know what mad moms are like. We've sat up here and dealt with them for a long time. And then the problem solved, but I haven't heard anything like that. And, and that's where my frustration is derived. It's just approve this, two years from now, we'll build on more. I'm saying, we got a, we got an empty school and we got a full school. You have the ability to approve. Why don't we ask the parents if some of their kids want to go over there? Why don't we do that?
I want to kind of a quick follow-up to Garrett, just since he mentioned waivers.
That's fine, sure.
You said that the, the state gives you specific criteria that waivers to intra-district, intra-district transfers are permitted. Is, I'm trying to think of the right way to characterize. If someone came to you or submitted a request because their commute time would be too long, is that considered valid? Is that on that list?
In, in, I'm, I'm going to talk in Midland. It's not.
Okay, because, and now, second question, Tim might know, or Sandy might know, if you don't know off the top of your head. When did Roanoke Elementary come online? It's pretty new. So, 2010? Okay, perfect example. I have a friend that lives in Roanoke. They are drawn for Roanoke Elementary. Prior to Roanoke Elementary, they would have been drawn for Beck Elementary. Their oldest boy entered school in the fall of 2010, so maybe that school was brand-new. But the bridge wasn't built yet. The bridge over, from 377 over the train tracks. So, they requested a waiver. So, there's two boys that have been going to Beck now for six years because of that. So, I think it speaks to Garrett's, Garrett's point that before y'all came through all of this, it's frustrating to us that y'all came to all this trouble. You, you could have shook the trees in your own backyard a little bit, and that's why it's frustrating to us. And I know you're new to this, and Tim is new to it too. But when things get brought to our kitchen, we're like, what's this doing in my kitchen? Because I'm not on the school board, I don't ever want to be on the school board. Like Garrett said, the mad mama faction is enough on council. Bring kids into the mix and it blows up, right? So, y'all won't ever see me there. But, so anyway, just to kind of explain to you why we are, have been so questioning, there is no desire to get into y'all's operations. I don't want to get into educational priorities or anything like that. I feel like y'all are the experts on that, but when things like that come up, it causes us questions. So, just so you know why we're asking.
That's a great comment, and let me get back to Garrett's question. And those were great comments, and I understand every word you said. The, the thing that we have to be very careful of, and, and in the very limited time that I've been here, I, I have been impressed, and, and some may have a different perception, you know, hearing the comments. But this district has been very meticulous in really trying to look forward and doing those demographic studies per each campus and each area, from subdivision to subdivision, planned area, unplanned area. All those things have been laid out, and we're really trying to do our best. But being a fast-growth district, there will be surprises every year. There'll be, there'll be growth that we've never even thought of coming in. It just, it does, this happens. When you start going, whether you ask for volunteers or you just redraw lines just to handle maybe one or two classrooms at one campus, then you start skewing almost every other line around that area. You've got to be very careful when you, when you're a fast-growth district and you know you're, and, and Tim, as limited time as he's had here, he's, he's been, he's been with the district for a long time, working with the district for a long time. So, understanding how the capacity looks in our district and at each campus, and then how those lines are drawn. Once you start adjusting those, you could very well, if you had 30 kids go to, to a different school next year, you may have the same issue come up at that school the next year because you've moved those kids over. So, are you going to ask those same kids to move back? I, I don't want to ping-pong kids. That, that's the one thing that we don't want to do. A lot of families, and, and a lot of times, families understand that if they become a part of a fast-growth district, they understand the redistricting may happen quite, quite often. And, you know, some buy that house just to go to that campus, and they're so disappointed when we redraw the line and, and we have, and we're rezoned. So, we just, that has to be taken into consideration as well. You know, when you're doing that, that you just don't trigger something else and the same, just push the same problem on a different campus just because you're trying to fix it here rather than really looking at the long term. And that's why, that's why I said the, 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 the building itself has to be temporary. The, a school district like us has to be allowed to use this when we need to, but just know the philosophy is, we're not going to be in it for very long, and we are going to do our very best moving forward to understand our growth and to, and to plan accordingly.
And I understand what you're saying, but the, the juxtaposed position to this is simply this. You're saying that redrawing lines can become messy. We're talking about a two-year problem. Y'all have admitted yourselves, in two years, you're going to expand the school, it's going to be able to house these kids.
Right.
The other school can already do that. I don't think we're creating a permanent problem, I don't think we're ping-ponging kids by asking 24 to 30 people to move over to one school.
Sure.
Because by y'all's own admission, in 24 months, we should have that other school built. These kids are going to move up to the system, the other one's there. So, what I'm proposing, and I don't want to come up with solutions for y'all, I'm just saying it seems like a very common sense, real quick thing, I'm just asking why you didn't do it. It's a temporary solution. The, the temporary buildings are a temporary solution. I mean, the permanent solution is to expand the school. So, I'm not asking to redraw lines, I'm just saying, why wasn't the volunteer? And I'm just throwing some things out there. There's creative ways, I think, within the Trophy Club community. There's creative ways, I think, within the Trophy Club community, and you'll find out Trophy Club is a very unique place. People, people get together and they solve problems here.
Right.
And they do really neat things here. I've been a part of this, I love to brag about this, I've been in this town longer than anybody else on this council. I went to high school in this town. So, you know, I, I've seen what Trophy Club can do, and it's, don't, don't just say you got to have portable buildings. Give us a chance to provide a solution for ourselves. And I don't think you guys are doing that. And that's, that's my only point.
All right, so Councilman Kurtz, and then Councilman Raffaro.
Yeah, I mean, Greg's right on. We asked that the last time, and, and we were hoping for some answers back, and we were told no. We're in a strange situation here where the two people that are coming to us are brand new, right? So, I mean, we're not angry with you two. I mean, you're trying to solve the problem. But at the same time, we keep asking for certain things to be done to say yes to you, right? If you didn't need something from us, you would have put them up, you'd have nothing to do with us, and you wouldn't have a teacher over there saying that we need to okay this to save the kids, as opposed to Northwest ISD should have had the forethought to do it right in the first place. Not you personally, but they should have had the forethought to plan correctly. Last time we were here, we were made aware that Northwest ISD has, I don't know, seventy million, seventy-two million?
Seventy-three.
In their, in their coffers, yet they will not fast track the building. You will not put a construction, you know, project out there until you pass a bond, which makes zero sense to me. You're telling me that this is a problem that needs to be fixed now, you have the cash now, yet you're not willing to pull the trigger now. Not you personally, but the ISD. So for me to say yes, you know, if, if you can't go and, and do what Garrett says, at least you could come back and say, hey, listen, here's our plans, it's going to cost a million bucks, we have the money, we're doing it immediately. But instead, we're not even going to get to that point until next May, right? I mean, that's reality.
That would be reality.
That's reality. The only way you're going to pass a bond with these people in Trophy Club is to say, we need to build onto the school. So you can't build onto the school, because if you're already built onto the school, then the people aren't going to say yes to the bond, right? They're going to say, you don't need it, you already paid. So I get it. But we need something that shows that the ISD is thinking forward, you know? You have the money to do it, you're not doing it. You had the chance to, to redraw, you didn't redraw. Right now, it says they're going to look at the boundaries next spring. Well, what we're told is, when they look at the boundaries, then they lock it. That's what they told us. They look at it in the spring and they lock it down. They don't come to us, they don't talk to the parents, they lock it down. They say, this is what it is. So everything from, and, and I have a student that went to Lakeview, and then, and then is at Midland now. So I get it. Midland's bursting at the seams. Byron Nelson's going to need it, we're going to need growth over there also. But the, the parents here feel like nobody's listening to them. And you're brand new, and he's brand new, and I know you're forward thinking, but again, nobody there said, hey, we do have the money, let's at least show these people in the town that we're going to build this as fast as possible. We have two months to go back, and for somebody there to say, yeah, just allocate the funds now, so we can show it gets done. But they didn't bother doing any of that. They're just saying, no, we're going to put it on the town, make, make us look bad if we say no. Because we're, we're going to pull classrooms, and I really appreciate you saying, we'll just put, you know, we're not going to have a art on a cart and stuff like that. And I don't care about looking bad, I really care about what's best for the kids, but two years of being in a classroom, as opposed to one year, is a big difference. So forget about whether I vote yes or no, you have the funds to do it, but you're choosing not to do it still. Not you, but I, I mean, the reality, that's what's going on, right? I mean, you're saying, you really need it, really need it, really need it, really need it. We have the money, we're not going to use it, but we really need it, really. So, so I just don't, I don't understand it. I don't, there's, there's nothing coming from the ISD that says this is as important as, as, as we say it is, and we, we're taking the parents to heart that we want this done as, as fast as possible. You know, because if it was being right now, it'd be done by next year and, and you'd be all set. And then we could say, we'd go back to, to the residents and say, it's one year. Right now, reality is, it's two, and a bond may not pass in May.
All right, Jim Raffaro.
You can never assume.
Dr. Warren, I just wanted to, to point something out, because I know you're new and your plate's full, overflowing, and so it's hard to catch up on everything. But when Mr. McClure was here before us twice recently, the first time he showed his charts that clearly demonstrated a, a availability, as Councilman Reed has pointed out, at Lakeview. And that they can certainly absorb the overage for now, which would give you the time, as was pointed out multiple times, to build that extra space at Beck. What was also pointed out in his second visit to us, when the question was asked, well, why are you not granting waivers to move students from Beck to Lakeview, where the space exists? And if you don't make any waiver movements, that space will sit there empty, unused and wasted. And instead, we're going to take taxpayer money and build portable buildings and create a temporary environment that requires an ordinance change to do that. And he said, well, we can't put them at Lakeview, because the administration prior to you closed Lakeview to intra district waivers, and I mean, transfers. And so, we have the space, we have the availability, except he's, his hands are tied because somebody within your administration, or your predecessor's administration, decided we're going to close transfers to parents who want to transfer for some unknown reason. And it sounds to me, based on everything you've heard tonight, it's as simple as saying, it's not closed anymore, it's now open. We're going to do this for two years while we're building the extra building. When that extra building is done, if they want to stay there, they can stay there. If not, we have extra space here, and students can come back and forth, and we can redraw lines over the next two years and handle our problems, so we don't have shuffling of students from A to B. So, so what is it going to take to open Lakeview to allow transfers for parents who want to do that and not use a portable building?
Well, that's, that's a great question now. And, and Jim, make sure, and Tim, make sure I'm saying this correctly. I, I believe in the transition meetings that I had, that we actually asked groups of families who would be willing to change from that is not true. Okay, I thought we just didn't have the right, the right breakup of the classes, the right numbers. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, okay. Here, I'll go back to what I, what I answered Garrett. You've got to be, and, and that's the only thing that we, that we have to, when we have the attendance zones around those schools, to make sure that they match up with what we do. We, we do have pockets of kids, and, and the grade levels that we're looking at for this year at Beck are second, third and fourth grade, are those pockets of kids that were unplanned growth. Hence, that's what we need to, to keep, to keep them in the, the, the school of, a lot of, the, most of the, the parents' choice is, most schools use the portable classrooms. In, in Northwest, it'll be in a temporary fashion to be able to, to do what we need to do. And then, this, this plan is going to be enacted in the spring to look at seven different elementary schools, to do exactly what you're saying, is to look at our boundary lines and, and adjust them for where they need to be, so we can, that, that we can make sure our buildings are, are populated appropriately.
All right, so I, um, did you finish, Jim?
Yes.
All right, so I have three hands that have come up. So Greg, Ryland, and Tim.
Two for you and one for Tiffany. What is the distance between Lakeview and Beck? Does anybody know? Mile?
It must be a half mile.
I don't like driving, so to me, it's like fifty miles. Yeah. Okay, so, um, are you willing to look at volunteer transfers, or is that off the table?
Right now, I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at transferring any kids right now, that, because of this time of year.
Okay, so Tiffany, I got a question for you. So you guys moved from my lovely neighborhood to over where Councilman Shatner and Reed and those guys live. So you were going to Beck, basically walking over there.
We were going to Lakeview.
Lakeview.
We were walking.
You're in Lakeview.
We were in Lakeview. We were walking to Lakeview.
Okay.
Now we are Beck.
So, so you get transferred to Fresh Meadow Street, and they put you in Beck?
Yes, because that is zone for Beck.
Was that on your, you'd request that, or?
I requested to stay at Lakeview. Because the girls were acclimated, the school was already overcrowded. I have one of those third graders who is in the biggest class. And we, where the boundary zone is, it ends at Troon, and we are that one street over. So I thought maybe they would let us stay, because there were no extra kids going to be going to Lakeview from the sale of our house. You know, we were very active. I, I volunteer up at the schools all the time. I was hoping to stay there, and it didn't happen. Which was, I mean, for my upcoming fourth grader, she's done well. My third grader, not so much, and now I have an incoming kindergartner. I'm a mess for that school. I bring a lot.
I just don't get, you moved further away from Beck, closer to Lakeview technically.
It would be easier for us to get to Lakeview, yes, but the way that the, the zones are drawn, we go past Lakeview.
I kept hearing this, we don't want to traumatize the children by moving them from one place to another, but yet they move yours, and you move further away from the school.
Right, right.
That, that seems.
I don't understand the, the boundary zones at all. It's almost like there's a big circle on the outside of town that goes to Beck, and then the inside goes to Lakeview. It really baffles me. I don't get it.
It's point nine miles.
Point nine miles.
All right, so Ryland?
Yeah. I just want to, I want to kind of catch you up, Dr. Warren, on a few things, just so you hear sort of what we've been hearing and the things we've discussed, because we have a, for, for Trophy Club council, this is a big crowd. It's, I mean, hey, everybody. I mean, I know most of your names. This is how it is, right? It's, I mean, we rarely have more than five people sitting here. And, and when that happens, when that happens, there's a, you know, obviously, we all immediately say, okay, you know, what's up? And we start talking to people, and we start doing, and one of the things that, and I said this to you guys earlier, is I really don't have a personal desire to interfere in the operations of the school district. But I have a responsibility to reflect the concerns of the people that put me here. And I want you to hear some of the things that we've discussed with Mr. McClure before, just so you understand why there is kind of a, there's almost a pyramid, it's like the food pyramid, but it's frustrations, right? And it all starts when, you know, we were looking at the demographic information that Tim had about a month ago, and he had lots of numbers and maps and stuff, and like, guys like Garrett, you know, Garrett's been here twenty-plus years, Tim's been, Nick's been here at least twenty, I've been here almost fifteen, and on and on. The thing that perked everyone's ears up was that the district made a distinct decision in 2010, say, we are a fast growth school. And we all, or a fast growth district, and we all said, whoa, that was five years too late. I moved here at the end of two thousand and four, and when I was right out of college, living in an apartment in Roanoke, my little free newspaper from Keller Citizen or whatever that came in the mail every month, or week, or however often, every, there was fights and fights and fights, and Nick was around back then about how dense was Trophy Club's remaining development going to be, two thousand four, two thousand five, two thousand six. So all through that time, there was a lot of discussion in the, in the area about density. All of those decisions ultimately were made, and all those lots were platted to oh-seven, oh-eight timeframe. Am I right, Dennis? More or less, oh-seven, oh-eight timeframe. That brings us to another thing that Tim said the first time we talked to him, was that the school, when final plats are approved from municipalities, the school districts get copies of those so that they can forecast density. So from our perspective, density was a hot topic ten, twelve years ago, and was settled eight to nine years ago. So we recognized that the school took action in 2010 and moved from six hundred and fifty population elementary schools to eight hundred and fifty population elementary schools. And one of the things Tim said was, it's more cost effective. Great. And then immediately, right after that, Lakeview expanded in 2010 or 11, I can't remember which, and Beck expanded in 2014. This brings me to the second concern we have. We have a model, you guys have a model that you use for ninety-five percent capacity in your schools. Ninety-five percent capacity at eight hundred and fifty, uh, population. Well, what we're seeing in Beck right now is that that model doesn't work, that nineteen kids can break that model. The math doesn't work. You said it yourself a few minutes ago, that you have surprises every year. The model that Tim showed us assumes that there's the same number of kids in every grade every year. And I think we all know that that's way too simplistic. So I'm looking forward to you guys putting your heads together and fixing that. And one of the things that you've obviously learned is that Beck will really be able to handle eight fifty on the model after the next round of
Sure.
of, uh, expansion that, that's coming up. And then, um, the other, the other thing that, that I really want to, Tim really hit home with is the available, available money to green light a project now. Lakeview was expanded five, six years ago. There was portable, there were portables there during that time. The reason that we're going through these processes now, that we didn't go through back then, is because we have provisions to allow portable buildings accompanying a construction project. And this request doesn't accompany a construction project. So if the decision had been made at the district level to proceed the way Mr. Kurtz recommended, all of this would have been a little bit more rote, right? And it would have just been, let's do the paperwork, let's all raise our hand, and let's move along. And, you know, the mayor made a, the mayor made a good point. Last meeting, we discussed this, when he brought up the, the seventy-three million dollar fund balance. So we asked Mr. McClure, what's, what his ballpark estimate was for the expansion on Beck, and he said, conservatively, one to two million. So let's be conservative and say it's two million. It's go as high as, as high as that estimate goes. I've got a budget here in front of me that we're going to get to probably two or three o'clock in the morning today. And it forecasts for Towne Trophy Club a three and a half million dollar, uh, fund balance. Because you guys have seventy-three, we have three and a half. For you guys to go spend two out of seventy-three, that's like us making a decision to spend ninety-six thousand dollars. And if those of you who have the patience to hang around for the budget, you'll see that's going to cover a couple nice things at one of the parks. So basically, what your board is saying to everybody that, that, that funds this district is that you guys have all these great things going, all these great programs, you guys have a bistro, and you guys have a cosmetology academy, and you guys have all these beautiful sports facilities. And you guys have, I didn't know until I got on council and started getting the police and fire bladders, our fire department had to be called out because the pottery kiln got left on over the weekend. So there's a pottery kiln, but there's not room to put kids in a classroom. Now, can you imagine if this council made a decision in one of our budgets to build a new parks facility? And we had the money to do it, and we were going to do it, and it was there, and it was used, and it was great and shiny and new. We have some great ballparks, great example. We've got ballparks that are multimillion dollars. Over in one side of town, say, a street completely fails, and people can still get to their house, they just got to park at the corner. And we tell them, we're going to wait, and we're going to pass a bond in two years, and you can just park at the corner. And then it comes out that all we got to do is spend ninety-six thousand dollars to fix that street. Now, what do you think would happen? It'd be a pretty big mess. So I realize you guys are coming into a situation that you inherited, but if Steven didn't come to us and say, guys, spend the ninety-six K and pave the street, I'd have, I'd have some surprises for Steven on his next review, okay? So I hope that my analogy is something you can carry forward to that, to your board.
It was a good analogy.
All right, so, Tim.
So first, I, I want to say, um, good job in putting Tim in the position he's in now. He's a couple of years too late, but I'm glad somebody's actually doing what he's doing. I, I have a couple of questions. I won't rant anymore. Are there any other schools in the district that are having the same issue as Beck?
I don't believe to the extent that Beck is, but we have six other elementary schools that are what we call our, again, like I said, our hotspots, that in the very near future, that, and in this next spring, we will start the process. And, and I can't remember if Philip said it, I don't, I can't remember who said it about the process that we use to redraw attendance lines that we, that we.
But right, but right now, Beck is the one who needs, needs.
We do have two other elementary schools that currently have portals at Beck.
But not.
It would be a similar, I mean, they're there for cause of similar reasons.
They're there for similar reasons, okay.
And I'm going to interrupt. Is that, is that K. Granger? I have some notes.
And Peterson.
Okay.
Now, they've been there for a while, are they?
Grangers have been there for a couple of years, two years, and we're in a process of reestablishing boundary lines for them. And Peterson's was just placed last year.
Now, is that sort of like the same thing with Midland? The jobs are in accord, and they can come and go. Unlike here, you, you've got major corporations coming in here to stay.
Right.
They're not leaving.
So, so those are transient areas out there, is what you're saying? So you're not in the same exact situation as Beck? That's going to go up, that's going to go down?
Ranger, Ranger is in a scenario where there's more development coming, and we're trying to wait to get that next school.
So again, so again, it's not, it's not the same.
They're still dealing with growth issues, is my point.
Right, but it's not the same. I mean, we, okay, but it's close. So, okay. So when you, next spring, you look at redrawing the thing, will you still need to, will So, when you, next spring, you look at redrawing the thing, will you still need to, will 100%, will you still need to build on to Beck? So, 100%, so we know with both of you here, 100%, you're gonna put in addition on that school?
I have heard nothing to say contrary to that.
Okay, so, so, we also know 100%, you have the funds to do it now. I, I would like to know, I'd like to ask you to go to your board and get the funds to greenlight the project now, so then we can say okay to the portables, because that allows us to do it. So, what I would like is for you to go back and talk to whoever it is and say, we need to do this. I mean, we are the elite school system here, our residents, that's what they want, and the one, our ask is that we give something to them, which is to say, we're gonna build this as fast as possible. We're not gonna wait two years before this is gonna build. I'm not expecting that they'll say yes to you, but I, but I hope that you would go and ask that, because it seems to me that you understand and you empathize with parents, which we all are ourselves. But if you did that, it would make it much easier for us to say yes. Right now, what it seems just to us, to me personally, is that everything we said has just gone by the wayside. And that's what it seems to the parents.
And what, what I, what I committed to the board tonight was, you know, I'm going back to the office when, when I leave here, and, and I'm gonna give them a, a full report. I'm gonna write my, my report to them about, and so I will absolutely include that. But let me, let me say this, and just remember, and it goes to Jim's questions and to Garrett's questions. Everything that we do for every campus that we have sets a precedent. And I've got, I've got 14 councils that now that I'm gonna answer to. And so, I hear you guys loud and clear. And, and to say, we can take $2 million of fund balance to build on that, you guys just have to take care of Trophy Club. And that, you're, you're doing an amazing job. I have to make sure
And I get that.
that we're, okay.
I, I get that 100%, but at the same time, what you're asking us to do is to set a precedent.
Correct.
Right? So, you're asking us to change in ordinance, to do something for you, that your, your school system is not willing to bend anything for us. If they came to us with construction plans, with some sort, there's, there's nothing to say that it's not going to be here. So, and I'm not gonna rant, all I'm saying is, I would, I, I ask that you go to ask to try to greenlight that.
Absolutely. I, I will ask any question.
Thank you. Alright, Phillip had his hand up, and then I'm gonna make a comment.
I'm gonna add on to what Ryland and, and Tim have said. Later on, we're gonna, we're gonna fight over a not-to-exceed number on our tax rate. Just what we do, we, we.
We like to fight.
Yeah. And I'm gonna make the argument, I'm gonna make the argument that we have lowered our tax rate the last two years, and since we, since, and I'll go ahead and, and play my hand, since we have been on council, the property tax, the, that we have increased is 27% higher. So, we've lowered, but, but the assessments have gone up 27%. So, we've, we've added 1.2 million, uh, just in, you know, property tax, since we've been on council, additional, uh, over what we were receiving before. And we're at, uh, just a little bit above 48 cents. Uh, I think the school district is $1.44 per hundred, and it hasn't lowered, it hasn't changed in those two years. So, you're, you, just on Trophy Club's back, you are getting a lot more property tax than we have, and we've seen a substantial growth, growth since we've been on council, and we've, you know, uh, tried to lower the taxes, tried to do different things, tried to use a lot of that money for infrastructure, things like that. So, it goes to the point that, that growth in Trophy Club has been phenomenal. Growth in this district probably has been phenomenal, but, but certainly, certainly the appraised, the, the assessments that our taxpayers in Trophy Club have experienced have been, uh, not, not very pleasant. I mean, good for, good for the housing market, good for that, but bad on paying taxes, but, but it's grown. And your level of tax rate has stayed the same, $1.44 per hundred. And so, you've gotten a substantial amount of property tax that you could have put into, uh, that situation. So, it goes to what they're saying, is that there is that money available, and I hope you do go to. And again, you know, a lot of this is not, is, is being thrust upon you. And, and I, I'll even, I'll even add that there are three, three distinct districts in Trophy Club, three distinct, uh, neighborhoods that have just really built in the last six months. Uh, one is by the dog park, that area there. One is up by Ryland, Canterbury Hills, that area there. And then there's one just behind Harmony Park that's about to come on. All three of those could have easily been redistricted to Lakeview. And so, to me, that was foreplanning on Northwest Park, by not doing that prior to those people. I understand, you know, we get told all the time, I bought my house to go to this school. You know, I understand it's very difficult to redraw those lines once they're drawn. But I hope, I, I hope that you will take some of what we're saying, and, and a lot of this is frustration, because not only do we have the frustration of, uh, trying to decide whether or not to approve a, a portable building, but we have the added, the added pressure of a, a powder keg about to explode of what we call Parkview Drive, because we have, uh, Beck Elementary, we have Midland, and then it, it dead-ends to Byron Nelson. And so, that drive was not intended to have that amount of activity. And just like myself, if I go to a, an award ceremony at Beck, I usually am having to park at the swimming pool and walk down to get to the, to the elementary school. And so, we've, we've tried to even help the school district, because we're adding a parking lot, uh, over on your side between the, the school and the, uh, the ballfield. So, so, so we have not only the pressure of, do we make this decision to put a portable? But we also have the, the, the added pressure of, if we expand, and, and you're gonna expand that school, we're gonna get more and more students. So, it kind of goes to what even Garrett has talked about. It, it seems like it would be easier to do a waiver-type process, or at least look at it. I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that you're, you, you need to ping pong students. I wouldn't want my kids to go to Lakeview and then have to go to Beck and Beck and forth. But I think that it, it warrants itself to at least look at it and see if it's possible.
Right, and, and those are great comments as well, but let me, let me vent for a second.
Okay.
Okay? And, and you just gave, you gave a wonderful example of how cities, municipalities, counties, any other taxing board is different from a school board in a school district. You have been very good stewards with your tax dollars. You've been, you've, you've seen this, this rise of values, and you've even been able to decrease your tax, your, is that what I heard you say?
Right.
Okay. This is not the case in Texas public school finance.
And I understand that.
Okay. We are at $1.4. This is the, the operating budget, the, the budget that we have is about $197 million. Our operating budget is generated from $1.4. Right, we've been at that $1.4 for 10 years, for a decade.
Right.
Alright, because of the laws that are in Texas public school finance, we never got credit for the value growth that every other municipality was given credit for. When values went up, you could generate more with those pennies. Before the law change in the 11 and 13 legislative session, uh, school districts got 0% of value growth. So, whatever we were assigning, it was called targeted revenue. It was the worst idea ever hatched by, by our legislators. But targeted revenue meant we were stuck with a number, and it doesn't matter how we grew, it didn't matter. We got that funding. So, we were, we have been going down the route, and, and Tim, and I, I hear you loud and clear about using $2 million of fund balance. It does not seem much out of, if we, the, a $70 million unrestricted fund balance about using that $2 million. We will use $10 million of fund balance this year to balance our budget. We already know that going in, because number one, we do not wanna raise that M&amp;O tax rate. Number one, we can't do what you do. We can't look at the needs of the district, we can't look at the needs of the kids, and our board cannot set a tax rate to meet those needs. The legislature took that right away about 12 years ago. We were separated from every other leadership board in the communities, and we actually have to go out for, we have to pay $70,000 some odd dollars for a special election, for a tax ratification election, to even ask permission for one extra penny. So, we have been putting together these budgets, knowing how important it was to protect our academic programs, without being able to use one penny more of our, of our tax rate, meaning we've had to cut internally, we've been cutting every year to make sure our academic programs were, were propped up. So, we're up to, and, and then, still venting, next legislative session, we're, we are destined to lose 2.5 more million dollars of what was extra money that the state gave us 10 years ago, when they made us all drop our tax rate by 50 cents. So, we're under a lot more, uh, financial dynamics than, than you guys, uh, are as, as your, as town leadership. That fund balance is gonna be very important to us moving forward. And, and, and Tim, I understand, $2 million doesn't sound like a lot of money. But when you're using $10 million just this year to balance it, to make sure we can staff at that 22, and 85% of our upper-end budget is people.
Right.
It's, it's our, it's our staff, and that's, that is what I make, I've gotta make sure when I'm making these decisions, and when the board's making these decisions, that's what we gotta protect.
But don't, don't you think, then, knowing that you're under that pressure, don't you think that it, it, it really lends itself that you should, you, you should diligently look at, can I move, or can I ask for 20 or 30 volunteers to move to Lakeview and not spend that 60,000 to 70,000 to put a temporary building back behind Beck Elementary?
Phillip, we, we are gonna, I've, I've, you've already heard me say, we're gonna look at everything that we can, but again, we're gonna try to put kids first, that's what we say we did, the, someone said that. And if I don't have to move kids to somewhere that had they been, that they moved there, that they're in right now, I'm not going to. Yes, we're going to redistrict, that's what the, what districts like us do all the time, and families understand that. But again, my, my biggest fear is we move 40 kids over there in the next two weeks, and what if 40 more kids show up there? And then you have the same.
So, what if another 40 show up at Beck?
I'm just, I'm, it could, it could happen, Tim. I'm just saying, there's a lot of variables that you've gotta look at.
Yeah.
Alright, so, uh, Tim wanted to say something, Ryland wants to say something, and Greg, and then I'm gonna cut it off.
Yeah, listen, I, I feel your pain. Listen, that's, I get it. Listen, you come in late, you got a tight budget, you know, uh, even with staff, we know, I mean, other councilmen here, we know teachers should be paid more, it's a tough job, we get it. Uh, it just screams out that, you know, Tim said, you had the idea on the table, the board, to even ask families months ago, to go and see if anybody wanted to move, and they decided to never go and do that. And now we're here asking you to do it two weeks before school, I get it.
Right.
That's why I'm saying, I understand that that's a no. You know, that's not gonna, you're gonna go, they're gonna say, no, it's too tight, blah, blah, blah. That's why there's, there's, they've gotta show something, that, okay, you can't greenlight it until you have a bond, and that's what you're gonna come back with for all the schools. It just seems that at every juncture, where you say, if, if money is so tight, the easiest thing to do in the spring was to go ask families to move and say, you're gonna move here, because just like what you said, if 40 new families show up for Lakeview, they're kinda screwed over there. But if another four, most of them are, are going to Beck, all the new areas are going to Beck. I mean, those are mostly Beck zone, those people could all show up. So, I know you, I mean, reality is, you're not gonna get people to move. You're not, you're not gonna go in and, and take waivers, it's just not gonna happen. So, I, I don't know where we're at, I, I, I've just, I'm kinda dumbfounded, I mean, it's.
Alright, so Ryland and Garrett?
Yeah, I just wanted to make, I wanna make a comment in response to your discussions about the fund balance and financial constraints. Phil, you 100%, you wanna, you wanna swap war stories about frustration with bad decisions made in Austin, and unintended consequences, and centralization of decision-making, and keeping it there instead of here. I'm your best friend. I mean, that stuff beats me down to no end every day. You're right that your board may find themselves in a position to set a precedent. That, my concern is, they've, they've put themselves in a bit of a pickle, because they've set a precedent by building a palace on Bobcat Boulevard. And now you're telling me they don't have 2 point, what was the number? 2.74% of their fund balance to put, commit today to put kids in a brick-and-mortar classroom one year sooner than they know they're already gonna do it anyway. In my opinion, one of the things I always say here is that public safety is number one, and public infrastructure is number two. And everything else, if I have to end everything else, I will end everything else before I deprive those two things. So, I think that with, given that, given that you're looking at 2% to 3% of cash on hand to commit to build something, that, that, that is one year sooner, one school year sooner, basically, is, um, is analogous to prioritizing the basic needs over the other, and obviously, understanding that, that there will be bond elections forthcoming, and, and those things may or may not go down however they were. But my, my, my main message is that I understand that, that you have to prioritize, but there's no greater priority than having a school to put kids in.
Yeah.
But I, you know, they can, you know, they can sit in folding chairs if they have to, but at least they have a school to sit in, you know? And so, it's, it's tough for me to see a lot of the creature comforts and luxuries, and then, um, and then, and then hear that we have to pinch pennies on building a school now versus one year from now, when we all know it will cost more, so.
Garrett?
Just, I got a question for these guys, and the reason I'm gonna ask it is just so, for your verification, so you can hear this. And I'll say for the, uh, people in the audience, you'll learn, there's, there's two members of this council that are invaluable, and that's Ryland and Phillip, and the, the research and the studying they do. If anybody could stay up here for the rest of the time that I'm alive, it'd be those two guys. So, I'm gonna ask those two guys a question, the rest you might know. How many undeveloped lots are there, and what undeveloped areas are there that are in Lakeview? Right, so it's existing homes that are today, so I'm, I'm.
PD 30? Uh, that is 36.
36 lots and 200 some odd units.
Unpermitted, how many unpermitted? Maybe not that many.
There's 125 in the town, but there are, there's about, uh, nine acres next to Churchill Downs. I think that's how big the Welsh and the Coleman property is. And so, that's Beck.
That's Beck, you're right, yeah.
That's Beck, but that, that will be at some point redeveloped. You also have the Villas of Hogan Glen, I believe that's Beck.
Well, what, what Tim just whispered in our ears, our demographer said last, last night, 25%, 25% of our, of our families who are coming from Trophy Club, not just Beck, not just Lakeview, but from Trophy Club are building new. 75% are buying homes already existing.
Right, and so, the point of my question was this, and this is what I wanted you to be able to take back, is the majority, the overwhelming majority of those new homes that are being built, is what we're saying, are moving into Beck, right? So, I just wanna make sure you guys take that back. So, you still, we talked about putting kids over there, and then Lakeview filling up. The odds of that happening are very slim. And I know, Tim, you talked about across the street, it Westlake is in there, but.
You gotta remember, the, the stats that we're seeing is, for every one home purchased that's a new build, there's three or homes selling, that we have no idea who they're selling to, where they're selling to. But the, the stats are, for every one, three existing homes are, are having a sale transfer, because the market is very high right now, as it, as it fires.
Yeah, you have volatility on all sides.
Yeah, but I just wanna point out, the, the actual new growth is, is, is in the backside of things. And that was just more of a point of clarification, and I wanted to brag on those two guys for their encyclopedia-style.
So, I just wanna make a closing comment, 'cause the next item is gonna deal with this specifically in a vote endeavor. First of all, I wanna say I appreciate the citizens showing up and communicating with us. We tried to encourage them to go to the school board and say their piece, but they come here, probably 'cause they saw you were gonna be here, and that had something to do with it. You know, I began by making the suggestion about the fund balance, uh, previously at a meeting. And I understand you're trying to protect that, and I understand you're probably gonna operate on that for a period of time, until taxes come in again, and all those various things. But I also believe that you can take a, a fund balance, do the construction plans and get started, which is not $2 million, to get plans done and get started, and reimburse that general fund with a bond issuance, when the bond sells, assuming it does. If the bond doesn't sell, you're gonna be in a, a big trouble. You're gonna be asking for exceptions to have 25, 28 kids in a classroom. I don't think the people want that either, so the odds of it failing are relatively rare. So, so, even though that seems unlikely, uh, we're at a situation where nothing is really gonna get built over there before you open school. That's a given. A building is not gonna show up in two weeks, right?
Right.
So, we're already in a situation where you're gonna have to do the plan that you pointed out there, and that was deal with the art and music rooms, get the kids in the building, and we'll move down the process. Our next agenda item would be to vote yes or no on an ordinance change. If we say no, then the whole process starts over again, submitting everything. Submitting everything starts over again. And I think this council delayed that once because they said, if you can come back and show us real answers, that you've looked at decisions, you've tried to do the best you can, you have a higher odds of us saying, okay, temporarily. But I think you understand that if we were to approve it temporarily, we're going to say for one year, recognizing that the reality is, if you don't come back with significant progress, we might say, we're not going to issue this, the temporary permit again and you've got to remove the building. And that's even more wasted tax dollars that I don't think any of us want to get into that situation. And I really appreciate the one lady that came and said, approve it because it's the best thing to do for the kids. I understand that. I think our fear is that if we approve it, even though you're standing here tonight saying that this is what your plans are, the reality is that you have a board that you report to, that they're administrative policies and that things take time. And we just want to see some effort that we feel more comfortable about that it's going to really happen. And we understand the complexity that Tim stepped into and that we lost due to illnesses in retirement and due to a death, the majority of the people that were involved in planning and building. That's got to have had a significant effect on everything that was happening in the entire district. So Tim has surely had his handful trying to pick up when things were difficult. So, I think you've got an idea of where we are. We really appreciate you coming tonight, allowing us to get to know each other better and to spend all the time listening to us and listening to the citizens. And so unless somebody's really wanting to make another comment or you want to make some closing comments, we're going to go to the next item, which would be deal with the special use permit exactly. And I don't know where we're going to go with that, but you'll hear that discussion. You'd have an opportunity to speak to it if you choose to do so, just like the citizens were. So if you want to say anything else, I'll surely let you do that.
Just in closing, I still want to come back if you want to see me. I would like to give you that report like I always, I like to do. Some councils love me to do it, some councils really don't care, but I would like to come back and give you the report of the first of the year school, look at our numbers. And I think we're going to find, as we grow together, as long as I'm here, as long as you're on the council, as long as you're community members, I want to make sure the perception is we are listening. I guess that's one of the biggest things that concerned me in this discussion was if there's a perception that the district is not listening, that really falls on me. It really does. Not the board, not the administrators under me, that falls on me. And I want the perception is that we are going to listen. I may not agree with everything that I hear. I may agree with a lot of things I hear, but I'm not going to turn anyone away. So that's, I hope what you'll learn about me as we grow together. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. We've been doing this for over two hours and although I hate to do it, that would delay anything, I need a recess for a few minutes and I suspect other people do too. And so we're going to take a five or seven minute recess. It is six minutes till nine. Come to order.
Order in the court.
It is two minutes after nine and we have returned from recess. Item number thirteen, consider and take appropriate action regarding amendments to section fourteen point oh-two, point two-five-one, temporary use of the Town of Trophy Club Code of Ordinances in order to add the use of a portable classroom and provide other amendments. Council, where we are in this particular situation is, the superintendent has said, and I just confirmed with him, that he's willing to go back, talk to his board, talk to people and explore some of the ideas that we've presented, funds availability, transfer capabilities, those kind of things that we've really been pushing on. We have a choice to approve or deny this amendment to our ordinance, which in fact, correct me if I'm wrong, but then allows for the special use permit to be issued. Is that right?
That is correct, Mayor. Just to clarify, it's a temporary use permit, not a special use permit.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. And so if we voted yes on this, then it would be a matter of just procedure to issue it. Is that right?
If the council votes to approve this, then the temporary use permit would then go to the Planning and Zoning Commission next Thursday for consideration, which would then move to council on the twenty-third for final consideration.
So the reality is, if we approve these changes, it's going to come back around?
That's correct.
Okay.
But this is only changing the ordinance. It's not approving anything tonight.
That is correct.
You're adding the allowable use under the temporary use.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. So I appreciate that. So everybody understands that, assuming we vote yes, we just allow it to be considered as an option for P and Z and to come back to us, which could still be denied. So I just want to mention a couple of things prior to us getting into that. I'm going to refer you to page one hundred and fourteen of your packet. On page one hundred and fourteen is Exhibit A, and one of the changes to the ordinance is eliminating an item called sports events as something that could be handled with a permit.
That is correct.
We have reading that, is that right?
That's correct.
So there are a bunch of redlined things like carnival and circus and fairgrounds, all of those I don't have any problems with. I'm not sure eliminating sports events is necessarily a good thing or not, but I raise that as a concern.
And Mayor, if I may just, the reason we eliminated these out, or we're proposing to eliminate these out of this reg, is the temporary event regulations, which is in a different section, covers the other items.
And then the next page, which is one hundred and fifteen, under item eight D, requires a separate restroom facility. Now, I look at the word separate and think that's not in the portable building. So that seems like a strange word. Portable classroom building shall contain separate restrooms. So I assume that means not as part of the classroom, but it could be construed as it's a second building. I don't support D being there. I think that's a decision made on grade level. We've heard the district talk about that. I think that's a case-by-case basis and I would hate to leave it that particular way. And then the other point that I want to make on page one fifteen, down under estate sales, P and Z recommended these changes because we had another item on our future agenda list to deal with, a way to deal with estate sales. And I just want to point out that under estate sales, it says in the second sentence, by a person who has recently deceased or who must dispose a majority of his or her personal property to facilitate a move. So estate sale is somewhat of a misnomer. It could be a moving sale because it says to facilitate a move. So I'm not sure that's the best word. And then I want to point out that there's the three-year period, that if we allow these estate sales, that only one per an address in three years. And the other thing that I would recommend is that, it seems to me that if somebody said I was going to go have a estate sale or moving sale, that it might span more than like a one-day event or a two-day event. And so I propose that you put wording in there that say, the period of the sale shall not exceed fourteen days. So that it could be more than two weekends, but it couldn't go forever. So those are the things, if you decide you want to accept the changes, council, that have been presented, that I want you to see that it's not just a portable classroom change. So anybody else have some comments about this?
Do you want to separate them?
Garrett, do you have a question?
Very quickly, on the estate sale point you just mentioned, only one estate sale per address in any three-year period. I think that should also include for the same owner because theoretically, in theory, I could buy a house today and someone, you know, I pass away and then someone buys my house and two years later he passes away. Well, he couldn't have an estate sale because it's the same address.
And you wouldn't want to move into that house again.
Well, all I'm saying is, if you're going to write the, it should be for the same owner, not necessarily just use the address alone. That's all I'm suggesting.
I agree. Okay. All right. Garrett, did you have something?
My only point was that is the funniest comment Greg has made my entire time on council. No, my legitimate question is, is this not, should this not go before all these changes? Should P and Z not be recommending these to us instead of us pushing them back down to them? Did I misunderstood, Stan, what you said at first?
They sent this.
They sent that to us.
Okay, I thought you had said that we were making this-
But we're going to, if we amend the ordinance, then the request for the temporary use permit goes to P and Z.
So just the temporary?
Then they would have the ability to either approve or not based on things.
I completely misunderstood what you said. And is this not better handled just by giving the ISD a waiver? Should we have to go through the changing of the process?
Well, I tried that before, Garrett.
And I'm just asking out loud. I know we've talked about this before, but there's a lot more people here than there usually is.
I don't, I don't know that we can grant a waiver.
David, can we, can we grant the ISD just a waiver instead of changing the ordinance altogether?
I mean, you don't have any specifics or anything else about-
It's hard to put conditions on it.
You don't have anything before you tonight for the first part.
Okay, I'm just asking.
And actually, this ordinance is addressing many other issues than just the portable classroom.
No, I know that. I'm just saying, we could have, we could have just given a waiver though, right?
I don't know. We didn't come up with a way to do that.
We haven't seen a process on that or sent requests. And this process had already been begun before they came forward, hadn't it? It gets me a little bit.
So, not really, but-
Kind of spurred on by this, but-
We tried to figure out a way to do that, but it wasn't an easy thing to accomplish based on what, everything happened, so.
Okay.
All right. Tim?
So an estate sale, or basically a moving sale is what it's saying, you could have homes all over the town selling stuff at all times. They just can't put it out in their driveway, but it could be garage sale, so to speak.
They have to get a permit, pay a permit fee to do that, but yes.
Right, but I mean, it could happen. So now we're changing from going just twice a year to at any time. If I'm moving, I could go get a permit and-
But only once per address?
No, I realize that, but I mean, with all the turnover, I'm just thinking, all the turnover that's going on here, everybody could be putting their stuff up, not just on Facebook, but they could just go in and say, it's for sale.
Get a permit and have it, yeah.
And there's no requirement that they have to move? They want to buy all new stuff in their house?
Facilitate a move.
Well, it says to facilitate a move. I don't, you know.
From the one bedroom to the other.
I don't know how you enforce it, but nevertheless, that's, and people are dying to have one.
All right. I don't disagree. Let's raise our hands.
We're just listening to all the great, great, great jokes tonight. On estate sales, what is our current status in terms of, I am, I'm downsizing, I'm moving to a condo in a hut in an island somewhere, I'm going to sell everything, Ron? What are my options today?
Garage sales are prohibited, except for the semi-annual.
Right.
Estate sales are prohibited as well.
They're completely prohibited.
You would not be able to sell it out of your driveway.
I am a big fan of commerce and the people's right to engage in commerce. And I favor including estate sales in this. I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it opened up a little bit further because most of the conditions here, while well-meaning are very difficult to enforce and probably would not have any practical enforcement results. And again, I think if you have stuff you want to sell, you should be able to sell it. So I would, I'd like to maybe, I'd like to, I don't know how you guys want to handle it because some of you may disagree with me on garage sales and you don't want to open it up to just any old garage sale, whereas I really don't care. But I think maybe the conditions on someone's, I mean, how do you prove someone's moving or whatever? And obviously the three-year period thing, like they said, so I would be in favor of keeping this, but loosening it a little bit.
All right. So, Greg?
See if I support you next year.
That's right.
Oh, he doesn't need you. He doesn't want your support.
In my experience, over the years here, there are estate sales, but generally the homeowner brings in a company and they clear the house out rather than post signs all over town or, because they can't, obviously. And that's what, I'm going to say, at least three or four over the years I've seen, they just get maybe one, two or three companies. They don't just have people coming and going. A company will come in with a truck, moving truck, and just buy as much as possible. That's what they're currently doing.
That has not been my experience. I've had three people approach me about doing estate sales and the problem was they contracted with a company to do it, but it was at their house. So next thing you know, they advertise in the newspaper, they don't put outside, they just advertise in the newspaper.
You might have misunderstood me. I'm not saying that they took it on consignment, they would just come in and buy the stuff.
In this case, they didn't buy it. They held a sale for those three people. So I just didn't want you to approve this without recognizing it had other aspects in it. But I wanted to make sure you understood.
And to that point, I'm going to, when we get to a motion, I'm going to propose a change to item nine, because if we don't decide tonight, it's going to have to circle all the way back through P and Z again. And I'd like to save those guys the hassle of having to revisit the exact same thing they've already debated.
So, I just want to go over one thing. So on that one thing, what I would be against is just having property outside. I think we all know people who are selling stuff out of their homes all day long. A lady on my street's really great, she loves buying new stuff and selling it on, she uses it for a month and it's gone. It's amazing.
Same address as you live?
She's right across the street.
Oh, right across the street, huh?
Right across the street. And, but so as long as, you know, I'm all for commerce, but I'm not, I don't want it to get to a point where it's out in somebody's garage all, driveway all the time. Now you're affecting the neighbors and the towns, you know? So if it's inside, it's different, so.
Well, to Jim's point, it should be one sale per titled homeowner.
Language like that. You might have another, you might have some life event that changes, that doesn't change the ownership of the home, but changes the situation substantially. We're way out of our, we're way out of our league in trying to regulate people's lives if we're worried about whether or not they had a spouse die or a child die or they died. I mean, seriously, you know, just-
All right. So I'm going to try to move us forward and recognizing that I'm trying to divide this a little bit, but without just doing a division, I'm going to move the approval of whatever this is. Are we only changing Exhibit A or are we doing the entire?
Proposed ordinance twenty sixteen dash twenty-seven.
Okay. Twenty sixteen, that's what?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
P and Z.
Eliminating item eight D, which is the requirement for portable classroom building shall contain separate restroom facilities in each portable classroom building. So that is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. So recognizing that, Ryland, if you want to change something else that you can amend further, or we can vote just on that amendment and then the amended motion would be back.
Yeah, I'll move, I'll make a motion to amend, to amend Nick's motion to include a modification on item nine, estate sales to read as follows. Estate sales, an estate sale is a sale or auction to dispose of a substantial portion of the materials owned by a person. Estate sales shall not include garage sales. Each, an estate sale shall only require the approval of the Planning and Zoning Administrator and shall only require the submission of a temporary use permit application fee.
Second.
Okay, so to explain the intent of what I removed there, I basically just said, we're not worrying about why they're selling it, just the fact that they are, and we're taking out the external. It's basically, it can't be a garage sale, basically.
All right.
And we're taking out the timing because again, yeah, I just feel like we don't, we can't foresee what someone's personal circumstance would be.
All right. So you took out the three years, you became more specific about how often, I mean-
I just left it, I left it open.
Okay. And so the motion was to approve twenty sixteen dash twenty-seven P and Z by eliminating eight D and the amendment is to deal with paragraph nine as Ryland moved an amendment. So we will deal with the amendment first. All right. So any questions or debate about the amendment?
Yeah, how do you stop then some-
Yeah, how, how do you stop then somebody from doing this weekly?
You don't.
So you, you're okay with thousand homes in Trophy Club having estate sales every week?
Sure.
For as many weeks as they want.
Why are you not, there's no signs. We have a sign ordinance. I'll put it to you this way.
I know, but they don't know that.
Why are you, and, why are you not okay?
They have to come get a permit.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to an estate sale. I just think that there should be some limit on how many you're gonna have a, in a particular time period.
But there are already.
I don't want Kevin Carr having an estate sale every week next door to me. You know, that's, that's what I'm saying. I don't want that. As a, as somebody who lives in a neighborhood, I don't want four houses having estate sales every week.
Yeah, but I could do, I could, I could come up with any number of activities that I could organize at my house that would be just as much of a nuisance. And we've got to deal with those as nuisances and not as prohibitions of a specific behavior.
And, and how do you, how does the Planning and Zoning Administrator make the decision that a person is actually disposing of a substantial portion of his materials?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Because you're requiring that.
Yeah, but, well, that, I'm just, that part was already included in what was given to us tonight.
But you didn't take it out, so you're requiring.
He didn't take it out.
Yeah.
So how do we deal with that?
At this point, what would be the fee? We have to amend our fee, schedule of fees?
Uh, to, be under a temporary use permit is twenty-five dollars. Uh, you know, as far as enforcement, I mean, there, we can create any level of bureaucracy you want. I mean, we can require a death certificate. We can require a notice of eviction, uh, on a move. I mean, many cities avoid this for that reason, but, uh, I mean, we, if, if you would like, we can require a, a copy of a death certificate to issue the permit.
No, 'cause I, I don't, I don't intend to, I actually took that, that requirement out. Yeah, so it would have to be something relative to the substantial portion.
On a significant move typically, that's related to evictions.
Yeah.
Enforce outs, things like that, where they, you have to get rid of everything and they have nowhere to go, or something along those lines, or they vanished. I don't know, there's, there's usually rare instances, but.
And so the other question I would have is you, you left in estate sales shall not include garage sales. So are you saying that you can't put anything in the garage? What, what makes an estate sale different from a garage sale?
I didn't write, I didn't write that part. I'm just acknowledging that you guys want to continue to prohibit garage sales. And I'll let y'all figure out how to regulate that, 'cause y'all are the master regulators.
All right, Dennis, you have a comment.
Dennis Sheridan, One Hill Press Court. Um, coming to that, do we have a definition of a garage sale in order to be, once again, how do you enforce? Ron?
I'm in the process of looking that up right now, actually. If you give me one moment.
So while you're looking it up, Garrett wanted to say something.
All right. I just wanted to chime in on this debate, 'cause this is the one time that I'm gonna agree with Phillip and not Libertarian Ryland, which pains me unfortunately.
Regulator.
It, yeah, exactly. It's, and I know I bring this up over and over and over again. It's like, it, whoop. When we all decided to move in a big old group together, we have to live under certain rules, which I hate. But if we say you can't have directional signs, but we say you can, it's like, where, where do we draw that line? And I understand, that's our job, and that's why we got elected to sit up here is to draw that line, as much as I hate to. Um, I think that on this particular issue, there's gotta be some level of regulation if we're gonna keep the, the peace. And I, I completely agree with what Phillip's saying here. Um, although in theory, I agree with you, Ryland. It's, you know, I don't want my neighbor having a, a, estate sale every weekend.
But see, that's, that's the thing. At, at some point, it crosses into operating a business, and I know we have ordinances against operating a business. So my point is, don't make it more, what we do, what government does and what government makes the mistake on over and over is making it more difficult for people who just want to get something done.
Agreed.
And we will make it more, we are putting, we are, we are possibly on the table here, if this amendment fails, we are gonna put into law in Trophy Club where we have control, something where someone has to prove to us that somebody died, or that they got evicted, or that they defaulted on a loan, or I don't know what. That's ludicrous. It's their.
So let's, please go in order.
So where does it fit in? Um, agreed, hundred percent. So at what point is it considered a business versus it being a, I think that's.
So Tim, before I come to you.
I guess David does.
My concern is I would rather limit it by so many, one a year, or whatever that phrase is, as opposed to trying to determine it's a business.
Yeah.
'Cause I think we have a real hard time trying to determine it's a business. So limit it to be once a year, once every three years, whatever that might be. The last thing I wanted to do with this was eliminate our twice-a-year town garage sale that the Women's Club used as a fundraiser. I wanted to allow some special use situations that seem to be things that we shouldn't limit, that we ought to allow. If they got out of hand, then we deal with that. But at this point, I can't assume that they're necessarily gonna get out of town. We do have a fairly transient, uh, citizens, but quite frankly, uh, if, if, you know, they every now and then were leaving and had a garage sale, they're not gonna be back, are they? So it's, it's not necessarily a big deal. All right, so Tim, and then I'm gonna go get a definition if you found something.
Yeah, the definition of a garage sale, and this comes out of the zoning ordinance, is a sale of previously owned domestic and household items on-site by the resident of a single-family detached dwelling. This does not include commercial retail sales. See community garage sale.
All right, so.
Very broad.
Yeah, so for me, I want to make sure that it states that no property can be outside, right? Nothing can be, it has to be an inside sale, which the garage sale doesn't really say that, so I want to make sure that it says that. Second thing is, once or twice a year is, is totally fine, and, and then if you have two garage sales, right, that people want to do that, that gives them four oppor, three or four opportunities to sell. Uh, above that, if somebody comes in, I think immediately the staff would know that they already got one, and they would say, you're trying to run a business. You can't do that. I think it would be easy, but I, I would agree once or twice a year that you, you could allow this sort of thing, uh, per location, per, um, and then, uh, I want to make sure though, that the garage sale, that it states in, uh, on number nine, that there can be no outside items. Nothing can be, you know, um, placed outside.
So you could change estate sales should not include garage sales, which, uh, would be outside of the main building, main residence.
Uh, yeah, where any items are, are placed, housed, showing outside.
Visible from the street.
Visible from the street.
We have a lot of visible from the street in our code ordinances.
And the other thing is, um, the garage sale doesn't mention anything about apartments.
Yeah, I caught that too.
Which, I mean, is staggering to me, so, I mean, we, we want to make sure we come back at some other point and tighten that language up because we have apartments and we're going to have more apartments, so.
Uh, the, well, the way that would be interpreted is they're prohibited because they're not.
Do anything.
They're not.
Okay.
Uh, they're not mentioning.
I know that's not the, well, oh, so on Garage Sale Day though, they all, they're out there. So they're prohibited, but I know when we.
They don't get a permit from us.
What's that?
They don't get a permit from us for Garage Sale Day.
When the community, the community garage sale has its own definition, which is more encompassing.
Oh, okay, all right. I got you. Never mind. Carry on.
All right, so you have an amendment. Uh, does anyone want to amend the amendment?
So we want to amend the amendment to state, um, that there'll be no items, uh, in public view outside.
And do you want to add?
Number per year.
One year.
Number per year.
And one year, one per year.
One per year, okay. So we have a motion to amend the amendment, uh, by, uh, Tim Kurtz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Perro. To amend the amendment to say that, uh, no items for sale can be visible from the street. And two, that only, uh, sale should not be allowed per address. Only one sale shall be allowed per address per year. All right, any other discussion? Any comments from the citizens? All right. Hearing no comments, we'll vote on the amendment to the amendment. Uh, Tim Kurtz moved, Perro seconded, uh, to change the, um, amendment uh, to say that no items can be displayed to be visible from the street, and that only one estate sale shall be allowed per address per year. Any other discussion? All in favor of the amendment to the amendment, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. It does pass. So we're now back to the amendment. So the amendment has that which we voted upon, plus Ryland's change.
Would you like me to reread and aggregate?
So reread and accurately deal with that.
Yeah, so on the floor now would be changing item nine to read, estate sales, an estate sale is a sale or auction to dispose of a substantial portion of the materials owned by a person. Estate sales, estate sales shall, shall not include garage sales and shall not provide or have items for sale visible from the street. Uh, only one estate shell, sale shall be allowed per address in any one-year period. An estate sha, sale shall only require the approval of the Planning and Zoning Administrator and shall only require the submission of a temporary use permit application and fee.
All right. Everybody understand that? So what that means is we're not making a decision about that there was someone deceased, nor that you're trying to facilitate a move. You come in, you ask a permit. We grant a permit, one time, they pay the fee, but they can't display it outside, and they can't have more than one a year. Does that seem okay? Yep. All right.
Hold, hold on one second.
Yep.
Um, I'd like to amend that to say, um, the approval of the Planning and Zoning Administrator or his designee.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Hearing none, we'll vote on the amendment to the amendment to add after administrator or his designee. All in favor of the amendment to the amendment, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It does carry unanimously. We're now back to the amendment as amended. Yeah, keep up with this. Poor Holly has to do that. I don't choose to say that. All right, so the amendment to the amendment is changing paragraph nine. It's all it's dealing with. Everybody clear on that vote? All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Item nine has been amended. Now we're back to the main motion as amended, and the main motion was to approve, um, twenty sixteen P and Z, uh, dash twenty-seven P and Z with the striking of eight D that dealt with separate restrooms. And with the amendment to paragraph nine.
Eric, can I make one point?
Yes.
Uh, item I, which you see in the markup, which is page one fifteen.
Right.
Uh, is not in the ordinance. That was removed, uh, given the fact that, uh, portable classrooms for private schools have to be treated equally with public schools.
All right, thank you very much for pointing out on page one fifteen, item I is not on, in the ordinance. I appreciate you pointing that out, 'cause I was dealing with one fifteen.
Yeah.
For all my notes. All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
And it would, and I kind of want to have the discussion for, for the benefit of the folks that are listening. Um, because, you know, we've been talking a lot about, about portable classrooms, and we've had some, uh, hesitation on what, on whether or not to allow them. Um, but I favor having this provision in the, in the temporary use ordinance because it provides for a structured way to deal with those requests, whereas right now we have an unstructured way to deal with those requests. Um, would, would you say, Ron, that that, that, that is basically what we're doing here? That's the purpose of this?
That's correct.
Okay.
Of D?
Of, no, of, of, of the entire.
The entire thing.
Of the entire use of, of all of item eight, is basically we're providing for a, for a structured and codified way to deal with the request now or in the future that gives a lot more direction on how to proceed.
Right. All right, uh, Phillip, did you have a question?
I had a question. We're, we're, you know, I, I've been sort of the ringleader of the bathroom type situation. Because I, I don't like.
Did you say that into the microphone?
I don't like the buddy system and, and I, uh, but I will say this. Uh, I'm a lot more comfortable with fourth and fifth graders than I am with, uh, first graders, or my kids, you know, who are in second grade now. Um, but I think that Jay sort of gives us the, the out that we can, we could add that if we potentially saw that as a problem for other situations. So I'm glad that, that Jay, which Jay says, any other conditions as determined by the town council at final approval. So we can actually add other things that we may, in our infinite wisdom, have thought of, or other councils on down the road, uh, you know, they may think of others that could.
I mean, part of my rationale for D was, uh, if P and, if you leave D in there and it goes to P and Z and there's no portable classroom, what's P and Z gonna do?
And they can't say yes.
You know, they're gonna say no.
Yeah.
So this allows them to say, yes, forward it on, and you deal with the classrooms. And if you're gonna ask the school district, well, tell me what cla, what grade you're gonna put there, and they're vague, you can vote no. If they say fourth and fifth, you can believe them and vote yes, and you deal with it, or you can require a restroom. So that was the reason I did it, was administratively it seemed to work better. All right, so we have the motion before us to approve twenty sixteen dash twenty-seven P and Z as moved with an amendment and as amended later.
Can, can I ask the, the chief one thing on H?
Which chief? You have two here.
Uh, the, the police chief. Uh, Chief Arada. Is, is this something that? What, what basically, how, how do you determine whether an active shooter would have an, an additional advantage? Um, because P and Z was sort of specific in saying that, uh, it has to adhere to the security plan such that, that an active shooter would not have an additional advantage apart from the existing school's security plan. And I just don't know how, how you can actually prevent, I mean, an active shooter, if you're inside a school, there's that sense of security, or at least there's walls. This is, this is a detached piece of property, a detached thing, and I don't see that, how, how you can actually prevent a active shooter from hav, not having an advantage.
Well, the, the only consideration would be, it's, it's a lockdown situation. So if the, if the room locks down as fast as the school does, it, the act, if you're assuming an active shooter is into a school building, he's already there. And then lockdown means each classroom is locked down, each door's locked, and so it restricts the movement of the person to hallways or larger rooms that aren't locked down. So in this instance, they may actually be safer if they're outside the main structure.
Do you have the drawing? Did he give you one of these?
Somebody want to pass one down to him?
Is there any recommendation as, you know, I don't know what's out there now. I think maybe you have walked it. Um, but I don't know as far as fencing, what, what you would recommend, or if what they have is, is adequate. And, and if this, if this, if we approve this, does it give you the, you know, it says that the police chief to review and approve the plan prior to occupancy of the building, but I think that's sort of talking about the security. I'd much, I'd, I'd be a lot more comfortable if you signed off on what you thought, you know, if, if the fencing that they're gonna put in, uh, you know, would be to, would be something that you would recommend. Uh, and I don't know that if, if we can, if we have that in the ordinance, or, you know, 'cause I don't, I don't, what, I guess my concern is that one that they're not putting in, uh, that goes up the side, right there by the parking lot, you know, have you, do you know what's there now? Is, is that just a four-foot fence, or is it?
The, the wrought iron behind the school that goes along the walkway with the openings is, it, it's actually bigger than four feet, isn't it?
I think it's five.
Yeah.
Five feet.
Yeah. And, 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 um, the superintendent makes a good point that that is a problem, and it's been there, so. And Lakeview has the same issue. You can walk right from the back of people's houses to the school building.
I think, I think to address perhaps your questions or concern, Councilmember Schaffner, one of the advantages that we have is a really great relationship with NISD, not just on a facility standpoint or relate, you know, anything you do. It's, it's also on safety and security. And I think, uh, Chief Arada would get with Dr. Gant, who is over security for NISD, and work with the administration and, and, uh, Mr. McClure, Dr. Warren, and others, to ensure that whatever they do, um, we, we know exactly what the protocols are and how we would respond in a situation, and also advise them of risks or threats that we may see in order to better prevent, uh, any type of uh, action by someone who would want to harm our kids.
All right, so we have, uh, the main motion as amended before us. Any further discussion? Am I right that that's where we are? Main motion as amended. All in favor of the main motion as amended, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. So I think Greg was the only opposed. Is that right? Did I get that right? All right, so, uh, we have dealt with, uh, item thirteen. Uh, Dr. Warren, thank you for coming tonight. I think where that puts us is, uh, we've amended our ordinance that would allow it, so the process could go back through P and Z, uh, and, uh, we appreciate your willingness to go explore some of those items so that when it does come forward, uh, the citizens feel better about what we're doing and we feel better.
And when you deem it appropriate, I'll be back to report.
All righty.
Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone.
Nice to meet you.
Now, the rest of you citizens can't leave? We're gonna. We're gonna, Police Chief is gonna make you stay and listen to the budget.
All the fun stuff is later, actually.
We got, we got five more hours of stuff.
This deal has to come before us. It's not approved.
He will.
No, if, can, you make.
He, they know that. He's just saying, "I'll come back and talk to you when he's referenced."
No, no, I'm talking about the citizens.
Oh, the citizens have to come back?
No.
Let them know that we do not.
This is not an approval.
Oh, I said that earlier.
And just now.
Why does he come back when we say to come back? Doesn't he come back right away?
If he submits, he comes back, yeah. But he's, he's talking about that other time, after school starts.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Uh, let me see exactly, uh... Yeah, recognizing that. All right, so what I'm gonna do is, is I'm gonna skip item 14 for right now, so, because we have citizens that have been waiting and, and businesses that have been waiting and try to come back to that mud issue. Uh, item 15, consider to take appropriate action regarding the design of the Veterans' Memorial. Receive a presentation from T. Nolan Perkins. Discussion of same. You have an attachment? And, Mike, are you doing the presentation or talking to us? All right?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mike Wilson, T. Nolan Perkins, 5237 North Riverside in Fort Worth. Get this set up here. Wanted to come back before you, as I'd mentioned last month, uh, I did a brief presentation, and I told you before we went out to bid, we would come one final time, discuss the service towers and, uh, the final design of the project. Tonight, we're looking for, uh, essentially two directions, uh, from council, one being the service towers themselves, and the other being any lighting for the memorial. So I'll go through this, and then, um, we'll talk about each item. So, once again, overall picture of the memorial. Parking lot that y'all have approved at a previous council, and the, the existing Veterans' Memorial here off of, uh, Parkview Drive. The design renderings, uh, in the July council meeting, uh, you guys had selected option two, which was the brick pavers, uh, around the flagpole in lieu of walking up to it. Uh, so we've taken that and further developed that with the service towers. The next slide is just a little bit bigger blow-up. Uh, realize the, uh, last time it was a little hard to see, so, uh, as we discussed, there's six service towers around the perimeter of the circle, seat walls, four-seat walls that flank the flagpole in the center, and then the memorial bricks, uh, in a circular pattern around the, um, flagpole. This is just a perspective and elevation of the proposed seat wall. It'll be a stone veneer faced with a cast stone cap, um, and then that'll be the four, four areas as discussed around the flagpole. As far as the service towers are, are concerned, we've got two options. Uh, we've worked with the, um, per direction of council, we, uh, went back, actually reached out to the Women's Club and, uh, spoke with Carol Jensen, and, um, she provided us some input for, as far as the service towers go. The option one, um, is closely what resembles to what's in Saginaw, uh, and that is the option they really like. They looked at several around the country, um, but they like this option. So we took that. It's a four-foot tall, uh, one, one foot wide, uh, excuse me, one foot four wide by four-inch deep granite, uh, memorial, and then there is a one-by-one plaque for each, uh, division of the, uh, of the branches, and then the POW.
Are the plaques on both sides, or just on one side?
They are just on the front side, the face side of the memorial. Um, and then we took another option. Option two was the, uh, similar option, but taking what staff said about having an angled top. We created a column, a stone veneer column that would be wrapped on all four sides that matched the seat wall, and then an angled plaque, uh, one foot six by two-foot, uh, tall plaque with the, uh, inset of the memorial inside of that. This next slide shows just the two options, um, in elevation, just, uh, for your consideration. Keep that in mind. I wanna go back to the blow-up. Back up to this one. The next thing is the lighting. The light, and the reason I wanna go back to the lighting bef, and talk about that before you make a decision on the service towers, is the lighting could have an impact on which option you choose for the service towers. Uh, one thing that the Women's Club didn't mention they would like to see is that the entry sign be lit, uh, from either, uh, the street or for, from ground-mounted lights that shine up to it. Uh, the other thing we were considering and wanted direction from the council is whether or not to light the path up to the memorial, and then internal lights in the memorial itself. Due to the adjacent neighbors, what we would recommend is bollard lighting that just shines the path itself, uh, shows some ambient lighting that people can see from both the street approach and the trail approach, as well as internal bollard lighting, uh, inside the memorial itself. Going back to the service towers, the option, option one is a vertical tower, and the options we have for lighting are to put a ground-mounted flush floodlight that shines up on the memorial itself. Uh, they're ground-mounted flush with the ground, and they'll project the light up and on the memorial. The, uh, the angled option is a little more difficult when it comes to lighting, obviously. If you put a ground-mounted light here, it really doesn't serve the purpose to, to light the memorial itself. The bollard lighting would cho, would throw some ambient lighting on it, um, but I just wanted to mention that before you made your decision on the service towers.
Regarding the pathway lighting, is it not possible to get LED flush-matted lights along the side of the path at, uh, and accomplish the same thing without bollards?
It is. Uh, it's just the, you're talking about flush in the ground. Uh, it's just the throw of that. Those shine more up directly, rather than throwing out across the path.
You're talking about an LED, like a strip light along the side where it's flush with the ground?
Oh, flush all the way, like a rope light type.
Way up with LED lights?
That's an option. It would be, uh, significantly more expensive with the LED. It, it's like a continuous rope light.
I didn't know bollards versus a string of lights. I didn't know the difference.
Yeah, it, I mean, there's multiple options you can do. In situations like this, the, the bollard lighting has seemed to, to keep the light down and focus more on the path itself, it seems to be the, the preferred option, but...
My only concern with option one is potential vandalism of a four-inch piece of granite, and somebody deciding, I assume it's gonna be mounted in concrete, so it doesn't get...
This, the plaques actually come a total of six feet tall. Two foot of it is buried in the ground.
So my concern is, uh, potential somebody deciding they wanna hit against it or whatever and break it versus option two seems like, uh, a, a standard that's not gonna be subjected to that, other than unless they break the granite top itself.
The granite top.
By chipping it or whatever. But I understand the lighting issue becomes more difficult with option two. I'm not sure that I see night events there necessarily, uh, so I don't know for me that lighting the service emblem itself is that significant. Accent lighting about the facility, I think, is nice, but I don't know that I have to light the service emblem. That's just me. Anybody else? Greg?
Just a quick question. I've got an email from Carol Jensen, Jensen, sorry, uh, and she prefers option two.
That's what I thought she said.
She said option, I thought you said option one.
He did.
What did we change the park hours to?
Sorry.
Excuse me, in town.
Excuse me, when I said option two.
That's the lighting mix.
Let me go back. Option two was the, the option to have the bricks in a circular pattern.
Oh, okay.
Versus the walk-up.
Sorry.
And then we had two options for the service tower, sorry.
So the decision we're making is the service tower option, and what's the other decision?
And then the direction on the lighting.
The direction on the lighting, okay.
Sure.
All right. So anybody wanna comment, so that we understand some direction here?
Well, I'll go, I'll go with option two as well on the service tower. I think that it, it's a nice complement for the, the seating area, since the stone is, is the same, and, uh, as you say, Mayor, it's, uh, less, uh, subject to vandalism with the four-foot granite plaque that you can grab hold of and, and probably fracture a lot easier than those shorter towers.
Anybody else on light eat or anything else?
Well, while we're here, uh, I'm lucky that my wife is also on the Women's Board, so there, there's a couple of questions I just wanna go over. Now, we've agreed to do phase one. Now, if they wanna continue and raise some additional money, uh, there was a, a bigger plan.
That's correct.
Is that still on the table? Does that have to be changed in any way?
It, it would have to be modified slightly, but there, there would be room to, to expand it in the future.
And they had initial cost of about eighty-two or eighty-four thousand dollars. We, we're at a hundred and twenty-five. Just explain to us the difference. When I say us, the, the, should say...
We're at about, uh, a hundred thousand right now, uh, for the, the total cost. Uh, mainly, that's to do with the, um, uh, the, the type of service towers that are being put in, uh, versus just a standard light, uh, oblast type that we had come before, um, as well as some additional lighting, uh, for the facility. Um, there's more, uh, accent lighting, if you will, up to it. The, the hundred thousand would include the lighting of the paths as well.
Now, I, just, my mind's a blank over there. Do we have benches there already?
Yes, yes, there are.
We're pulling them out and putting new...
We're taking, everything will come out with the exception of the flagpole and the base itself.
Uh, speaking of the flagpole, can we get a bigger flag?
That, that's a different issue.
Well, no.
We can.
It, it is. It's not in the proposal plan here.
Oh, okay.
You can deal with the flag issue separately.
All right. You like the flagpole?
What are you talking, I'm asking you.
Yeah, I think the flag looks a little small, just bringing it up.
He's saying the flag.
Just the flag itself.
Sorry, I'm, you know.
All right.
All right.
All right, so, um, uh, the lighting decision is, what's A and B of the lighting decision?
It's, it's not necessarily an A and B. Uh, we are gonna light the flagpole at a minimum. Um, there's a, that big existing floodlight that's out there now. That will come out, and then there will be, uh, a flag that...
Flushmount light for the flag.
Flushmount lights for the flagpole, yes, sir. Um, and then we were talking about lighting the paths with bollard lighting, uh, coming up from the road, as well as from the trail, lighting the entry, uh, plaque, and then lighting, any lighting within the memorial itself. If you want bollard lighting, uh, we could put bollard lighting in between the memorials on either side to show some ambient lighting, uh, and then it would light the path around the benches as well.
All right. So, Ryland?
Uh, I would just say that personally for me, knowing that, um, the events that take place here aren't really gonna be happening in the dark, I'd prefer to just stick with illuminating the flag, and that's all.
I mean, I'm sorry, Jim had his hand up in there, Greg. I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, we, we just found out we're designing a memorial for, in front of the firehouse for 9/11, and one of the things they're doing with their lighting is putting a single LED directly below the artifact that we're gonna be unveiling on 9/11. Uh, and they just build that, it, little fixture into the podium, uh, below the artifact, so it's, it shines straight up, and it's just one single LED fixture.
Correct.
And so that could probably work the same way with this, if the decision was to light the emblems with an LED in that slanted slab, so it's shown on the...
Only if the slab was something that would illuminate.
I'm sorry.
Gran, if it's a granite slab, it's not gonna illuminate.
No, but if the, if the LED bulb was in front of the plaque, it could shine on the plaque and be part of the slab, just like we're doing out front.
It'd be, it'd be difficult to do with this option because of the angle of this slant. The, I mean, if you envision that being flush here, it's actually gonna shine out of the plaque versus shining on the plaque itself.
We also have another one at the base of the memorial, which will shine up at an angle as well, and it's an LED.
Right. And, and that would be, if we did option one, that would be a similar situation, that the light would shine straight up the, the service tower itself. It's the angled option that makes it a little difficult to light that with that single LED flush mount, to get that light to shine on the face of this.
All right, Greg?
Regarding an event, uh, the way the benches are situated, there should be no problem with having a, a, a large amount of visitors, like we had at the cemetery. Jim, how many people would you estimate at the cemetery?
We got a hundred and fifty approximately.
Any, any issue with that?
They're gonna be standing outside the shrubs if they're a hundred and fifty.
They're not all gonna fit in here, for sure. They're gonna be all around.
And some will probably be using the parking lot, but just to the right there as well, so we can have it set up, so there's displays looking in, looking out. Uh, there's a lot of room to put people.
I'm in favor of the bollard lighting along the walkway and inside the circle, and I'm okay with some kind of lighting on the entry, uh, sign. I, I just want us to be somewhat energy efficient with all of this, so...
Correct, and they will be.
I, I think I agree with Ryland on this. I, I don't, we don't light our other paths, so I don't, I'm not sure that, you know, this will get a lot of use at night, and it's considered a park. I'm not, I doubt that the police are gonna, you know, uh, go and run somebody off who's grieving or something, but, uh, I, I don't, I'm not sure, I don't understand quite exactly what you're trying to light, you know, other than certainly the flag needs to be lit, but I'm not sure that...
It was only walkway lighting, basically.
Yeah, and, and we don't walk in, we don't, to my knowledge, we don't have any other walkway lights for paths.
And in reality, we're gonna have Veterans' Day ceremonies there, uh, we'll probably have a fall-over Memorial Day, people going there on Memorial Day, other than those two events, and then people going there during the daytime, or early evening, or morning. Uh, again, I don't see a nighttime event taking place there myself.
All right. Anybody, uh, feel strongly that you won't lighting?
No, but are you gonna be lighting the, uh, service towers? Oh, that in conjunction with...
You don't do lighting, you don't do anything.
Lighting, okay, that's fine.
We're, we're agenda to make, to make it, take action.
We are, yes.
Yeah. I, I'd much rather see really good lighting for the flagpole. You know, not, not to, to shave any corners there, just, just really good lighting where that flagpole is lit, you know? That's what I would rather see.
I agree.
All right. So does somebody wanna make a motion, and then we'll allow for discussion, and anybody to make comments about it?
Yeah, I'm, or go ahead, Jim.
A motion to approve service tower option two, and to proceed with the project as presented, uh, with no additional lighting, other than a high-quality flush-mount flag illumination.
Second.
All right, so Jim Perro moved, and Ryland Rose seconded, uh, to approve the plans, uh, selecting service tower option two, and the only lighting being good lighting of the flagpole and flag itself. All right, so any citizen wanna make some comments about this? You don't have to sign up, you can just come up and identify yourself if you wanna do so. Connie? Wait till you get there.
Connie White, 119 Choffee Club Drive. I just have a clarification. Um, when you said, when, um, Mike said you were gonna tear out, but we're still going to leave the pathway up to it, right? And the, and the sign?
Yes, ma'am, we're, we're adding that.
We will tear out to right there.
Okay.
And that'll be the improvements from there to there. But all this remains.
And so where would the Women's Club put their paver, pavers? Where it was originally planned?
In that middle.
In that little, almost triangular piece?
In the center.
Where it says dedication pavement.
Right there, right there, okay.
Around the flagpole.
All right.
And would it be safe in assuming we would continue selling pavers to put in there?
You're gonna have to buy enough to put in what you have engraved, plus fill it.
Plus fill it.
And typically, what you do in that is buy enough so that people can have them engraved, and you just swap them out. You don't need to buy a hundred to swap out. You buy ten or fifteen extra, you get those engraved, put them in there, you end up with ten or fifteen now that you pulled out, and you just recycle those.
Oh, I see.
So you don't need a big supply unless you're gonna get a hundred of them done at one time.
Right.
All right. Thank you, Connie, for asking the question. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Connie, for asking the question. Anybody else? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. All right.
And we're shooting to get this done by...
Veterans Day.
Okay, so this is what we're probably going to do now that we have this approved. We're going to bid on the parking lots next week. No? Thought it was next week.
Well, what we're doing is to put this whole package, all of this up, the two parking lots and this, and get that out to bid next week. But to say that we can have this, and have this a priority to be constructed?
It's not going to happen.
And I don't... We've already talked to a couple of contractors about it. Just to get the towers ordered is somewhere about a six to eight week lead time on that. And then just constructing it because of all the trades, they're telling us it's about an eight week timeframe, so by the time we bid it, we come back to council to award the contract and get the contractor going, you'll have about five weeks until Memorial or Veterans Day.
I didn't give you a year.
Which year?
But we would still bid it, and here's the approach. We would bid it, base bid, let the contractor bid it, bid an alternate, that he delivers it by November the third, and see if anybody will bite on that and what premium that's going to cost you to do that.
Let me ask this, Tom. If the person who's going to build the parking lots is not going to be... He's going to sub this out, more than likely.
Well, the deal is, is that both parking lots have landscaping in them. So you've got some flatwork and irrigation and landscaping.
Right.
If this stands on its own, if you guys recall, we can't with the soccer field at Lakeview, we put it out to bid, we got no bidders. We extended the bid another two weeks, and we were able to convince two to bid it. And so in this environment that we're in, if this stands on its own and you got about a hundred thousand dollar little landscape, flatwork-type project, it's not significant, but if we package it up with the two parking lots that have landscaping, irrigation in it, this kind of helps up that, and so you're getting closer to that eight-hundred to nine-hundred thousand dollar contract. And so that's why we were doing it. But we would make this a priority, that they do construct this first and try to deliver it. It's just that I wouldn't dare stand there and say, you know what, you bet, we'll have Veterans Day, but we'll do everything we can to take the approach to see if we can get somebody that can deliver it, but...
I think if there's not a really good chance they could do it, you just wait till after Veterans Day personally.
I'd rather it be good than to rush it and, you know.
I don't want to have Veterans Day with it half done.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Fair enough.
And Mike, as a side note lest I forget, there's a certain protocol for the emblem placement. I just want to make sure I get that up before it slips my mind. And if you want to make a note, it's Army, Marines, Navy, Air Force, and Coast Guard, and then POW.
Are you going clockwise?
Well, however you look at it, it's always going to be in that order. It's going to be Army, Marines, Navy, Air Force, Coast Guard, POW. That's the DOD official protocol.
They play the music differently.
Okay. Guys, you have clear direction, and we voted unanimously on the plan, and so that item is dealt with. All right? Thank you, gentlemen, for staying and coming. All right, we're going to go to item sixteen. It was a referral agenda item, consider and take appropriate action regarding ordinance for a specific use permit for non-premises alcohol sales, for on-premises alcohol sales in conjunction with a restaurant to be operated as part of Holiday Inn on Lot three R three, Block B Trophy Wood Business Center located at seven twenty-five Plaza Drive, case SUP sixteen oh nine. So we do have Raj Patel here. Raj, you want to raise your hand, who is the owner of the Holiday Inn, who is building the Holiday Inn. And we do have the gentleman who's going to be the property manager. Is that right? I apologize, I forgot your name. Say that again?
Vias.
Vias? All right, and so Raj, not sure if you had some comments you wanted to make or not. You don't have to. We appreciate you all coming tonight. This council had some concerns that we were being asked to approve a specific use permit for on-premises alcohol sales that seemed to be different than our original plan for the Holiday Inn and a steak restaurant. At least the concept was based on the tavern concept that you... That was going to go there, that that was significantly different from the original plan. So we appreciate you coming so that you could answer questions tonight. I'm going to go to Ron Ruthin to see if you have any comments about this tonight.
Uh, no comments.
All right, so if you made a motion, counsel, you proposed ordinance twenty sixteen dash twenty-six P and Z that you would approve. Does anybody want to ask any questions, or somebody wanting to make a motion at this point?
I just had a quick question while they're here. When do you plan on opening? That's the big question.
I think he's talking about the hotel itself.
Yeah, the hotel itself. It's taken so long, I'm just curious when we're going to see it.
As of now, the date is November sixteen.
November sixteen?
November sixteenth.
All right. Anybody else have any questions, or Mr. Patel? We noticed the Holiday Inn signs are on the building.
Yes.
And at least the last time I went by, I don't think the front sign for the tavern was there, was it?
It's not there yet.
Yeah, okay. But I still see a fair amount of work that seems outside. I haven't gone in to see where you are doing, but still some stuff, finished work, at least outside, it looks like.
Each side of the wall they're working now, so it should be done in two weeks.
All right.
Majority of the exterior walls will be done in two weeks, all the work.
All right. Before the end of August, the exterior walls will be finished, is what I hear him saying. Anybody else have any questions about the specific use permit for on-premises sales?
Yeah, can you tell us a little bit about this franchise? I'm assuming you're purchasing a franchise. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, the company, the franchisor. Tell me a little bit about their background, who they are.
It's called Green Mill Restaurants or Hollywood Restaurants or something like that. They are in up north in Dakota's.
What's the name of them?
Green Mill Restaurant.
Green Mill?
Mm-hmm. They are part of the Green Mill Restaurants.
And they're out of, you said, North Dakota?
What is it? In South Dakota or North Dakota somewhere.
Dakotas.
You're not sure where they're at, and you're not sure what their name is. You're not starting off real strong. I'm just going to tell you that right now. You're asking for an alcohol permit here.
They are Green Mill Restaurants. I know they are part of the Green Mill Restaurants, and I'm buying franchise from them. They have about twenty of them open and up north. The first one will be in Texas.
I'm sorry, this will be the first one in Texas?
This is the first one in Texas.
What do they show for locations?
And you have purchased a franchise rights for one location, multiple locations?
I purchased for two locations.
Okay, where's the other location?
The location is going to be in the sort of Lancaster area, right on I thirty-five.
Okay, is it in a hotel, or is it a freestanding location?
Hotel.
It is in a hotel, okay. Will you have a separate operator for this restaurant, or will your hotel manager be operating this restaurant?
We're going to have separate manager for banquet manager. Restaurants manager will be separate.
So you will have a restaurant manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay, who is that person you've chosen to manage the restaurant?
I have not chose one yet because the building is keeping delayed, so I don't want to pick somebody now and put on payroll. So I will choose them. GM will hire somebody to run the restaurant manager, and also the franchisee, the franchise people are going to be here to train us.
Okay, so the franchisor is going to come down and train you guys?
Yes, sir.
How many restaurants do you operate right now?
Right now, I operate... I have twenty fast food services, Dunkin' Donuts and Taco Bell and East Coast. I have three with the restaurants and bar, hotel, restaurants and bar.
Okay. You have... So currently, you have three hotel, restaurant, bars, and this will be your fourth one?
Yes, sir.
And you've got a franchise right to buy a fifth one?
Yes, sir.
So the name is...
The Crooked Pine Restaurant.
Crooked Pine?
Mm-hmm.
Ale House, okay.
Yes.
Any other questions anybody has?
Can you tell me a little bit about their menu? What kind of Crooked Pine, obviously, they're selling?
They sell pizza. They have a mixed menu, hamburgers, sandwiches, pizza.
Okay. What type of volumes are you projecting to do here?
Normally, people don't like to go eat dinners in hotels.
I agree.
Okay. If you break even in hotel, restaurant business, we are lucky, because I'm operating two, three of them right now. Outside guests not going to come to the hot... Inside the hotel to eat. That's one of the reasons I'm trying to put the franchise name on it to attract the people from outside to come in. The restaurants I have right now, there's no franchise in there. Whatever the hotel recommend, that's what we have right now, restaurants and bar in it. So that's one of the reasons I went with the franchise, so I can get the guests from outside to come in with a name on it. So right now, I think we are thinking about two million dollars revenue per year.
Two million from the restaurant with...
With the restaurants, yeah.
You weren't here last time, just so for your edification, I was just going to let you know this. I'm not sure if you're aware of this or not, but you're not parked properly to run an outside restaurant. The parking requirements that you asked for are specific to a hotel.
Yes.
So if you actually did run a restaurant out of this, I'm not exactly sure where they would park.
It's not going to run out of it. It's going to stay in the building. What you're going to have separate manager running the restaurants. We're going to have two separate employees. General manager for the hotels, which is easier. Restaurants manager is going to be separate. And they also going to require me to hire the bar manager and banquet manager will be required by Holiday Inn.
Okay, and the reason I asked you of sales projection is it... You said that the restaurants you have now break even, so the quality of your restaurant manager has a great deal to do with, you know, the way that the restaurants run, your employees and so forth and so on. And so if it's a break even proposition, you can't bring outside people in. I just have a concern of viability, and it's our responsibility to make sure that the community is... stays in the quality that it is. You know, we got a police chief here, and we don't need a restaurant that's serving alcohol or liquor that isn't, you know, run properly up to the right standards. That's the reason I asked this question.
So I had a question about, at least the naming of the restaurant doesn't make me think that I'm going to eat breakfast there if I'm staying at the hotel. But is that where people will get breakfast as a full-service hotel?
Yeah, the breakfast is required by Holiday Inn, so we have to serve the breakfast to the guests in hotels.
Okay.
It's required by Holiday Inn.
And it'll be served from the restaurant, though. I mean, the restaurant will actually make the... You're not having a separate kitchen inside the hotel?
No, no.
Anybody else? All right, anybody wishing to move the proposed ordinance twenty sixteen dash twenty-six P and Z?
All right, let me try this. Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty sixteen dash twenty-six P and Z for a specific use permit, SUP, for the sale of alcohol beverages for on-premise consumption for a restaurant inside the new Holiday Inn at seven twenty-five Plaza Drive. The restaurant will be called The Crooked Pine Ale House.
Do you have a second? I'll second just to get discussion going.
So can I ask a question?
Yes, Tim.
So when do you expect to open the restaurant? It's not going to open in November.
We'll open same time. So we have to open the restaurants to open the Holiday Inn. Restaurants has to be there. Both has to be open same day.
All right, so you're going to build the... So have you already built out the kitchen and everything now?
Not yet. We are waiting for it. I think travel's going in soon, and then kitchen equipment, so any hood's already there. So it's already bought out. Just waiting to get installed.
You have a lot more people on the construction crew now, because, I mean, one of the things that... You weren't here before, but, I mean, the place has taken so long to build that we get hammered by the town residents that it doesn't shed a good light on you, that things are going to be run correctly. To... It's the end of August now. I've built restaurants. Garrett builds restaurants. To hire a team to go up and train, because they have to go up there and train if it's a good concept, and then the franchisor will come down here and be on site and to build and to then train on site, and I just think it's unrealistic that you would open in November a restaurant if I was starting right now. I guess they don't need plans to come to the town. Those plans are all already in?
Plans are already in.
Just for the restaurant also, they're already in?
Yes.
So you could start building the rest... I guess, okay, I worry that...
Restaurants, the foundation's already done. It's part of the foundation.
Right, right.
Only thing need to be done is to put the wall up and all equipment's coming in.
So Crooked Pine is just going in with what your plans were originally, and it's just branding. It's just branding.
Plan was done with their input in it.
Ron, did you have something?
I was just going to add that the floor plan, the detailed floor plan shown in the restaurant is in the actual package. It was approved building permit.
Right, but what I'm saying, that was a different restaurant. So I want to make sure I understand that you have a new franchise or new franchise restaurant, and that franchise restaurant is saying the exact plan that you gave to the town will fit their footprint, and they will build the exact same restaurant. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we are not changing the footprints, no.
And you're not changing anything inside there based on the architecturals? They're not coming in and saying, no, you need your hood over here instead of over there. You need...
It's already approved by the city. The plans are already submitted to the city.
Right, but...
What he's asking is, is the franchise or have they approved your plans inside the building?
Yes, they did.
I would just want to make sure... Yeah, I just want to make sure we have... I don't want to get down the road that one of our inspectors walks in there and you've changed something, because then we're going to shut it down.
Okay.
So I would urge that if anything's changing, that you go back and work with the inspectors. Because I'd be amazed, and it's... I can't say it's not true, but that a franchisor would come in and say, okay, we're going to do this exact thing. We're just going to, you know, do some cosmetic changes. So maybe that's the case.
They are asking us to change some, like color of the stain.
Right, that's cosmetic stuff.
Or wood paneling or boot and stuff like that, which is on the...
But they're fine with the size of the bar, and they're fine with the hoods in the spots that they are, and the bathrooms where they are. Okay. All right. That's my question.
Any other discussion?
I've got a few.
Garrett?
If you don't get your... If we don't approve this, you don't get a permit to sell alcohol, what type of a restaurant facility will you open up there?
There would be no Holiday Inn. Holiday Inn will not allow without restaurants. It's a full-service hotel. It has to have a restaurant and bar in it.
As you're saying, without alcohol, though, right?
Yeah, I'm saying, what kind of restaurant would you open up without alcohol? And he's saying he's not going to do a Holiday Inn unless he can have alcohol.
Holiday Inn will not allow it.
Do you have to have alcohol?
Holiday Inn has to have alcohol or restaurants and bar in it.
Okay.
It's a express. Holiday Inn Express does not allow restaurants and bar. But Holiday Inn is a full-service hotel.
Would it be normal for us to be approving this so late in the process? Is this normal?
Yes, but the SUP.
Why didn't it get approved when he originally had Omaha Steak or whatever back then?
Typically, it would have been approved earlier when the site plan came through initially. I wasn't here at that time. I'm not sure why it didn't come through at that time.
I mean, I'm just going through a logical train of thought. You've put signs on a building that says Holiday Inn, and yet you're saying that if you don't get this approved tonight, Holiday Inn's going to come back out, make you remove those signs, and you're going to go look for a different flag to put on that hotel.
That's what I have to do, yes.
One reason perhaps is that the grading permit was issued in January of twenty fourteen, and the building permit was issued in April of twenty fourteen, and here we are today.
But would... But I guess my question is, when he got his original building permit?
Right.
And he knew that Holiday Inn would not let him operate a Holiday Inn there unless he had an alcohol permit, does it make sense that at that time?
At that time, we probably should have considered it, but I don't think that that was communicated to staff at that point.
I'm not blaming staff. I'm not blaming staff at all.
What I've heard tonight is that Holiday Inn will only approve or only operate a full-service hotel if there is liquor sold at a restaurant. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
So if I call Holiday Inn corporate, that's what they're going to say?
Yes. You can check online. Any Holiday Inns, they all have restaurants and bar in it.
Well, I only say that because you and I have had some semantics differences about aesthetics and what Holiday Inns won't approve. And my point to you was, Holiday Inn would have approved or did approve your design, but two years, it's taken two years to construct it. Yes, they've moved to a different model, but that does not change your obligation to build what was approved in our community.
That's true.
So when this was approved, was that Holiday Inn's stance?
Yes.
So this is my comment, Mr. Patel, is this. This is my experience with you. I was on P and Z when you brought this to an emergency P and Z meeting. We had to meet, and you told me specifically that if we don't get this approved now, I'm not going to get my Holiday Inn.
That's true.
I'm not... I'm going to lose this. I'm going to lose that. I know that you've come to the city in the beginning, and you had us pay for some of your engineering stuff. Now I'm hearing that, you know, I watched it take three years to build the building, and now you're telling me that you've gotten this far down the road, and now in hindsight, you realize that you need an alcohol permit. You have no credibility or faith with me that you should be selling alcohol in my town. So you're not going to get my vote. You might get these other guys, you might work on them, but I'm telling you, I got kids that live here. You might get these other guys, you might work on them, but I'm telling you, I got kids that live here, they ride around, I have, you know, I asked you the name of the company, you're not sure, I mean, over and over and over again, this has been a pattern of of C Y A. I I'm sorry, I don't have faith that you're gonna operate a restaurant that can sell alcohol, you don't have my vote.
Uh, Greg, and did Ron, did you?
Uh, no, I was just just doing this.
To Ron, other than the sales of alcohol or minors, what could trigger, if we approve this tonight, what could trigger the P and Z or coordinate with pulling the permit?
The, once the specific use permit is issued, uh, the only way the specific use permit could be revoked, and this is, we're talking about a zoning action, independent of the the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission's permitting process, uh, would be for the business to be abandoned or closed for more than six months, or for the business to, for some reason, to be selling, getting more than fifty percent of their gross receipts from alcohol sales, thereby violating the uh, the town's regulations as well as the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission's regulations.
So, so we have the fifty percent in this zoning here?
It's it's actually in our.
The default.
It's in our zoning regulations as as it currently exists.
Can I ask? So, let me ask a question now, I'll come to you, Tim. Mr. Patel, have you gone to try to get what you need from T A B C if you're thinking November's away?
City has to sign off on it, on application, then I can, I can go to T A B C.
But you haven't even, what, do they have to submit something to us, Ron, to go to T A B C?
T A B C will not approve an application without the representative from the town, typically the town secretary, signing a port somewhere on the application that the town's regulations allow that use.
Okay, right, which this would have to get approved to do that.
That's correct.
All right, Tim?
Uh, usually smaller franchises, you said they have twenty locations, especially in a different part of the country, are going to mandate that your operating partner owns at least five or ten percent equity in the restaurant. Uh, is that something that these folks do, because, uh, you know?
The franchise, you mean the Crooked Pint people, they are not putting any equities in there, no.
No, no, Crooked Pint would say that your operator, so so what what a a good franchise will do is say, you're on the other side of the country. You're a hotel operator, you're not a restaurant guy, which, not an indictment, you're not a restaurant guy. We wanna make sure that you put a restaurant guy in charge of that restaurant that has an equity stake in that restaurant, so that person will not leave. So that's having, and that that's standard business in 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 the restaurant business, especially in the hospitality business, to make sure that, uh, that if you lose your manager, you're screwed, right? So so they wanna tie that person in, and and one of my worries is, you're two months from opening, three months from opening, you don't have a manager. We don't know who the who the operator of the place is, you're obviously not an onsite operator, you own multiple locations, it's not your job, you're not supposed to be the guy on site. We asked specifically last time from your representative to bring the person who was going to be running this Trophy Club location, so we could see and and gain some faith in this operation because of, quite honestly, your behavior. Whatever the reason was, it took three years to operate, to uh, build, and I, you know, having been in the franchise business on both ends, uh, you know, it, I would, if I were to call Crooked Pint and I say they were doing this, I would imagine that they would mandate that the operator of this, the operating partner has to have food experience and has to have equity in that business, that is, is that not something that they're saying to do?
That's me, sir, I'm putting my equity in there, I'm the one gonna operate this restaurant, my office gonna be based in this building.
So you're gonna be based on a trophy club?
Yes, yes, I am gonna.
And where do you live?
I'm gonna live in South Lake.
You live in South Lake, so you're right down the street, and you're gonna, you're gonna be the operator.
I'm gonna be in charge for everything, my G M's gonna be there, uh, restaurants manager gonna be there, but ultimate decision all gonna come through me. I'll be, my office will be based in this building.
Well, as a point of clarification, Tim, Crooked Pint only has four locations, according to their website, he said thirty or something like that, but they have twenty.
They are part of the Green Mill Restaurant, they are, Crooked Pint is part of the Green Mill, Green Mill has more restaurants in there.
So are you a restaurant operator?
I do operate twenty fast food restaurants in East Coast, in Philadelphia, like eighteen Dunkin' Donuts and two Taco Bell, fast food restaurants.
None of them serve alcohol though?
No, I have three of them, rest of alcohol and restaurants in inside the hotels, but no franchise in there. And that's what I learned there, so when I, when I have no franchise, normally people from outside does not come to eat there. Only the guests from the hotel will eat there, and that's why we don't make any money in it, we can hardly break even.
And how many hotels do you own?
I own about twelve of them.
And how, how many Holiday Inns?
Uh, Holiday Inns, uh, five.
Five and all of them?
Not full service.
So not full service, okay.
This is first full service Holiday Inn I have.
So this, this is the first full service, and that's why you need alcohol?
Yes, and I have a Hilton Garden, which is has restaurants and bar in it.
You have what?
Hilton Garden.
Hilton Gardens, okay.
Which has restaurants and bar in it.
Can you provide us with the list of the restaurants that serve alcohol that you own and operate?
Yeah.
So we can do some due diligence, if you don't mind?
Look at the first one, if you wanna look at the Hilton Garden, New Braunfels.
New Braunfels, but you're not there operating it?
No, I'm not there operating, my manager operating there, yes.
Is there anything in D F W, Dallas, Fort Worth?
Uh, no, sir, it's my first one in full service in D F W, I have a limited service in D F W.
You have what?
Limited service hotel, hotels, which has no restaurants and bar in it.
I got you, this is your first one?
First one, D F W, second one will be in this hotel.
Okay.
And you have four other Holiday Inns?
Whole Holiday Inn Express.
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 This is his first first full service Holiday Inn, is my understanding, is that right?
Yes.
So you can operate a Holiday Inn Express without selling alcohol?
Yes.
All right, any other questions, comments, anybody?
I just wanna make, I just wanna make a comment, I mean, Mr. Patel, you've had the, uh, you've had the unfortunate disadvantage, have to sit through the the rest of this meeting before we got to you, and you heard me saying multiple times that I don't like regulation, and that I I prefer that people to be free to engage in commerce, and, uh, we have laws on the books that require us to have applicants go through this process, and what really, and and not only that, but, um, Trophy Club just had a ballot proposition that voted to give this council the ability to, um, increase alcohol sales ratios and under certain zoning conditions potentially in the future. And a lot of people that trust us a lot, and and a lot of people that are involved here did a lot of work to try and get that done personally. Uh, so the community has a certain sort of trust in us, that that it was passed overwhelmingly. Um, and it, I I, it it is against everything, I believe, to belabor a business owner about what he is or isn't going to sell. The problem is, when you've taken three years to build a hotel, and all the things that Garrett has listed, you give everyone who disagrees with me a case to make. You are the reason why people keep saying government has to do things, and I I can't tell you how disappointing that is for me. I can't tell you how, uh, just frustrating that is, that I have to sit here and and be an arbiter of your livelihood, and the only reason is because you don't have all your crap together, and it frustrates me. Um, I do not ever wanna be on record voting against someone selling alcohol, because I don't believe we should be telling people what they can and can't sell. But I also don't wanna be on record voting for you, because you haven't done anything to establish the faith that we have or the due diligence that we're, we are tasked by the oath of office that we take, uh, to do due diligence, so, um, I just, I would just say that I wish that your process here over the last three years had had started better, had had not required the town carrying some of your water initially with some, uh, donated engineering work, and I wish that it had gone better since then, because, um, you've put us in a very difficult position.
Mr. Patel, let me ask you a question, do you have any hotels that you're operating that ha, that sell alcohol that are inside a municipality?
New Braunfels.
So the New Braunfels location required you to go through and get an alcohol permit?
To be honest with you, this is my first city asked me to come myself. The, we go to T A B C, they approve it, but T A B C here asked us to have a city sign off on it.
And New Braunfels didn't?
They, they, they never asked me to go down to the meeting, I never went to the, any city council meeting for the permit.
Did it take you three years to build New Braunfels too?
Uh, no, sir, it did not.
And maybe you demonstrated a more attentive.
To be honest, problem, problem with this location, this is my first building, is which is my fault, I will accept my fault on it. It's the first building I'm building with a concrete wall, concrete floor.
Right.
I'm trying to do better job on it, because I was trying, planning to keep this location myself, I'm live like five, about five minutes walk from the hotel. So I was gonna keep this hotel myself to operate forever, so I'm building the concrete wall, concrete floor, take me a long time, this is my first building. I'm putting foam insulation everywhere in there. So I'm trying to do the better job on it, I'm, I like to keep this building forever, just want spending more detail on it, more money in it.
I guess, you know, if you had communicated with us better, we would have an entirely different, you know, view of what's going on, because to us, it looks like you took too long and you're not putting together a good product.
But what happened, you guys, uh, city approved the permit on, uh, January fourteenth, I think.
That's the grading permit was approved, but your, but your plans were approved prior to the beginning of January first, because you told us that you'd lose your franchise, hence we've held a special meeting.
Trying to get to you now. But training program was approved January fourteen, four fourteen. Holiday Inn pulled my flag off, franchise off, on January thirteen. I can prove it to you, I had to apply for it again and get it approved done again. That's when beginning, you don't see any work going on, because I I didn't have a franchise there. And I did not come back to the city that time, I lost franchise that time.
So how long did you lose it for?
I I lose it for, uh, three to four months, I cannot do any work, because there was no franchise, I cannot do anything.
Right, why did you lose it?
Because there was delay, I I was supposed to get on time to break the ground by January first, I was not able to do it.
Greg, you had a question?
Here's my dilemma in in voting against it, what's the alternative? I asked the two developers here, but what do we do?
I agree, I mean, that's the hardest thing, is you're putting us in a very hard spot, I would never want to deny you and possibly ruin the business, right?
Yes.
At the same time, I don't wanna give it to you, because you, from not, lack of being here, have basically, it's been a slap in the face for this town for three years, I don't know how you couldn't understand that, but you could have come and talked to somebody and and try to be a good partner with us, but it seems to us that you've done everything to change everything to however you wanted to, when you wanted to, and then we're supposed to come back and just do what you want. Uh, it seems, and you know, it's a tough, tough call, because I I don't wanna be the guy who says no, what, I specifically said no to bring you here, and I specifically asked for the restaurant operator, and I don't know if you're actually a restaurant operator. You own a bunch of, you own a bunch of Dunkin' Donuts in Philadelphia, but you're not out there running the restaurants.
No, I'm not.
So, um, well, yeah, I I agree, Greg, I mean, it's 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 kinda like the thing we had before with the schools, right? It's, it's, so.
So Greg, to answer your, to answer your question, I assumed you're saying the two are restaurant operators. You know, if if it was, in my purview, right, if I was the developer here, I would be going back to Holiday Inn and saying, here's the reasons why I believe that I should be able to operate a restaurant without alcohol. Right, he's already got a restaurant built in there, he's saying he can build a restaurant, what we're saying is we won't give you an alcohol permit. You have breadwinners across the street, you have other things, there's a whole community there, our our patrons won't be put out. That that would be my argument as a franchisee. My frustration, as I hear you, Mr. Patel, continue to talk, is it reminds me of talking to my son. Every time I question him or back him into a corner about something he's done, there's an excuse. I mean, now I'm hearing that you didn't have a franchise for a while, and there are no communication, that's how my thirteen year old is. Pretty good kid, but if you pin him down, there's an excuse, there's an excuse. I I just keep hearing excuses, I, I don't know, I would, I would go back, I would go back to Holiday Inn and maybe you get Steven on the phone, you say, what do I do without alcohol, I can operate a restaurant out of here? Full, uh, you know, I I don't know, Greg, it's a, it's a valid question, I don't want.
So so I'm still trying to understand, why exactly did you lose, 'cause I remember, I I had been on the council for two months, and we had a special meeting. Connie and I couldn't make it, we were out of town, and the meeting was on December, it was right before New Year's, and and I mean, we had to have that meeting for you.
Yes.
You know, and we called a special meeting, and I don't understand, after doing all that, rushing our P and Z, we we rushed it so much that we didn't even have detail on windows, you know, and so, I I guess.
Holiday Inn, what they call a groundbreaking is when you pour the slab, that's called groundbreaking, and I was not there at January thirteenth or fourteenth.
Oh, weren't you there?
That's why.
So they, they, they wanted you to pour the slab.
But that's what they call groundbreaking date.
In two weeks after you got approval?
Yes, and I cannot, no, franchise was approved earlier. Franchise was approved earlier, and there's a deadline on on a franchise, I had to break the ground, groundbreaking down by January fourth or fifth or something like that.
Yeah, but we didn't delay anything, did we?
No, we expedited it as much as possible.
Did you believe that after getting our approvals, you would be able to have that done on time?
No, I was asking them, communicating with them for the, giving the extension on it.
Okay.
And they pulled the for, for me, uh, they pulled my flag up, and then I had to pay them additional twenty five thousand dollars for extension fee. And then they re-instead the for, flag again.
So how, how, how have they allowed you to to carry that flag when, I've gone on their website multiple times and to see, I was able to get reservations. And so I'm I'm assuming that they're having to to rebook those if people.
Yes, right now, I'm relocated in.
So are you, are there other deadlines that you have to meet with them bef, or they're threatening to pull it again?
No, they are not, no.
So they just, it doesn't matter how long you take to build, they they were, they wanted you to have the pad in by January thirteenth of two thousand fourteen, but they don't care how long it takes you to build this.
No, they do care about it, that's why they open the reservation system, when it, they do come often here to check on our hotels and look at the progress, and they will tell us a date, target date, so this date you can be done.
So.
This is the sixteenth of November date by the Holiday Inn peoples.
Have you ever had any violations with T A B C?
I have it in New Braunfels, San Marcos, yes, I do have a license with.
Do you, have you had any violations with them? Violations on any?
No.
So I got a question for staff. If we were to approve, um, uh, the S U P, and, um, in order for him to get his T A B C license, we're gonna have to sign off on something. And, uh, David, this is you too, if if we withheld signing off on that because he missed his December date or, you know, continued November sixteenth, whatever that is, that he's continued to see lack of progress, um, what does that do to us, do we have a right to withhold if it was approved?
My experience with the licensing for T A B C is what you're signing, and usually the town secretary says it meets the zoning, it meets the distance requirement from schools, just affirming things like that, it's not an actual approval, and.
So we couldn't really withhold it?
No, the facts are the facts on that.
All right, and, um, I I think, uh, Pat, what are the regulations we have in place? Let's assume he opens, uh, the way alcohol's been handled in the restaurant and those kinda things cause us issues, what recourse do we have?
We've got, um, fairly broad, we have an annual permitting that, or licensing that we do for hotels every year, and it's an, it's required that they submit for that permit, and then we come out and do an inspection, us and the fire department. If they're not complying with with all of our ordinances and regulations, we could theoretically not renew that license, you know, I don't, it would be a, up to our, but it's it's in our ordinance to to stop, to not renew that license, and it's, they're required to, we do, we already do it on the Hampton, we do it on Value Place, you know, all of the hotels in town, and they get that inspection yearly. It just gives you another place.
I like some of these, some of the council have said that, that my concern is, I don't think that the restaurant could be successful inside a Holiday Inn without the ability to serve alcohol, that's just me personally. I'm not sure that The Crooked Pint is the rest, is the right thing for your hotel, but, uh, that's your choice, that's not my choice. As Garrett pointed out, there, the ratio of number of parking spaces to the number of rooms in hotels and what kind of people might be coming just to the bar, the tavern, so to speak, if you were successful with that, you'd have a parking problem. At least that's our conjecture, especially if your hotel was very full. Forecast is that hotels along that corridor are going to be successful. If you operate a good hotel and people like the Holiday Inn brand, you'll be successful, I believe, in that corridor. Because people stay with brands, and I think you know that. What we've got there at this point are Hilton properties. So someone that stays predominantly Hilton properties or stays at a limited service hotels, that's where they're gonna stay.
That's true.
That's just kind of how we work. So I too am in this difficult situation that says, I'm concerned how successful you'll be, but I guess at the end of the day,
With my restaurant.
You're either gonna be successful or not, and it's not gonna be up to me, so.
So far, right now, the restaurants I have inside the hotels, I would say, I don't see about ten percent of our guests is not coming, minimum, I think ten percent guests are coming from outside. Most of the guests are inside the hotels.
That's what I would expect, yeah.
And if I have to go out for dinner, normally I do not go inside the hotel to have a dinner. So that's one of the reasons, I'm just trying this particular location with the franchise name on it, see if they will help me.
As opposed to it just being a Holiday Inn restaurant?
Yes.
Mayor, if I may, going back to your question about time limits or what would happen if the restaurant never opens, you can, the council can impose conditions that's allowed under the code of ordinances. Right now, there's a lapse provision where if the use lapses for more than, after more than six months, the S U P expires. And the town attorney can correct me if I'm off base here, but I think you could probably nail that down in this case to say that if the restaurant doesn't open, and however we want to define that, within six months from the date of approval of the ordinance, then the S U P automatically expires. If you wanted to protect it in case something happens.
Disadvantage of that to me is that, you know, if he, if he was open and he just hadn't gotten everything going in the restaurant, and he hadn't got his T A B C thing, I'm putting a barrier up.
T A B C, if I remember right, we have to put the notice out there for thirty days, am I right?
They want?
We have to sign.
I'm not sure on the notice days on T A B C, but.
We have to put a sign out there, say liquor license, apply for liquor license for thirty days, for the public view.
Oh, okay, for public, right? And they're not gonna do that till you open, is my understanding.
That's to get the license, that's to get the license.
As soon as we apply for it, they will, we have to.
Oh, just to get the license.
He has to have the zoning first, that's one of the things, not yet.
Curiosity, in the event we did not approve your liquor permit, what does Holiday, what does Holiday Inn have to say about that? You can't open now because you don't meet their minimum requirement.
That's true.
Are they gonna sit there and say, oh, that's fine, we'll just let you sit there on your building ad infinitum? Or are they gonna come back and say?
I haven't seen any Holiday Inn without restaurants and bar in it. They may allow to change it to express, I don't know, they may not allow it, we don't know that. Express does not require restaurants and bar in it. But this building footprint has a restaurants and bar in it. So they will not allow it open as a Holiday Inn, I know for sure.
So you're saying it might be able to become a Holiday Inn Express without a liquor license?
They may allow it, but there's express already in Grapevine, there is one. So they have to look at that also. Right on the main street, I think there's one.
They limit their franchise by distance. Tim, you had your question.
Yeah, so I guess, this hotel you built was always designed to have a restaurant and bar. At what point did you realize that you needed a liquor license? How long ago did you know you needed this and?
Sir, this is my first city, I had to come to this meeting, like I says, before, when I submit the plan, it has a restaurants and bar in it. Original plan was submitted. That time I was talking about doing the Johnny Italian Steakhouse, but it did not work out, they do not want it to come to Texas, so that's how to change the flag, on the restaurant flag.
I guess, what I'm trying to say is, even it, how, when did you think you were supposed to go to T A B C? It seems like you waited so long just to, something that is crucial to your business, that you waited until the very end.
I don't want to go to T A B C way earlier than like six months or before I were ready to open. So I went to T A B C, just we had to go to the city council, and that's why we come over here. And it's been, what, thirty days or so, we tried to get from T A B C, but we cannot go to T A B C again until city sign off on it.
So you had no idea that you.
I have no idea how to come to the city council, yes, I have no idea that. This is the first city required me that. I've never been in San Marco City Council, never been in New Braunfels. I have restaurants and bar there, they never asked me to go down there.
Your architect, your contractor, nobody said a word?
Greg, you had a hint at?
I thought, last time, I thought his representative said he always went to the council meeting.
Yes.
Forehead, yeah, he did.
He's also building my restaurant too.
He didn't go personally, but the case went.
What I'm saying is, they didn't go until last month. It's been working for three years. You're building a place that needs alcohol.
But there is a time limit, so if I go in beginning, like year fourteen or fifteenth, time will be expired, you know?
But you don't know if you could get a permit in the first place. I guess is my thought, I, you know, when you have good staff around you, you check everything, so that's fine. I just wanted to understand it.
Yeah, Ron or David, how quickly, if there's an issue with T A B C, do we get notified? Whether he didn't pay his fees or violation?
We don't.
We don't?
They shut him down.
I don't know that we're notified, it's a whole separate process they would go through. There's some, sometimes we require them to send in their reports that they send to them to show the percentages they sell. But I don't know that T A B C notified.
T A B C, if I violate the rules, they will set it down, they will pull my permit.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
They will set it down, they will close down.
How quickly do we get a notice if T A B C shuts them down for failing to pay their fees or a violation? Or is it just they put a big sticker on the wall?
My experience, T A B C has always worked well with municipalities, especially in Dallas-Fort Worth, because the regional office up here know, we have a hundred and forty municipalities here. So they, they know that everybody, every town has its own licensing and permitting requirements. So I haven't had an issue with them contacting, in previous places I've worked, the city pretty quickly if a license is revoked.
The other thing that happens is the alcohol distributors won't sell to them if the license is pulled. So they're talking to T A B C all the time and getting noticed when somebody loses their liquor license, so.
And general manager, I have hired him, he worked in Full Series Hotel for last thirty years. So he has operated restaurants and bar in it.
All right.
All right, I just.
Do you have any other questions?
I just, as a, as a point of information for everybody on here, it just goes to the, I just did a rough sales projection because I asked you what you thought the sales would be, and you said about two million dollars. So I took the number of rooms, I assumed double occupancy, so two people in every room, every night, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, every, that would give you a ticket for every person, so two people at twenty bucks a ticket, so every room selling forty dollars worth of food a night, you're gonna do one point seven million dollars in sales.
I think he's gonna have, all his breakfast and lunch is also gonna come through there. Like, all your food for that restaurant is gonna come through.
That's true.
I mean, for that hotel is coming through there.
Yes.
All the room service, everything.
My only point is that, that is an overly ridiculously aggressive, right?
It's never gonna happen.
And when I ask somebody what, I've dealt with a lot of franchisees over the years, and I like Ryland, I don't want to choose who's gonna be successful and who's gonna not be successful, and I'm sure you're a great Dunkin' Donuts operator and you can operate a hotel, but you're asking us for a liquor license. And if I had a franchisee that answered the questions the way you did, it would make me extremely nervous how they would operate a restaurant, that's my only point. I mean, it's, they're real basic questions that I would think, like Tim said, you'd have these covered off really early on, you'd have it put together and buttoned up. Serving alcohol in a town is a whole nother thing, and in our town, there's not gonna be a lot of places that do that. So I just.
I just say, I, I'm coming down the side of voting for it. I don't know what the alternative, it could be worse, Holiday Inn is a big brand name.
Maybe you could sell it to somebody else who's more professional in operating a hotel with a bar.
I don't think that's our, that's choice.
Well, if you don't approve the permit, then you can't open.
Well, I'm concerned about other issues if we did that, so. All right, we ready to vote? So we have a motion before us to approve the specific use permit. Thank you, Mr. Patel, for coming and talking to us. And so I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of the approval of ordinance twenty sixteen dash twenty-six P and Z, show your hands. So Ryland, Sanders, Lamont, approve, all opposed, same sign. Perro, Reed, Kurtz, and Shoffner voted against, it fails. Mr. Patel, what's his recourse at this point? He's gone through the process. Anything?
Would the council not need to have an affirmative vote to actually deny the S U P in the absence of having the necessary votes to approve it?
It goes down as a failed vote or a denial.
Okay, just want to make sure.
They want to go back through and make a motion to deny it, they can, but.
He can come back and.
Well, it's a motion to approve the special use permit request, right?
It was a motion to approve, yes.
Yeah, so, so the special use permit that he submitted went through P and Z, right? Came to us, P and Z approved. We did not approve the issues of the special use permit.
If the council denies the S U P, they'll have to, there's a waiting period of twelve months before they can come back. If it's denied without prejudice, they can come back immediately. Now, in this case, there was no actual act of denial of other, it was just a failure to approve, that's why I was asking the question.
Which is, failing to approve is an action of denial.
So can we deny without prejudice?
You can, you can make a motion to deny without prejudice.
Can we do that?
Be okay with that?
Okay. So can we make a motion to, can I make a motion to deny without prejudice?
Okay, so I think what I need first is a motion from someone who voted in the affirmative to reconsider item sixteen.
I'll make a motion to reconsider item sixteen.
And you did vote affirmative, do I have a second?
Does it have to be an affirmative?
Gotta be affirmative, second?
Anyone can second.
Anyone can second.
A second.
So we have a motion to reconsider by Lamont, seconded by Kurtz, any discussion? So what we're doing is bringing it back, so if you wanted to take an affirmative action of denial with,
Oh, prejudice.
Without prejudice, then that allowed him
Immediately.
No limitations as to reapply or to deal with it appropriately, if he felt like he could convince us otherwise, right?
That's correct.
All right, all in favor of the motion to reconsider, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous to reconsider. Now, if someone wants to make a motion to deny with.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Who seconded?
Kurtz, seconded.
A motion we deny without prejudice.
I'll second.
So we have a motion to deny the special use permit without prejudice, made by Reed, is that right?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Perro, second.
And Perro seconded. Any discussion? Tim?
I just have a, something I want to say to the gentleman, can I do it now? Yeah. I would be willing to reconsider if you were to come back with some sort of action plan that shows what the concept is, who's gonna run it, resumes of who's gonna run it, what your plan is that would make us feel comfortable enough. Because quite honestly, I mean, I don't want to keep beating a dead horse, but the history shows that we would maybe be making a bad decision to allow you to do it. We denied without prejudice to make sure you can come back and do that and just approve it to us. And maybe your contractor didn't tell you this in the first place. We specifically told him that, that that's what we were looking for. So we would like for, just like any other developer would do here, they come here and put together, you know, they show us a plan, they put together a presentation to show what's going to happen, and quite honestly, you haven't done any of that. So I would be looking for that as soon as you can, and so we can give you a chance to succeed.
And I think it would go a long way for me is if I heard somebody from Holiday Inn has looked at your plan, thinks it's gonna be successful, this is why we want alcohol there. Somehow you need to convince us, you've heard all of us talk about the fact that I think we're trying to help you, but we're just not confident that you're gonna be successful doing that. And, and we're concerned about the alcohol sale aspect in our town.
So I've been operating alcohol out bar in a hotel, and I never had any issue with the T A B C, there is no single citizen there.
Yeah, we don't have any proof of anything, you didn't bring us anything. You're a guy coming here three years later saying, give me an alcohol permit, and I run places that aren't even close to here, that I don't see on a daily basis. That's what you're saying to us, you know what I mean? We would not take you out of the equation, we wouldn't allow anybody who came here and with your presentation, I don't think any of us would approve it, is what I'm saying. So forget that it's you, you know, you have to come with something that gives us confidence, so, that's all. We want you to have it, so.
All right, so you can talk to Ron or Pat, they can help you through that, or Steven can help you try to get prepared to come back for us at this point. So the fact that we denied without prejudice, he does not have to go to P and Z?
He would have to come back through, he'd have to submit a new application and go back through the process, but he could submit immediately.
Understand that, Mr. Patel?
Mr. Mayor.
If they resubmit an application, and that would start the process, but you need to be prepared to get through everything that's needed. Yes, Jim?
Do we have the authority to request that he produce a document from Holiday Inn corporate confirming what he stated, that he cannot open this hotel without alcohol sales?
I don't know, David. I think.
You can suggest things you'd like to see.
Request or not, I think.
You don't have anything in front of you right now, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
He said that he can't do it without alcohol sales, that's a Holiday Inn requirement. If we saw it in writing from Holiday Inn, that might raise my confidence level that what he's telling us is factual.
I think he's heard you say that.
He's heard you say it.
Chooses not to do it, then it'll hurt him in your vote, I suspect.
Okay.
Also, I know as a former franchisor that this brand should have a presentation that you should have brought tonight. That they give out, I'm not saying you're wrong, but they should be able to give it to you that you could then forward it on to Steven and to us, and we can start feeling comfortable.
Crooked Pint?
Yeah, Crooked Pint.
Yeah, I believe.
You know, that's what they do, just to get sites alone.
I just read their website, and they talked about all the stuff they'll do for the franchisees, so.
Yeah. So they should help you through the process.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can give my vote by putting together a presentation that makes me confident in you. I want you to know that, but you've got to come in here and show us that you're dedicated to this brand, you get it, you understand it. Bring in your manager if you want to, bring in somebody from Crooked Pint if you want to, I mean, they're coming to Texas.
Have them do it, I mean, it's fine.
They're making a mark in Texas, I mean, I've been to a lot of these, I've asked for permits before, and I've put on a dog and pony show, and I'm just suggesting that where you are right now, you need to, you need to impress upon us that this is the right thing for us to do.
And I would add some realistic timeframes about opening.
Yeah.
Worst thing, the worst thing that can happen is that, is that we have a date that we, I mean, I mean, you know, Tim's outfitted commercial kitchens, and he knows how long it's gonna take to get yourself even to the point where you can do that. And it sounds like we're already being too aggressive again.
My kitchen's equipment's already been ordered.
Okay, so you're farther along there.
Yeah, it's been ordered already.
Okay.
But now at T A B C, I don't know how long that will take me to get it open.
Well, I don't think you're gonna get anything done until we approve the S U P.
Yeah.
So you gotta show really good progress on construction and come back to us planned with a new submittal to get your special use permit and get Crooked Pint involved and make us feel like this is gonna be successful, is I think what I'm hearing everybody say. We're trying to help you, we just need that help from you.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Patel, for coming tonight.
We need to vote on that.
So vote taken.
All right, so we had them voted, I'm sorry, thank you. I mean, uh.
We haven't, somebody hasn't made a motion, actually, we just made the motion to refer, or to.
No, we made a motion.
To reconsider.
No, we made a motion to deny without prejudice.
Oh, we did that one, okay. I got it and lost it in two seconds.
Reed made the motion and Perro seconded. All right, excuse me. All in favor of the motion to deny without prejudice, please show your. All in favor of the motion to, to deny without prejudice, please show your hands.
With prejudice.
Without?
Without.
Without prejudice.
All opposed? So Softner and, golly gee. And Ryland Rowe voted against, everybody else voted for, sorry. All right, we will, I need a short break. I'll turn it over to Greg to start 17, unless other people need a break.
Seventeen.
Anybody else need a break? All right. So I'm going to relinquish the chair to Mayor Protim Lamont to take item 17, and I'll be back.
Let Greg run with it for a couple of minutes.
Lock the bathroom door. We can get out of here.
All right, seventeen.
Heavy weighs the crown.
All right, Alexander Haig.
Here we go, this was the table to gen item. Consider and take appropriate action regarding an ordinance amending Chapter One, General Provisions, and Chapter Twelve, Traffic and Vehicles of the Town or Trophy Club Code of Ordinances to Allow Golf Carts to Be Driven on Designated Paths and in Designated Areas and Providing a Penalty and an Effective Date by P Schaffner and G Reed.
Mr. Schaffner?
The Golf Cart Crew.
Golf Cart Crew.
G C C. Normally you would go to staff next.
What's that?
Normally you would have staff give you that.
No, I, um, I agree with this ordinance as it is written. One of the concerns, the reason that I put this, you know, deferred this to this meeting is because we were opening up the golf cart ordinance. And I, I think that there, and Chief, can you correct me, Police Chief? The state has mandated a certain, certain requirements, and our ordinance has all of those requirements in there. And then we, I think, have maybe one or two additional that we require beyond the state. There are some cities that don't require an inspection. So in other words, because the state already has the rules in place, they just allow golf carts to operate on the streets. Our city is unique in that we have no speed limits beyond the state requirement, which is 35 miles an hour. So all of our streets are below 35, we're all, we're all at 30. And so under state, under state law, you could operate a golf cart anywhere in our community, under their provisions. And so my, my thinking in this is that because we have state, state rules already in place, it makes no sense for us to reinvent the wheel and require people to go to the, to the city, to the police, to get inspections. If a police officer sees somebody who is violating one of these state provisions, they have all authority to pull that person over, issue a warning, issue a ticket, whatever they need to do. One of the concerns was, okay, there are people who venture into Roanoke, and the police chief of Roanoke and our police chief have done a good job of communicating with each other and providing that if you have a sticker in Trophy Club, you can go to Roanoke, if you have a sticker in Roanoke, you can come to Trophy Club. So that was kind of a concern, but the chief reached out, and if, if those people desire to go to Roanoke, they actually can get a sticker from Roanoke. So there's no, Roanoke does not say that it has to be their citizens. They've opened it up for, you know, anybody to get a sticker. And so that sort of alleviates that problem of people that, that want to go to Roanoke. I think the majority of people in Trophy Club just stay in Trophy Club, to be honest. And so I wanted to basically do away with that provision, keep all the, the rules that we have in place, but do away with that provision of having to require inspections. And, and then that basically frees up the police, and it, it, it's, makes it more convenient for our citizens to not have to go through that process. So that was the, the reason to defer and then change some of those things that, that I've been wanting to change, and since it was opened up anyway, much easier to do it now than...
And the other, the other changes were just the parking for, in the parks that y'all had worked on previously.
And we, we've also, there's no distinction now on daytime, nighttime of operation. I mean, basically the same things that you need for both.
It follows with the state.
Yeah.
So Chief, would you tell us your opinions, and do you support this?
Yeah, I talked to Councilman Schaffner earlier in the week, and I concur that the only two requirements we have is insurance and turn signals, and the state law requires everything else, the reflectors, the brakes, the lights, all that stuff. And, and I did talk to Roanoke, they were on our stickers that we currently have issued, and as those expire, they can just go over to Roanoke and get a sticker from them, pass their inspection, which is the same as we currently have today, because they took our ordinance and married it so that we could have that agreement. And so they're willing to do that for our citizens, to continue to allow them to travel back and forth if they choose to do so.
Sure. Before we make a motion, are there any other changes that one of the councilmen would like to make? You talking about to change ordinance 2016-23? Is that what you're talking about? Yes. So I had a question of, on page 157 of the packet. And, um... Let's see what it was. 120703C. On 157 of the packet.
Sidewalk or pedestrian way?
Oh, so it's, it's dealing with the sidewalk that, as I read that, they can't drive a cart on a sidewalk or pedestrian way inside a park, right? And I'm, I'm not really in favor of having that in there. I think a pedestrian has a right of way in one sense on the sidewalk, and if there's nobody there, why not allow them to drive down the smoothest part and not necessarily drive on the grass and tear up the grass, or if it was muddy, or those kinds of things? So I'm not in favor of 302C personally. As it relates to park trails only? Or jogging trails? What about sidewalks?
It says sidewalks.
It says sidewalks, walkways, pedestrian walkways, sidewalks. So it, in essence, is saying you can drive there.
But it, but it's saying...
You cannot drive there.
Cannot drive there. But it's, but we're, but, but it goes on to say specifically authorized by another section of this code of ordinance, don't we then open it up for, for certain...
Certain, in parks.
Certain areas?
It is.
There is the parks ordinance that does have this aspect to it with the mo, the, the, where golf carts can go.
So I think, I think the intent of this is like the lakes.
Keep them off of that.
You know, they don't want you driving down the middle of the lakes on a sidewalk.
You're saying our parks ordinance is going to specifically allow it?
Allow specific areas.
Areas.
Does it?
Yeah, you'll have to look, it should be in there.
I believe it says it will be allowed, then there's going to be a designated plan.
See, we, we pulled it because of this.
Well, I didn't see that, but that doesn't mean it's...
It says, so if you go 202, General Provisions of the Town or Trophy Club Ordinance to Allow, I have no idea.
Look it on page 156.
155 and 156?
To travel within and to park within designated areas of the town parks and trails so that subsection 137 and 8 shall be read in their entire G S follows. So it's, I mean, I think that that's where it's at.
Says that motorized carts shall only be operated in those areas specifically designated by the director and identified by the use of signage and our other permanent markings. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
So we're going to put out a permanent marking that says you may drive on a sidewalk?
On specific sidewalks and paths.
And there's not a whole, there's not many.
But that seems like a big waste of money to put out a sign to do that, personally. I mean, every place else, we say you can't do it. So do we actually look for people that are driving on a, I see people driving on the sidewalk here along Hogan...
You can't do that now.
Well, they do it all the time.
I understand that, but they're breaking the law.
Oh.
There's, there's kids that on, in my area, that drive golf carts, they're breaking the law.
So I guess back to this issue of, well, I have a law that you're not going to enforce.
Well, you can't, police, okay, this goes, this goes to the, the old saying, you know, why are these people speeding down Trophy Club Drive? Why aren't police doing anything?
Yeah.
Well, they are doing something, but they can't be everywhere...
I understand that.
All the time. I, 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 believe me, I have parked in a park and gotten pulled over. I know firsthand.
I know that.
It is being enforced.
I, I do, though, think that Nick is kind of on to something that within a park, it might be simpler from a standpoint of...
Not having that signage.
From a standpoint of people understanding what's permitted, you could have one sign in a park if you needed a sign at all, and, and, and just say it is what it is, as opposed to, um, uh...
Can we allow it in a whole park?
Having to designate every single, every single path and every single area.
You, you could potentially put, you know, a sign at, at the edge of the playground that says, "No vehicles permitted past here," or something like that, and the same, the same as we, the same sign over by where the storage facility is now. I mean, you could do that. I think Garrett, Garrett wanted you just to go anywhere you wanted to.
Well, that's what I thought we were trying to do.
Well, and I'm not opposed to that, but we got a little pushback.
Inside the park, I think really the only, the only thing that you might want to have a sign for is to keep the golf carts off the playing fields.
Yeah, that was my thought.
You know, that, that, if you need a sign, I mean, I think most people can function if they see a golf cart on a sidewalk and you're walking on it. You, you should probably do something.
That was the concern. That was the concern that, that I had, because Garrett actually wanted to allow it right in the middle of the field. And I thought, well, you're going to have people just going across. They're going to take the path of least resistance and go straight across.
But I, I also don't want the expense of putting a whole bunch of signs in the park.
Yeah, well, I mean...
So being able to say, "No golf carts allowed on playing surfaces," or something like that, I'm not necessarily opposed, but it's, again, it's a sign at every park. What about allowed in the parks?
Yeah, I have, I have a comment, Mayor.
Adam.
The only concern I would have from that standpoint is the reason that on the original map, there's only certain places that people with the golf carts want to get to. You would end up with problems potentially, I've already gotten complaints like on the trail system behind the Highlands. If you allow people on those trails right there, you may actually have some, we already had some people complain they were forced off the trails and they don't have anywhere to go. It's not like the one at Harmony or something like that.
But is that considered a park?
It's Parkland dedication.
They were forced off the trails by roving bands of golf carts. I don't know, I mean...
It's, it's the, it's the Pokemon.
Yeah, the Pokemon, people chasing Pokemon.
Does Trophy Club Park have separate rules because it's the federal park?
No, this is not, this is Ireland.
I know, I know, but just finish with that.
I agree with you, Nick. I mean, that's, that was the intent of Garrett and I, the idea that we had is to, you know, to not limit as much, but I can see both sides.
Well, I'm just concerned about having to put up signage and ignoring, you know, the officers place themselves in a situation of, do I ignore this one or not?
Yeah.
And, and the more we put them in that situation...
And, and we've already put the officer in that situation because independents, they're parking all in the park.
Yes.
You know, and so we've already put the officer. So maybe, maybe we don't, maybe we do this, and if it becomes a problem, then we address that, you know?
All right. Any other changes?
Oh, I forgot you're leading the meeting.
That's fine. Let's get going here, come on. Go. What are you doing next? All right, who wants to make a motion if they know the changes? Make a motion to change inspections and sidewalks? Would you think it's wise to maybe refer this and come back after the changes? Are you comfortable with all the wording?
Allowing them everywhere unless prohibited? Are we, would that be less signage? Looking for a little direction.
Yeah, you could do that, you, you could do...
Like the lakes has signs?
You can drive here, you can't drive here.
On the, on our paths, you can't drive on our paths. Does Hogan Glen have anything? We, we don't really have any sidewalks. No sidewalks.
Yeah, but I think that you, you, basically what Nick is saying is to allow them in the parks, not, not, keep the provision of their...
Allow them in the parks unless it's prohibited.
Right.
Like on the fields or...
Right, and then, you know, we can add prohibitions as we see.
Uh, what's the, what's the, what's this ordinance, 2016? I'll make a motion to approve 2016-23, um, as presented with the following modification, that under division, Article 108 Parks and Recreation, Division Three Park Regulations, Section 1 dot 08 dot 062, vehicular regulations, that item number three would read, um, "Operate a vehicle, device, motorized assisted scooter, or other motorized device, including but not limited to vehicles known as A T Vs, um, anywhere within the boundaries of a sports field, the playing boundary of a sports field."
And take off eight?
And then, yeah, and then remove number eight.
Second.
If I can get a second, I'll...
Second, second.
I'll second that.
So my thought is, go with the intent that Philip had and Garrett had when they put this together, and if we do need to add some signage relative to the fields, which, I mean, the only people that are going to do it are going to be people that are going to do it even if there is a sign and it's muddy and they want to make donuts.
Right.
And they'll do it now if they really are that bent on havoc, right? So we may not need signage, but maybe we will.
What about on page 157, 12.07.003C, which is the one the mayor originally brought up?
I think that's, I think that's okay to leave as is, right? Because it would be...
Yeah, that's, that's a prohibition.
It would be good, basically, everything stays as is except where we've modified the park ordinance.
Yeah.
Right? So I think that's okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the prohibition that allows Greg to yell at somebody, which call the police.
And what about your inspection? All right, so again, um, staff, are you comfortable with being able to change this based on our instructions if we approve it tonight?
Yes, sir.
All right, so... We have a motion, we have a second? Go ahead. All those in favor? Quick. All opposed. All opposed? Go, buddy. Unanimous. Unanimous. Move on. Go back up. You want to continue? You're going to, you're going to do 18? Still need 14. 18.
He's a short relief pitcher.
Now, if I had my glasses, I could read this. Oh, solar panel, town to provide direction, this is direction, we're not going to prove anything, to town staff regarding the regulation of solar panels. Staff, Mr. Seidel.
No, he's gone.
Or Ron?
I'm going with Mr. Ruthven.
You don't want to take a stab at this? So this first went back, this is first before council earlier this year, and so we've come up with specific regulations. These are really a hybrid or a mix of four different cities around us that have regulations on solar panels. What we're proposing is just to break it down into basically two different types, roof-mounted and ground-mounted. Most of what we see in, well, everything that we see at Trophy Club is roof-mounted. We have 12 now that are existing around the, the town that we've done a roof count on. And those would be able to stay, but anything new would have to meet these regulations. And if those were expanded or changed or anything, then they would have to then be brought up to code. The big thing on these is they're allowed by right if they meet the ordinance requirements, and they would have to get a building permit issued. And there'd have to be certain performance requirements that they be engineered and meet the building code requirements, which the ones that do come in and have been permitted the building code requirements, which the ones that do come in and have been permitted already meet those requirements. As far as location on the roof, uh, or meeting the provisions of the proposed ordinance, if they did not meet those, the action that would be allowed to them under what we're proposing is a special use or specific use permit that would come before P and Z and council. This matches the requirement in place in North Richland Hills and in Argyle. And rather than require variance to go to the zoning board, basically it allows council to take these on a case by case basis. If somebody did want to put solar panels on the back of a house that backed up to the golf course or was highly visible from the street. Um, so with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions from the council.
I, um, I remember when we first talked about this, um, we talked about doing electrical pres- you, you guys still propose doing an electrical permit for it or? Yeah. And, uh, some of the other aspects as far as height off the roof and things like that. Um, there's one thing in here that I remember saying that I didn't, uh, didn't support then and I still don't today. And I actually had a resident, um, talk to me about it earlier, but he left because he knew he didn't want to be here until 11:15. And, uh, that is the, uh, the requirement that all roof mounted systems shall be placed upon the building such that the system is not visible from a public or private street and/or golf course. He made the point that that would, the way his roof is designed, he wouldn't be able to place it anywhere. And, um, I think that given, I think that, and this was, that was my original, um, objection to it, uh, when we talked about this back when we did, was you've got, you've got sun path considerations and you've got design considerations. There's lots of different types of roof lines, especially in the parts of town built prior to 2004, five, um, that they're not all the same. They don't all have four faces on each direction where they've got more options. And, um, I just don't think that it's a necessity. And one day, maybe not even in my lifetime, but one day, somebody's going to make a technological breakthrough with this stuff finally. And it's finally going to be a cost effective energy source. And somebody's going to be cussing us, saying, why didn't they foresee or have a little foresight? So I, I would, I would, I don't have any issue with any of the other stuff. I, I think having a, making sure that they're inspected is, is perfectly fine. Um, but I would, I would advise against the, the, the visibility aspect of it.
And, and I agree. I think I said that the last time too. I don't, I don't, you know, I would put them up in a second in, in my house once they do that technologically breakthrough, uh, portion of it. But, uh, I, I think that this is going to be, you know, as this goes on, this is going to be more the norm, you know? Um, they, they keep getting, getting better and better and better. And when you have companies like Tesla that are making whole electrical walls, you know, that, uh, can operate a house, uh, based on batteries, you're, you're going to see more solar panels and things like that. And I just don't have a problem, you know? There, there are some people, if we, if we pass that particular ordinance, uh, the way it's written, there are some people that have, uh, front facing houses that are facing the sun that would be basically totally wiped out from, from ever putting a solar panel on the roof because their house faces the front, faces the sun. And if they put them in the back, they're not going to get any kind of, uh, benefit from it. So, um, I agree with Roland on that. I, I'm, I'm for the inspection and I think that, that, uh, and, and another thing that I'm, I'm, I don't know if the ordinance, because I, I didn't get a chance to read it. I, I had too many to read. But I'm not sure if it, if it's, has to be roof mounted. There are some that, I think there are some cities that I remember reading that outlawed, you know, going beyond, like for another, in other words, like a whole solar array in their backyard and things like that. I'm not sure that we really want to.
Like off the structure.
Right, right. I'm not sure that we really want to.
Well, if you can't, I mean, if you can't see it, we could just let it fall into current accessory structure rules, right?
Well, yeah.
And it can't project further into the setback than any, projections are allowed and that would just be.
I just don't want a whole solar array in the front yard. You know what I'm saying? So you, I don't know.
That's all addressed in the regs. It would be, would, it would, couldn't go in front of the house, uh, and it has to meet all the zoning requirements, the same things that apply to accessory structures as well.
Okay, yeah. But again, I agree with Roland as far as the front of the house or on the structure. I, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I agree. If we take out three B on page 161 with that roof mounted restriction.
You talking about?
B three.
From a public or private street and/or golf course, then we're encouraging people to be energy cognizant and when this technology improves to put it on. Uh.
Yeah, I'm okay with removing B three. I had a note that said I didn't like the idea to say, end our golf course. Quite frankly, I see them back up to the golf course now. They're not bad looking. Um, I may not want it next to my house, but you know. And the other point I was going to make is, um, D one C, a survey and legal description of the property required. I think we're asking too much. Um, you're going to ask somebody to get their house surveyed? They've been there 20 years and they're going to put solar panels on and I'm going to ask them to get a survey? I just don't think that's, I think that's just government doing too much personally. Why do you need a survey if they're putting it on their roof?
Well, a lot of times we get, uh, like on a fence permit will require, this is an existing survey that they already have. Uh, a lot of times if it's a newer home, we eat, we have supplied them a copy of it. So, um, that said, we can take that out. That would really more apply to a ground mounted system anyway, not switch to a roof system.
Yeah, if, if, if the, uh, you know, if property lines aren't going to play a major factor in the, in the, in the decision, then that's probably not necessary.
The only other comment I made is where ground mounted system, um, having some type of shielding, did it say that? Or let me think here. Shall be screened such that the system not be visible from a prevalent product street and/or the golf course. So again, C three, where we removed B three. So if you're on page 163, I guess still.
Yeah.
Well, you've got ground systems. I, I was leaving, uh, not visible on ground systems. Uh, if somebody decides to put a solar array in their backyard, I don't necessarily want to see it. The roof, I have to look up. So I'm, I'm kind of like on ground systems. They need some kind of type of screening in some situations maybe.
Yeah, I, I would say maybe there though, that we would want to remove the golf course portion. Just because we have a lot of people that are, um, open to the golf course and for whatever reason, they may not be able to do it on the roof, but if they could do it on the ground, but it would still be behind the principal structure and meet all those other requirements. So yeah, I, I think that's fine. It's going to be, I mean, well, we don't know. It's all speculative. We don't know how the tech, how these things are going to develop over time.
Any other recommendations, changes, additions for staff?
Let's go.
This is all just direction, right?
That's true. So we have B three invisibility and D one C.
That's correct. And this would, uh, we've already, we're already planning to take this to the Planning and Zoning Commission next week based on the direction we get tonight so we can get this moving forward. We have a couple of permits that are kind of waiting in the wings that people would like to, to place solar panels on their homes.
All righty. And what's holding it up now?
Well, right now we just have no regulations. It's kind of like the portable classroom with just nothing on the books that even allow solar panels.
So the ones that have it just, just did it or?
Their grandfather, they just did electrical permit to get it.
Okay.
It was, yeah, and it was kind of a, it was done under different interpretation.
Okay.
By pass.
One being a police officer, so I was just curious.
Are we going to go back to 14?
Yeah.
You're, you're in control of the meeting. I'm asking him. You don't have to. Go back to 14. You're going to have that one.
Hey, if you, if, if you're ready for that. All right. So you want to relinquish the chair?
Yes.
All right. So Mayor Pro Tem Lamont relinquishes the chair. Do this for Holly's purposes. We go back to 14, receive an update from Mayor Town Manager related to meeting the town had with representatives from Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One regarding proposed water sewer rate increases and tax rate increases, uh, discussion of same. Um, uh, this began as a email from Jennifer who offered to meet with town staff, um, about the rate increases. Um, I was included in the email and I said, can I attend? Um, so they showed up to the meeting, uh, basically with the same charts that Jennifer had presented at the mud meeting, uh, with really no presentation. Um, uh, and, um, I mean, the, the spreadsheets and the charts are exactly what you can see online. They considered four scenarios of what, how the rates may go. Um, our meeting that we had with the staff was on July the 13th. Um, and if you go to the homepage, the mud homepage and you see the, the banner part that's changed is the notice of public hearing and you click on see rules and you can go to the general manager's presentations and there's a PowerPoint presentation of, um, I mean, there's a PDF file that's a PowerPoint presentation about things. Um, what they talked about, uh, in that presentation and what they talked about at their meeting and, um, they would bring up periodically at our meeting, um, the reasons that I can glean for an increase is number one, there's an increase in the wholesale water rate from Fort Worth. I asked the question, what percentage? And no one could answer that, uh, for me. When I was on the mud board, I remember two Fort Worth rate increases, one of which the mud just barely affected their rates and the other one, we only took a percentage of it. And the reason for that was that in the summer months, we mix well water with Fort Worth water at about 25% well water. And therefore the thought being is that your peak billing months, you're only using 75% of Fort Worth water. So do you have to pass along the entire increase, uh, was the thought process. I actually, uh, asked, uh, the board president if he wanted to come talk tonight. He was not available tonight. I asked, could you please send me the last rate increases that you had from Fort Worth? And he did not have those, did not receive them. And I asked Bill Rose and Bill Rose did not have those either. Um, there should be a letter from Fort Worth saying exactly, here is what our rate increase is going to be percentage wise. Uh, so you should be able to deal with that. I don't see that. Um, second reason was, uh, they're estimating that there's going to be a need for future reserves to handle maintenance of the PID infrastructure. Now, there's nowhere in the presentation as to what they think that reserve is for the PID infrastructure. And I can surely anticipate that the pump at the town owned elevated storage tank could potentially be the biggest maintenance structure. But in fact, the painting and cleaning of the elevated storage tank is something that they take over along with all the water lines and feeder lines. So I can understand the need for that, but I don't see anything in their forecast as to what they think that might be needed. Uh, they say, have a statement that said, moving towards the AWWA meter size equivalences model. In their presentation, they said that they are only implementing one third of the rate changes by AWWA. No one has been able to explain to me what the second third and the third third are going to do to us.
And that, and that's the base rate or the volumetric?
I do not know. But the AWWA rates take more into effect, uh, meter size. And based on a handout that I saw that came in an email from Kevin, it's almost like they were adding a new level for the, um, uh, five, uh, for the three quarters. So there was a five eighths, which currently the rate is five eighths and three quarters are identical. The AWWA says that a three quarters, 1.5 times of volumetric rate. So I don't know how that is going to affect the next change. Uh, so I have concern about that. Uh, they also listed requirement for the capital improvement projects of a variable speed pump that was $370,000. Uh, currently they don't have a pump that's out, but they have three constant speed pumps. If they replaced one of them with a variable speed pump of $370, uh, that gives them the ability, ability to push more water or, uh, throttle down pumps when not needed. And we already have some variable speed pumps, but this is replacing one of the existing fixed speed pumps with a variable speed pump. They have other, uh, CIP projects totaling $184,000 that they're trying to recruit money to have money to fund. They said need to rebuild operating reserves by $200,000 from water and $200,000 from wastewater. So they have a concern about their operating reserves and so the new rates will allow them to, in both water and wastewater, um, depending on usage, uh, increase their reserves by 200,000 each. And then they listed under wastewater, uh, a CIP project for $465,000. Is that the, what is that? The screen? I can't remember what that was, Stephen. Something that's not in the improvement that they're doing now is a half million dollars.
Yeah, it's something that was not included within the wastewater treatment plan. I can't think of the, what that device is at the moment, but it was not included in the original scope of the project, but it's like three or 400,000.
Oh, the building they're building?
No.
Oh, it's something else.
I thought it was, and what is it with the, uh, when they have to load, um, what's dried? Is it the loader thing?
I'll have, I've got it written in my notes someplace. I, I don't have them with them.
I didn't type that in my notes. And the other thing is just to let everybody know that based on our estimates, you saw this in the budget presentation, although I think that's the, where you didn't, you weren't here, Philip, was that, uh, the new rates are going to cause a, an increase in our water cost as a town of $40,000 a year. That's what's estimated. So the new budget that we have, uh, made an allowance for that, uh, $40,000 increase. Now that's based on how much we use. If it, things are wet, we'll use less. If things are dry, we may use more. Um, so I, I can tell you that if you go to the website and look at the ca- at the calendar of what they plan to happen, based on the calendar online, they plan on approving the new rates at their next meeting at the same time there's a public hearing. Uh, that doesn't mean they will, but that's the schedule that's presented online and I suspect it will be agended that way. Um, I can tell you that, uh, Director Rose is concerned about the fact that he seems like they kind of have the cart before the horse in the sense that they really haven't dealt with the budget. And so how much, how much should the rate be if you don't know exactly what your budget's going to be? Um, so, um, that seems to be, uh, the best I can, uh, glean from the, the issue. When we requested that they, that Jennifer come to this meeting, Jennifer is on vacation for two days. And then the last time that Jennifer was going to come make a presentation, they gave us the information and I sent back and said, there was no reason for Jennifer to come. Everybody can read the slides.
But, but that was not a.
That was not a rate increase.
No.
Right, but.
And, and just, just for the record, we, uh, we also made mention that the 99 year agreement had in it that they were to come to us for that. And they found another provision in the 99 year agreement that said not to come. So.
It's an interpretation of the words and.
Yeah. I, I think it's, it's obviously a courtesy to this council that they, they should come, uh, because it's a, it's, it's a substantial increase for who we represent, which is the PID. And it's, it's a huge increase because all of those houses have one inch, one inch meters. And so they're going to see a substantial, uh, increase in their base rate along, and, and if you compare it, and I know you can't really compare A to B to C, city to city to city, but, uh, it's, it's much more than Roanoke pays, uh, I think on the base rate. Um, I'll have to verify that. That, that could be wrong, but, uh, but certainly it's a, it's like a 50% increase to PID residents and, um, and I, you, you know, I, I'm, I'm concerned when they say, because I heard the same thing, that this is, uh, the first of three rate increases to, to match AWWA. So, uh, and it sounds like some kind of wrestling thing.
And that hadn't even been explained. So.
And, and the other I might add that, that the rate does not include what they're going to be asking the voters to approve, which I believe is $18 million and a GO bond, which will effectively raise taxes on those individuals.
I don't think that that actually, the mud does theirs different because, uh, some of the, and Nick can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but you, when you were on the board, um, and you did the wastewater treatment plant, you were using bonds from, approved bonds from way back.
That's correct.
And so, so you don't necessarily have, because I've read on.
It had already been voted on by the citizens.
Right. And I've read on Facebook that tax rates will double overnight. Well, that's not necessarily true because they may not get all 18 million. They, they could, they could do portions of it. Not, not saying that they won't.
Yeah.
Because they have the, they would have the ability to if it passes, but, uh.
I didn't think there was 18 million left in that bond. I thought there was 25.
No, no, no. They're, they're going to go and ask for 18 million, but they may not use it all. The way, the way that I understood it from the meeting is that these are projects, here's project A, B, C, D, E, and F. project A, B, C, D, E, and F, but they may not do it all. You know, it could be 10, 15, 20 years before they do some of those projects, so.
One of the big factors is this. And I'll probably have the dimensions wrong, but let's say there's a 12-inch water line coming to town. Is that what it is?
I think it's like a 22-inch line.
No.
No, 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 no. That's, no.
18 goes to 30 or something.
Anyway, okay. So, whatever the, the dimensions is of the water line that comes into town, as it goes out to get Fort Worth water, we, the mud is already participating in a portion of an upgrade that Fort Worth is doing to upgrade their supply line to this area of Tarrant County and Denton County. So, that's the first segment. The second segment, it would take it from whatever that pump station is to Westlake. And again, that's a proportional amount. So, anything that comes off of that line, Westlake, of course, and us are paying our proportional amount to upsize the line. And then you have to get it from the Westlake station to Trophy Club. The only person to pay for that is Trophy Club. So, there seems to be, in the water study, there's some debate about, did they use the proper figures for number of people living equivalent units, LEUs, based on what our build-out is? And, and it kind of came back, was that what's the town told us was going to be the population? Well, it set me to thinking going that we know, they know that they have 4,000 and some odd connections. I don't remember what that number is. That's number of houses with connections. They know what their usage is today based on that number of connections. You know that we only have 200 lots left, homes. So, if you were looking at what home use is, that you took all your residential use, divided it by the number of homes that you have, that's your use per home, average. And then you multiply that times the number of lots we have left, and you know what you need exclusive of PD-30.
And commercial.
And other commercial that you might have. Well, the apartments at PD-30, I probably have this wrong, but maybe 50% of them are single-bedroom apartments. Some large number. I'm surprised how many are single-bedroom.
But they, but they should have...
So, you're not going to have 2.4 people per...
Right. But, but based on, based on experience of what we had to go through with Town Hall and give them detail, they should have that same, they should have that number for PD-30 just like that. So, in other words, that developer had to give them, here's the L U Es for PD-30. So, they should, they should be able to factor that into what we have left for build-out, and that number should, they should all agree on that number.
And they don't seem to agree, and I'm not sure I agree with the numbers. You know, when you, when you look at our figures, we have a census from 2010. That's the accurate number we have. From that point forward, it is an estimate. We do not know how many people are in town. We can go, well, this is how many houses that added, but as the school district was talking about, we don't know when somebody sold a house and it went from two people to four people, or vice versa. So, you don't know what that usage is. Hence, I think you need to recalculate that and not go based on what you think citizens are and go on living units. I didn't see that in the water study. I surely wouldn't say that I'm an expert on the water study, but still have lots of questions in my mind that I need answers to that I, to be more comfortable about it. So, just to let you know where we are. Anybody else have questions about that or comments?
I would just suggest that we ask them to come back based upon Section 5.2A, 8, the 99-year lease, to, to come in and make a presentation. It'll be on the 23rd. It'll be after their rate presentation on the 16th, and then it's approved.
All right. Anything else on item 14?
And can we just make it clear that whatever the mud, you know, whatever they pass, because of the 99-year agreement, we really have no alternative but to pass that through. There's, there's, our hands are tied. We can, I don't like an increase, and I've told Kevin, I don't like the increase, but as representatives of the PID, as people want to put, put that on us, and which, which we technically are, because we're going to pass the rate on to the PID, because of the 99-year agreement, we have to pass that along to the PID residents.
I've had one resident reach out to me, only one, and he lives in the PID, and all he basically said was, it's a shame I can't vote in mud election. And that was the end of the conversation. Like, I didn't get a lot of feedback.
But, but they can go to the meeting. They can go to the mud meeting. They can voice their displeasure. They have all the same rights, you know, that a mud resident has. I've reached out to several directors that I don't like the rate increase, you know, so I've done, you know.
Anyway. Stephen, David, just to make sure, and we've said this in the past, but the town council has absolutely no authority over the mud. It's an independent, separate municipality, correct?
Completely separate entity.
Right. And we cannot take it over. If there's any takeover, it would have to be, correct me if I'm wrong, the majority of the mud board would have to approve that and go through the voters.
It wouldn't have to go to the voters. It, it would be, there are two separate ways that it could theoretically happen. One would be because the mud lies within two corporate boundaries, the town of Westlake and the town of Trophy Club. It would either require a legislative change by legislators in Austin to do something, or it would take a three-party agreement, which would include the parties of Westlake, the mud, and the town to agree on a dissolution plan and, at that point. But it would not be voted on by the citizens. It would be voted upon by the town council, the mud board, and the town of Westlake Town Council.
The reason I bring this up, because there's an individual who knows better on Facebook, I realize it's Facebook, that keeps saying that we fail. We fail the residents. We need to take it over. I mean, every week, he's hounding, hounding. So, to him, RC, go before the mud board, get away from the keyboard, and state your problems and your concerns to the mud board directly.
So, I want to touch on that because I, he, he states it so much and maligns us so much that I'm asking, is there something I don't know that we have some sort of power that we can do something that some, we don't know something about? Like, he, he makes it sound like there is something we can do to change things, and there is literally nothing we can do, right?
If the mud, if, if the mud lied wholly within the corporate limits of the town...
Then we could, and I get that.
You could dissolve that, but I am not aware of another method or methodology in which to do something as suggested under the current circumstances.
Even if they were doing something illegal or violating policies, the town can't do anything, right? That would have to go through TCEQ or someone else. We could not do anything.
TCEQ or PUC now.
Okay, but it's, it's, there's zero we can do about it. Okay.
I mean, it's vicious, what he says.
I know I'm curious that it's what he says. Really, I just want to make absolutely 100% sure that there's zero we can do, that there's no avenues we can do anything.
Regarding dissolution or takeover?
Yeah, takeover.
We can't force that to happen.
Right. Okay.
So, one of the interesting things that, that I've been contacted by several people about was, since the announcement of the resignation of Jennifer McKnight, the comments were, well, now would be a good time that the mud said, why don't we just hand over the operational control of water and wastewater to the town? Let them hire a public works director, deal with it, and then the mud board becomes a taxing entity. The other thing that's been, been commented where we've had our disagreements about fire department is before it was like, well, Jennifer can run the fire department. Well, guess what, folks? Jennifer's gone in 20-something days. So, we don't know who their replacement is. Are they going to hire somebody to do that? It seems like now's the time to say, let's refine our ILA that currently exists with the proposed one that we sent that said, you know, it's non-cancellable for 10 years or something. Give us a chance to run it, the fire department and EMS. We'll deal with all the financial aspects, solve that problem, and give us a chance to do it so that the person you hired doesn't have anything to do with firing EMS. And therefore, you're after a water and wastewater person if you're going to replace her. So, though, it's a little off-topic. I apologize for that, but it's all along. All right. Anybody else on item 14?
Good.
All right. Let's go to item 19. Discussion of Town Council Future Agenda Item Number Three, Discussion and Action Related to Town Garage, Special Estate, Moving Sales, et cetera. We've, in essence, dealt with that tonight. Yep. So, Garrett's going to step out for a minute. He'll be back.
Warmer or cooler? Don't you need a buddy to go with you?
Are you volunteering? Please.
But you have to stay inside this building, Garrett. All right. So, item 19, we are dealing with in the sense of the amendments, and so, highly that item can, can disappear from our future agenda list. Item 20, Discussion of Town Council Agenda Item Number Four, Established a Reserve Policy for Trophy Club Park. We have a fund balance policy that was included in our packet. Staff, is, is there something you were trying to say by the fact that you gave us the fund balance policy and there were some highlighted areas?
Yeah. Essentially, Trophy Club Park is a proprietary fund, and if you notice, within the fund balance policy, there are two highlighted sections regarding working capital as well as proprietary funds about what our goal for a policy is. And so, if there's something greater that the council would like to see than, or ideas about how the direction you'd like to go, then we appreciate the feedback. It's late. You can email us this information. And otherwise, this is the policies in which we utilize for all our funds that we manage. So, kind of, we're just looking for what you'd like to do.
And I don't, I, that's fine, but we, we've never been able to establish that, correct? Since we've...
Yeah, we, we were very close, and then...
2014 happened.
2015 happened, and...
Oh, yeah, 15, yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, what we're trying to do now is actually take pressure off of it. And, you know, we've done that a little bit with this budget year, and I think, you know, we're, we're going to continue to probably do that. I think it will come down to, do you want something very, very specific, the Trophy Club Park?
I think, I think the goal that, that I had was to, to get the park back up and running, kind of, kind of self-sufficient without having to utilize town funds, without having to constantly pay, pay itself back, in other words. And I don't know that we can ever get to that point because we need, we need quite a bit of period to build that fund up. But that's, that's sort of what I was, I was shooting at, is to have some kind of reserve fund that when, when an event happens and we know it's going to happen, that boom, we can dip into that and get that park back up into running, and then the park itself can pay that fund back.
I would personally love that, and I know Glickman would too. One of the issues that we have with the park is the, the ability to generate revenue, enough revenue to create those types of reserves and operate, you know, not just operational aspects, but the reserve aspects. Because in reality, the, the biggest generator of funds is motocross, and even at motocross, we do very well when it's open. You would have to really kill it. I mean, and, and, and there's infrastructure that really, if you really wanted to take it to the next level of that park, that would maybe generate a lot more money, you would have to put substantial investments into it. And I'm not sure that's something we would want to consider at this point in time because you really are looking at water and sewer-type facilities. You're looking at, you know, you're really going to take the park from what it is, a natural kind of place, to more commercialized, for lack of a better word.
You're also looking at, if you do that, then you have what we had, what we experienced, it's shut down. You know, so you're losing all that, and you're going to have to start over unless you move it. And then if you move it, you're moving closer to those...
I think this is a healthy place to start because obviously, just getting back to where the park's open is literally where we're at right now. And, you know, it would have been nice if seven or eight years ago, this had been established, and then it had been maybe pushed up to 365 days or whatever. So, my, my long-term goal is that maybe one day, we, we have enough of a good run of reasonably, reasonable precipitation that we don't get flooded out two years in a row. And eventually, we can slowly but surely raise our, raise that reserve just enough to where when this hits next time, it doesn't kill us for six years, it only kills us for one or two years.
And I like taking, I like what you're doing, taking that pressure off of, of things that really shouldn't be in there.
Well, one thing that I know Ron, Ruthven, and I have visited, and we've even talked about with council, is to take our corporate limits to the lake. What that would do essentially is allow us to, any, any type of sales tax that you generate in the park, I mean, you could have a concession stand, so to speak, and those sales tax dollars could be, we could allocate those back to the park. I mean, so there are little things like that that you could do that we can't currently do because if you generate any sales tax in the park, it's not within our corporate boundaries.
And it would be a little more of a, a setting the table for maybe events and things like that.
Exactly. You know, like, you know, and that's, that's right. If you have any type of event in there, other than a fee that you're going to generate, you wouldn't make any money because it's not within the corporate limit. And so, that's something that, you know, we've explored. There's a little bit of ETJ left up near Neighborhood 7 and then the park, and that's something that we've, we've looked at.
And that's what South Lake has done.
That's what South Lake's done, Flower Mound's done, Grapevine's done. Everybody along the lake has pushed it up to the lake because it makes sense to do that because it's, we control it anyway.
And we're working on that, you say?
Yeah.
Speaking of reserves...
In fact, Ron went to a conference specifically in Austin on annexation.
There's a lot of legwork that needs to be done, that we're in the process of doing.
To Adam, speaking of reserves for the TC Park, where are we with grant money? Any, any success, awaiting?
The park opens this weekend. It'll actually open this weekend.
ATV?
ATV, yeah. The majority of it, not all of it, but the majority of it. And I think Stephen put it in his update that you may have some residents contact y'all because they've never heard a motorcycle. It's been that long. They've moved in their homes. They've never heard one where they're at. And, but as far as that is, RFP, our, our, our RFP should hit the paper either the very end of this week or Monday to bring in somebody for debris removal. Now, all the money from FEMA has been assigned to us, so we're going to start with debris removal and bring in somebody with an RFP. Hopefully, that'll be on your first or second meeting in September to accept their bid. And then we'll move into Category G, which is closer to $200,000. So, we're done with FEMA. We had our last meeting with them last week. We're only working with the state now, so they have allocated all the funds for, for the park.
All right. So, can we move on to item 21?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
All right. Item 21, Discussion and Receive Update Regarding Fiscal Year 2017 Budget, and Town Council will provide direction to staff as related to the budget. So, a couple of comments. I realize not everybody probably has their budget book with them. First of all, I'd like to say I appreciate very much receiving that and appreciate the hard work that staff put forth in this whole process. I did bring up an item to Stephen on page 16. If you don't have your packet with you, I'll just tell you what that is. It says EMS Fire Chief Vehicle Replaced With Ford SUV. It's listed twice.
Yes, sir.
I was hoping that it was in the budget twice, and I had found a place to reduce $33,000.
I'm guessing that's not...
But he blamed it on exporting to Excel, so...
Yeah. Out of Excel into the, it sometimes will duplicate, but it doesn't go into the total. That makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. So...
I was hoping so too.
Yeah. Okay. And then, where's my other page? So, I want to call your attention to, and again, I guess, I guess you maybe got an email with this packet if you want to pull it up.
Is, is, going back to that, is, are we paying half or are we paying the full amount?
It's $33,000. I think it's the full amount.
That's the full amount.
So, have you talked to Jennifer about that?
No, sir. What we've done right now is worst-case scenario. It comes out of equipment replacement. If we don't spend the funds, we don't spend the funds. That stays, it's just capital that we don't spend. We'll go back into fund balance and...
Last time we replaced it, do you know what we did? Last time we replaced it, do you know what we did? Split it?
It was split, as was, I believe, the pickup truck.
Who, who actually retains ownership of that in a situation like that? Do we...
There was something to do about title, wasn't there?
Yeah, I'm...
Or you can get back with...
I don't know who has, part of me says, I think we have it.
I think you do.
I think we have the title to that specific vehicle. I mean, to be honest, in terms of the title aspect, it's only when it goes to auction and you're gonna get a couple thousand dollars for it, that it really probably matters in terms of a day-to-day aspect of things.
Do you have an asset list in our fixed assets?
We do.
So is it listed in our assets?
I'll have to, I don't know off the top of my head.
Because I know the mud went through that, that there were things listed that weren't theirs and vice versa.
We absolutely, we, we go through our fixed assets every year, we do it multiple times only because of insurance, you know, and updating the books and depreciating costs.
Okay, so the agenda item after this is where we have to set the max rate and set
the dates for our public hearings. And so the budget was built upon a rate of point four-eight-four, almost forty-eight and a half cents per one hundred dollar evaluation.
That's the current rate.
That's our, that's our current way, rate, that's what was built. I, I think everybody knows, my general feeling is that I would like to reduce the budget, I had said that to staff, but I'm perfectly fine with them budgeting at a particular rate. We didn't really cut anything from the wish list, I call it, of, of items that were placed there. But I always have this feeling when I look at the budget, that I look, well, where are we gonna end up this year, this fiscal year? And so in our data, the 2016 estimated general fund balance says that it will have an increase of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, if I have that correctly. We are, our proposed budget says that our general fund is gonna go down two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Two ninety, four eighty-four, right Stephen? I don't know if you're looking at it.
I'm pulling it up right now.
It's on page twenty-two of the packet, if you wanna see that. Page twenty-two. Three-quarters down under fund balance.
Fund balance, the ending fund balance that will go down, you'll add, we are anticipating adding a hundred and twelve thousand dollars to fund balance this fiscal year, based upon our best predictions.
Of where you're gonna end up at the end of the year.
That's right.
Yeah, may or may not happen, but...
That's correct.
But in general. And I did talk to Stephen Glickman about that, how comfortable that he felt, felt about that at, at our previous meeting. And he felt pretty good, but of course, it depends on what special thing happens to deal with it. So our, our ending fund balance proposed for 2017 is three point five million dollars, right?
Correct, sir.
And we, we've been using fund balance to get things done, and I think that's great. But I do think that, that before we set our max rate, I would be perfectly fine with us setting our max rate tonight to be four-eight-four, however, I can tell you that I would really like to, to get point four out of that, or half a cent, or something like that. I could go through the supplemental items, and I could come up with that fairly fast, but I don't necessarily wanna say, well, what supplemental item is better than the other supplemental item? But, but I didn't see a lot of pushback from council about any of the supplemental items. So what, so what staff presented us was a wish list that we basically said okay on. At our, at our last meeting, when I brought up the fact of where is everybody in that, what I felt like was the consensus of they're okay with a four-eight-four, but there's not an opposition and maybe finding someplace to cut. And so I, I just wanted to deal with that and pointed out the fact that I'd surely like to get something out of that. So Stephen, I don't remember what a half cent is in revenue.
Well, the four...
I mean, a point, a half cent.
Point four, or the point zero-zero-four...
Right.
Would be about a sixty-three thousand, sixty-four thousand dollar...
So a cent's about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty-five to a hundred and fifty?
Yep, about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand.
Okay.
Per penny.
That's, that's kinda what I thought.
So for that point zero-zero-four, for somebody who has a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar house, average house in Trophy Club's about three seventy-five, three eighty, then that's a fifteen dollar annual difference.
Alright, so Garrett had his hand, Greg had his hand up and Garrett had his hand up, so Greg.
Well, I was gonna, next item to actually make it at four, forty-eight cents, it is sixty-three thousand dollars. I look at it, the property tax is up ten point three-nine percent, sales tax is projected to be up nine point seven-four percent. We've been reducing it slightly just to, I think it's to, to show the residents that we wanna stay on top of our budget. And I, so that, that's what I'm, I'm gonna make that recommendation, I might be on a lonely island, I don't know.
I, I liked what Nick said about a half cent. I think we could do even more if we wanted, but I think we've, that, he makes a good point about the supplementals, we all feel like there's justification there, there's some areas where catching up is justified, and I'm, but I'm never, I'm never opposed to finding areas to cut, and when push comes to shove, there are things I could do, there are things I could do, certainly do without as well.
And remember, this is just not to exceed the forty-eight cents.
Exactly.
We can go down lower.
Exactly, so I would, I would, I would, I would support not to exceed forty-seven-nine, and then, and then if we wanna whittle beyond that, we could whittle beyond that.
Well, he said half cent.
Well, you know, I agree, I don't, I don't think that we've, I don't think that we've done enough on council. You know, that was what I was saying earlier, that property tax under our watch has increased twenty-seven percent. I, I actually put in all of our houses, just to see, okay, as the seven of us and, and our evaluations have gone up twenty-four point five-seven percent since we've been on council. So, so we've done, I mean, you obviously can't credit us, but it's risen, and we've, we really haven't, I mean, we, our, our percentage of dropping the tax hasn't been that, that great. But I don't, I don't think that, I think when we all got on, you know, obviously we wanted to tighten up as much as we, we could, and I think we've, we've done some of that, but I think we could do a, a whole lot better. But, but I, I certainly think that, you know, we need to give back, that's why I think Nick brought up, I, I don't know if he, Nick, I'd emailed Nick about homestead, you know, there are cities around us that do that, some, you know, do twenty percent, some, some like South Lake have eased it up. But, you know, if we don't go that route, obviously, I think that there should be a reduction in, or at least a slight reduction. We need to, to be, I think we need to show the citizens that we're, you know, we're, we're at least trying to, to, to save as much as we can and tighten as much as we can.
Stephen, whereabouts would our effective rate land now that we know the...
Effective rate is point four-five-five with a whole bunch of numbers after it.
Right, so...
Rollback rate's at forty-nine.
Right.
Didn't it say it in the front of the book?
Isn't it in there? Yeah, I just opened it today, but so forty, so basically forty-five and a half is basically if we spend the exact number of dollars we spent in the, in the prior fiscal year.
I wanna say that I think we've been extremely diligent in trying to be as efficient as possible, we've been cognizant of where we are. I think we've had to change a lot of things in this town from the top down, right, from every person here.
Which has cost money.
Which has cost money, right? We have to fix a lot of things in this town that need to be fixed, and we're putting a new building together, we're getting less permits from construction. We hope to have a lot more in hotel, hotel occupancy tax, and we hope to have a lot more sales tax over the coming years, that's, and that's why we're doing a lot of this stuff, right?
Trying to diversify.
Yes, exactly, so I wanna cut taxes, I think we should, and I agree with that, but I, you know, I just disagree with Philip a little bit, I, I think you may have worded it wrong, I think we've done a ton to try to give, give back. You know, so what we're doing is giving a much better service for the same price, we're giving a, a much better product for the same price, and I, I wanna continue to cut it, but I wanna be cognizant of that we still need to continue to make sure we're, we're putting the best product out there, the best service out there. At the same time, I wanna, I wanna continue to gain efficiencies everywhere possible and give it back to the, the town, like I said, give it back to the residents, there's no re- for us, no reason for us to have it, so.
But what I understand from talking to lobbyists and legislators, every time we go through a legislative process in Texas, what I hear is, you gotta be careful because you don't know what the legislature's gonna do to our ability to fund ourselves. And you, you heard the school district talk about their complex issues, which are much worse than ours. But what I think's going to be the push from everybody that I have talked to, and what's happening in people that are the most conservative legislators that have the backing of Tea Party, is the push to say that there can never be more than a four percent increase in property values per year. Now, I'm not quite sure how they're gonna manage that or what they're gonna do, that's the, the fear of things, but we are in a high-growth season in North Texas, and so what's happening is the legislators are, are listening to the people that say, well, guess what, Trophy Club got how many hundred thousand dollars additional in new growth? And what did they do to their taxes? They kept them level. You heard the school district said, well, we kept it level for twelve, twelve years, because they're working off fund balances. Well, somewhere they're getting, they're replenishing their fund balances. So they did it for twelve years, I can't imagine they have twelve years worth of cash reserves.
Yeah. M and O went fourteen years, it was just on the news.
Fourteen years?
No tax decrease, fourteen years of all that growth.
Yeah, and so I, I, I think the citizens look at us and say, now wait a minute, you're having all this growth, and yes, I understand maybe that you're putting it in capital dollars, but what are you doing for me? Because the reality is, if I look at myself, I probably am not gonna be living here twenty years from now, because I probably won't even be living twenty years from now. So the fact that you build a road that's gonna last thirty years... I will, I will. I only want twenty years out of it, because I'm gone in twenty years, you know, that kinda thing. So, so that's the reason I'm pushing us to kinda say that. I know Stephen will caution us, which I think he has to do, but I look back at our history and, and what we've done, and, you know, we budgeted in 2016 to say that we were gonna have an eighty-three thousand dollar surplus in general fund, and we're forecasting now that we're gonna have a hundred and twelve. So we budgeted to have eighty-three, and we're probably gonna have more than that. Of course, if you look at it now, we're budgeting to have a three hundred thousand dollar almost decrease, but that's happening for some specific reasons, two hundred and fifty thousand of that is a transfer out.
Yeah.
And if you look at page twenty-two, on transfer outs in 2016, we're transferring six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out of the general fund for other things, right?
Well, it's...
Estimated.
Yeah, but that, that has to do with other capital projects that we've got online, I mean, it's all funds go, all roll up.
Yep.
It, it's money that we have on hand, it's not necessarily like your...
New money coming in.
Right. You know, one thing that I think we've done really well over the last couple of years is, you're not going to probably see huge sums coming in revenues over expenses. In other words, our ability to, I think, accurately forecast revenues and trying to accurately forecast expenditures and creating a balance, I think we've gotten much better at that, and I think we'll continue to get better at that. My fear is exactly what the mayor said, is what the legislature may or may not do, and I realize, you know, you know me, I will be ultra-conservative, but ultra-conservative, if they do change something and you lower it that four thousandths of a penny, over the next five or six years, that's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you would be putting into capital projects potentially. And I think that, that's truly a policy decision that the council makes, and as a staff, we will, we will respect and implement that decision, because at the end of the day, you're elected to make that, that, that decision. We wanna put all the facts out there and let you guys make that decision, and we'll find a way, I mean, we always do, that's, that's the, that's the best part about my job, is how do you do the puzzle? And if that's the will of the council, you don't have to make a decision on the tax rate tonight. You have to decide what you're not going to go above, but you're not, you're not locked into anything until we take our final vote in September.
And at sixty-three thousand, you got, get sixteen thousand from the mud for the fire chief's car, get half of that, and then you got the fourteen thousand for the, the billing, you halfway there?
I, I would, I would say that we, we really, I really, I'm, I'm coming from the same, sorry, the same place that, that Philip is, in that if I wasn't here reading all this stuff, all I'd be saying was, well, my, 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 my valuation went up max ten, my taxes went down a couple percent in aggregate, right, not, even though we're talking about half, half a cent or whatever, if you talk about point four over forty-eight or whatever, right, it's two percent versus ten, you know, or something like that. Or one percent in that case, closer to one percent. But anyway, I, I, I would like to be more aggressive, I think we are, and I've always felt this way for as long as I've been on here, which is that we're kind of a little behind the eight ball on capital projects, I wish we had been more aggressive on capital projects forever and ever, for all the twelve, thirteen years I've lived here, however long it is. But I, 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 you can't just look at the rate, you gotta look at how much you're spending relative to inflation and, and growth of prices, growth of prices of things like power and fuel and raw goods and things like that. And we need to be, any, in, any, any net increase of raw spending above and beyond CPI plus capital, we need to be like, be ready to just justify on our deathbed, you know? So I, I would like to, I would like to support, to start where, where Nick is going, to look at shaving off a, a half cent or so, and then I'd like to see from, from staff, when we get down to the nitty-gritty, you know, just show me what taking another, taking, going down to forty-six would look like. I don't even, you know, I, I mean, I can go through here and pick and choose myself, but then it gets real serpentine, it's very difficult to put that together in the form of emotion and debate that everybody understands the impact, but if you guys throw some scenarios together, I think it gives us the ability to, to understand whether it's worth even having the debate, you know?
I think you asked that same question. I don't have the, the, the number right in front of me, but the, by far, the largest portion of this budget is capital. And so when I look, I think personnel only went up like a, a percent or two, you know, everything, you know, services supplies is pretty, is in there in the percent or two, it's really what we're spending on capital, and that's where, you know, we will do as much as you guys wanna do, or we will do as little as you wanna do. Our job is to tell you, this is what we can afford right now, this is how we propose to do it, and here's the plan. Here's this year's plan, oh, and by the way, we're already planning for next year, the next year, the next year. And in reality, it's, if, if there are certain projects, I mean, I can get you down to that number, but the biggest number where that comes from, because the portion of the budget increase is going to that capital, to capital.
But, but it's, it's not affecting our interest in sinking, we're not trying to get below the eleven cents.
That's correct.
We're, we're trying to, to find items that could affect M and O.
Well, it could, and it could impact your INS, because the ability to issue debt next year, a seven million dollar CO does play into your total tax rate. So if you didn't, if you weren't interested in issuing seven million in debt, we could lower the INS rate, you know, by half a penny or a penny or what, I mean, we, we can do that. The great thing about eleven cents is that it's been, there's a really good plan, I think, for this town to reinvest in what we do and what we have, because that, you know, it's that broken window theory, you wanna keep your properties up, you want your parks to be great, you want the... You want the residents to love going to those facilities and amenities, and you've got to invest and reinvest. It's a, you know...
Well, I'm a little bit where I think Stephen is advising is that tonight when we set our max, we have a budget before us that we haven't taken anything out of that is .484. If you set that max, you can't go above it after tonight. I would feel comfortable with even setting the max lower tonight. Not sure that I would do a penny. I would almost like to be able to go back to Stephen and say, Stephen, okay, you've heard us, we want somewhere between .4 and 1, I don't know, or something like that, whether that's .5 or whatever. What would, what would you do based on your plans? Do you come back and say, this is where I recommend you cut? As opposed to us just arbitrarily saying, cut this $30,000?
Yeah.
Because I don't want to jeopardize something that you guys feel important. When I looked at some of our projects that we funded, the supplemental projects, I saw, I was looking for it and couldn't see it, three or four projects that were all IT software-related productivity improvements, which are all great. But do you have the staff to actually implement all those next year?
Yeah.
So, so you're upgrading encode, you're, you're doing this forms processing system, you're doing all these things. That's all great, and I'm glad you are. You've got HR doing online forms and stuff. I see that being a great productivity increase. We have one HR person. But in your budget is a half-person, I think, this fiscal year, the new fiscal year, for an administrative person to help various departments, right?
It's two interns is what, based on our feedback.
Right. Two interns.
One, one for, one to have right now, and then we would pick up maybe an intern later in the summer or something like that.
But it looked like to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that in the next fiscal year, you are planning for it to be a person.
That's a very conservative plan. I think we would want to see how the interns, if we have, the person we have today has an intern who's a college student, she's, she's really sharp, but she's also a college student, and that's really her first priority. If we could find people that are sharp like she is and as, and can do the things that we do, I would love that. That, that's, I mean, one, it gets them on-the-job training, it gets them into the workforce. It's that growing your own because maybe, maybe, maybe we have an opening and they're, they're homegrown. If not, we become a place where people can learn and can poach in some cases. So I think that item would get revisited. I mean, I think even seeing how the new building works and operates and do we need somebody in the front? Do we not need somebody in the front? I mean, there's a lot of unknowns right there right now that I would say, you know, I need some help right now with HR, I need some help with just basic stuff, even helping finance HR, parks, you name it. There's some things there that these interns, I think, can help us with, just even filing and scanning, because we're trying to go as digital as possible.
And I applaud you in that. I support that technology. I think that's the way we need to go. That makes us more efficient. But practically, how much are you really going to get done? So I'll call your attention to page 18 of our budget book. It's supplemental items. So this is just a question. Next to the bottom says, police investigative assistant. I totally support that position. So the question I got is, we set aside $200,000, $250,000 for drug enforcement?
200.
200,000. I'm asking myself, kind of going, well, could part of that be used for this if, in fact, this investigative assistant is involved in all of those cases as a way to look at that? So I'm not really saying that I'm going to not fund it. I'm saying I'm going to fund it from a different source if the council felt okay with that.
But that's not what we set that fund up.
I understand that, but you have the authority to change anything.
I know, but I think that we wanted the, I, my, my reasoning for voting for that was so that the chief could at any time get the assets that he needed to fight whatever he deemed necessary in, in drug situations, whether, whether it be, because that was the whole point of having that, is that he had to come to us and go through the whole process for, for the K-9, where the K-9's just one instance in that fight. So in other words, if he needed a, a throwaway car, if he needed to rent this, or if he needed to do that, he has that asset available that he can dip into. What you're wanting to do is tie, tie an actual person into that, and that's a little different scenario than I think what, at least what I voted for and envisioned that 200,000 for.
It's only good for the first couple of years.
And if he, and if he thought it was, was justified, that's his decision, you know?
I'm just raising the issue because I'm saying, here's an investigative assistant. I visualize that that person's going to be involved in any drug issue investigation. I don't know that, but, but, so I'm just asking the question. If I'm trying to get to a penny, if I'm trying to get to half a cent, I'm just asking the tough questions. I'm not necessarily saying that I want to use those funds, but I can also just turn around and say, well, let's not do the investigative assistant, and I've got my half cent. And I don't want to do that.
See, what I've always wondered is, there's one fund that, that Mike set up, which was the discretionary, the, what do you call it? Contingency fund, 25,000. We very rarely ever use it. You know, Stephen especially, he's very, very conservative on using that. Do we need that full 25,000? I mean, he could come to the council and, and get the funds that he needed. It just wouldn't be immediate, which I don't think, not a lot of situations where he needs immediate funds, you know? I think this year...
I had an issue where I needed it this year.
But it's 5,000 is all you've used.
Well, I technically used more than, I technically used more than that, but I was able to reallocate where that was expensed after council made a decision.
But that's, so, you know, I could do the same thing with that fund. Does he, do we, does he really need to have that discretion on 25,000? So...
So, so let me ask Stephen a question on page 25. If you go to that, where we're talking about legal personnel, 2016 estimate, 220, 220,000 as opposed to 165, which was the budget. That's where Patricia left at the cost involved in that. And so we're not having a full-time person or...
Correct.
Person, so there's no person budgeted there. So where is that expense for, David, in this?
Professional outside services. And that also includes additional outside services, just like we would, like when Patricia was here, if we needed to use Robin or some other type of attorney, that's there.
Well, I just was wanting to know, so where is, what page of that? That's what I couldn't find.
It's under page 26. If you look under FY proposed, professional outside services is 122. And then we have some publications expenses. That's mainly our ability to access Westlaw and other items like that.
122 is the 2016 budget.
It's a proposed FY 17 budget.
I don't see 100, oh, I see it down here under professional outside services.
Yes, sir.
Well, I understand that, and I'm not saying that that's not what we should be doing with David. I was just trying to find, when it all of a sudden moves, where did it move to becomes the difficult thing to find.
Yeah.
All right, so it's 12:30 almost. Anybody want to?
And I'm not opposed to setting our not-to-exceed at where we're at now, 484, because we're not, we're not bound by that, you know? So I don't know.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like, you know me, though, I'm always for a little bit of progressive downward pressure. I do want to throw one thing out there before we move, move, move on, is we talked about, we talked about wanting to maintain INS, and we know that a lot of our capital activity comes out of INS. So right now, our proposed, if our INS is 11, our proposed M&amp;O is, is...
37.
37, right? So it's, it's, yeah, 37,400. So 37,435. But our effective M&amp;O, according to the worksheet in the packet, is 35,1. So the percent increase in M&amp;O is 6.27% increase in overall expenditures under M&amp;O. Quick, quick checking on inflation, year, year to year in 2016, year to date in 2016 is 1.7%. So we're proceeding at four times the rate of inflation in our M&amp;O.
Well, hang on, let me pull something up real quick because...
So, and I know that's just a number, and it's 12:30, and I'm throwing stuff out there, but that's kind of the thought process I want to attack in understanding how to keep tabs on our costs, basically.
Yeah. So, you know, of, of that, the total, you know, the total budget is, is, you know, personnel cost percent difference is 1.65%. Services and supplies is 24% of that.
That's where we're spending it.
Right. Yeah, because you're spending, you're, it's projects, and it's also replacement of items, which then goes down to capital.
Right.
That's, that is the majority, those, you know, the, you know, the majority of this budget is really built upon infrastructure. Whether it is infrastructure internally to make us more efficient and keep us from hiring a lot of extra people and make, you know, our people's lives a little bit better as they work and do their jobs, or it's to reinvest in our community or to invest in our community.
And we do, we...
And I, and I can, I can hear you guys tonight. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to squeeze the turnip a little bit and see what I can do.
Yeah, well, I would like to say, just throw me some scenarios, because I think what we want to do is workshop it really. And you guys have done in the time that I've been here, we've stayed on top of capital really well, and we've been pretty smart with, with capital replacement and capital expenditures. I know there are, I know there are, there are guidelines and practices towards how things are accounted for, but I would almost like to see, I have M&amp;O, I have INS, I know everything in INS is debt service, and all that debt is related to something that's capitalized because it's borrowed against. Out of my M&amp;O, I know what, I know what my rate is, so I know what my total expenditure is in the budget, I know what the raw number is, whatever million, X million that is. How much of that's capital expense versus other? Because we're all kind of together on capital, and we know exactly what we're expending, and we know exactly what we're voting on. The other part is the part where we, I think, maybe want to make sure we're not, we're not, or that we're staying on top of growth and not going, growing.
Yeah.
So if that makes some sense in one of the ways we can...
So when we say, yeah, and I think some people say capital, for us, capital is not just a street.
It's an asset.
It's an asset. So anything over 5,000 is an asset, so, you know, and this is what I don't want us to ever get into, is what happened in 2010, when, or 2009, I don't remember which, when a former manager made the decision to do a seven-year tax note and bought cars.
Yeah.
Bought police cars on a seven-year tax note. The issue with that is that the useful life of that police car was gone, except the debt was not retired. And so you have title issues, and you, you've got to keep these cars that are, what I don't want, and I think that's what we've worked really hard over the last few years, is that if we need a vehicle that meets the point system and the replacement plan, we can pay cash for it. And when it's depreciated out, we keep it as long as we possibly can, and then we junk it. And that's, that mentality of being able to pay our bills without necessarily going out and saving our money, but being smart about it, that's something that is not just something I, I believe in and Stephen believes in, it's something that is really pushed down into the organization. They know, I mean, my nickname when I first got here was machete, and it was not a term of endearment because there was cutting.
I think that that's a good perspective because I think all of us here in our personal experiences understand the concept of capitalized expenses versus, versus regular expenses. And if we could get, if we could start to talk about what do, what do we consider capitalized expenses and what's everything else? And then out of everything that's capitalized, are we still all on the same page on that? I think we are, but that's another good way. I think every year we learn, we think of more angles to look at it.
Yeah.
So that's one way to think about it.
I think what I'd like to hear from you for the next meeting is...
Emotion?
Justify for me why we shouldn't reduce interest in sinking by some percentage. Do I really need to issue 7 point whatever million? Now, I realize all those relate to a project, but we've said that there's only so much we can get done in a year. And so we end up getting some capital dollars. We sell bonds, and that project, that project lasts more than a year. But I realize you've got to, you've got to have the money in the bank to do the project. And so justify why I shouldn't do something. Tell me, tell me why that is.
Real quick?
No.
Real quick?
I'm just too late for you to tell me.
You don't know what real quick is.
You want to go to sleep.
All right. And so the other thing is, you know, you, you take our comments we made tonight that says we'd surely like to get from a .4 to a penny off the taxes. You guys come back with some scenarios. And I'm, I'm not sure that I'll do them, but, but I think we owe it to ourselves to be tough.
Sure.
So that's what I hear from everybody else. Let's, let's squeak. All right. If you don't mind, let's try to move on.
Yes.
Item 22.
Mayor and council budget first, so...
He's going to go to the mayor and council budget?
I told him, hit ours first. Hit ours first.
Consider taking appropriate action regarding a record, a record vote on a not-to-exceed fiscal year 2017 ad valorem tax rate and to schedule two public hearings to meet truth in taxation requirements and/or as required by the charter and related matters. If someone wishes to make a motion, it needs to be worded a specific way. You have the word?
Yeah.
And that says everything, so it needs to give the rate, and it needs to set the dates. You've got that?
Got that.
Okay.
My process is to round it off, and it's not the final tax rate.
So this is the max?
Max.
All right.
I make a motion to propose a not-to-exceed fiscal year 2017 ad valorem tax rate of 48 cents per $100 of evaluation and call two public hearings for August 23, 2016, and September 13, 2016.
All right, do I have a second? So I have a motion by Mayor Protim Lamont, a second by Councilmember Reed. The matter is properly before you. So there was a hesitancy making the second.
I want to hear what Greg has to say.
So cold in here.
And so I, I think I would have been more comfortable making it 484 and then come back and hear what Stephen said to me. But, but the...
Let's see what Greg has to say.
But Greg has got to defend it, so your chance to defend it.
Well, property tax went up 10.39%, sales tax projected to go up 9.74%. That's a lot of money. We, we raked in. Should reduce it a little bit, and we might even be able to go, go lower. This is a max rate.
I concur. I, I think you forgot why, why when you go to the gas station, is it $1.89, $99? You should have gone 1,000th lower to 47.5 or 100. But regardless, for the purpose of achieving...
I just wanted to round it off.
For the purpose of achieving the goal tonight to set a not-to-exceed rate, I agree with you. I think a little bit of downward pressure guaranteed is a good thing to have, even though I think we all would like to find an acceptable way to go further.
Anybody else want to make a comment?
All day convince me. I'm so tired of this.
This is a record vote, so each person.
We're going to, yeah, I have it down.
Okay.
Can I say nanu, nanu for yes, or is that not? No?
You have to say yay or nay, or yes or no.
Oh, I'll come up with something. C? Affirmative?
All right, any other, any other discussion? All right, so... Look, I have to do all this stuff. I'm trying to think this through a little bit. I need a few moments. I haven't convinced myself I want to vote yes on it. All right, we will call for the vote. Mayor Protim Lamont.
Yes.
Councilmember Jim Perro.
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett Reed.
Yay.
Councilmember Ryland Rowe.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Tim Kurtz.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip Schaffner.
Yes.
Mayor Nick Sanders. Yes. The item does pass unanimously. So, therefore, Stephen, actually, you have to figure out the four cents.
You got half.
Come back.
Got the mud.
All right.
Council chambers, it's coming out.
I wish, four, four, four cents.
Nick, you said, Nick, you said four cents.
But if I, if I use that, I can have it, right? If I go move some dirt with it?
Yeah.
Work with it? All right, item number 23.
Oh.
Discussion of items for future agenda to include agenda items for consideration on the upcoming regular session council agenda for August 23rd, 2016, and items from the town council future agenda items list to include discussion of the below items. Item number five, review negotiating with Trophy Club Mud One to transfer title of land that the annex building is built on. And B, discussion and consideration of laws related to texting while driving inside the town. So, both of those items are here because, um, it's time for us to say, you want to move forward or not. As far as A, um, of course, things have gotten diverted a little bit as to what we're doing. We're talking about fire chief, we're talking about where do the employees work. Uh, we've got budgets, we've got a water rate.
Turmoil with the mud.
Um, so, so I'm not sure that, that that's going to move forward necessarily on the land of the annex building. So, I'm okay with just leaving it there for a while. Anybody want to remove it from future agenda?
No, sir.
All right, item B, discussion, consideration about the laws related to texting.
I thought I had taken this. We, I, I think it was pretty much covered that night. Whenever I kind of wanted to put it on there, Ryland said, "Look, we got safe driving laws." And I said, "Let's not do it."
All right. So, item number-
If somebody's driving erratically, they should be pulled over if they're not.
Item number six, on our future agenda list, can be removed, Holly.
Okay.
All right. And then, um-
Number three.
The second part of that is, uh, item number one. Uh, the wayfinding signage is going to be part of our budget.
Yes.
So, do we need item one on the future agenda list any longer?
No, sir. And we should have that coming to you, the firm coming to you, I think, the first meeting in September.
Yeah, okay. Item number three, discussion about garage sales, et cetera. Item number three can be removed. Item number four can be removed. And item number eight can be removed. At least that's the way I look at it.
Concur.
All right. Everybody okay with that? Anybody want to try to add one at this point, or it's too late for us to do anything?
Too late for that. Time's up.
Um-
Talk about knocking out that list.
There it is.
Okay. Um, item 24 is our executive session. I, I believe you planned on us actually doing, going into executive session for that. And so, I'll read these, and then we will, uh, go into executive session after a short recess. Item 24 pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551, Texas Open Meeting Act. The council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. A, Section 551072, deliberations regarding real property to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if deliberation in an open meeting would have detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person, Trophy Club Fire Station. B, Section 551074, personnel matters to discuss or deliberate the appointment and employment, evaluation, assessment duties, disciplines, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Trophy Club Fire and EMS personnel. Section, or number C, Section 551087, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations to discuss or deliberate the offer of financial or incentives to business prospect that the town seeks to have locate within the territory of the town, potential project, projects and incentives. So, before I finish, Stephen, I thought we were going to have the item that we had to make a decision about your contract and, tonight.
No, that'll be the next meeting.
The next meeting. Okay. All right, I apologize then. Okay. All right, so, uh, that is all the items, and at 12:43 AM, we are returned from executive session and reconvene into regular session, and it is 1:03 AM. Um, we went into executive session. One of those items was item C, um, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. And so, we had a presentation, uh, that Town Manager Sadeal gave us about, uh, our involvement with the development down at Trophy Wood Drive that has been, uh, part of TERs one, and how we've been, uh, incentivizing to make development happen down there, which has been the results of Breadwinners Construction. And we're now presented with a project that is larger than was what was ever thought of. Stephen, you want to update everybody on that?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, we're not ready to release the name of this project, but originally, it was probably a four to 5,000-type square foot development, and we're going to probably end up a 20,000-plus square foot, uh, development with three, uh, separate, um, restaurants. And it's really, it's going to be something completely unique to the DFW area. Uh, we've worked very hard with OTD, and OTD has worked very hard to secure this particular tenant and tenants. And what we're looking for is to, in order to assist, is to work with the TERs and provide, uh, the TERs $300,000. And as part of that, it goes towards the $1 million that we had already authorized towards OTD, so they're not getting any more money. It's just, we're going to make it available now, similar to what we did with Breadwinners, to help secure that deal. We're doing the same thing to help secure this deal, because it's really a game changer for Trophy Club. And, uh, what we will also do is, is change the terms so that we actually get paid back a greater percentage of money sooner. So, overall, um, we come out ahead. We get something that's, I think, the community is absolutely going to love. I think the region is really going to respond to, and, uh, we'll get our return on our money pretty quickly. So-
All right. So, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve an amendment to the TERs portions of agreement with OTD LLC and OTD TC2 LLC, authorizing the mayor or his designee to, to, uh, sign the documents.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to town and TERs portions of the agreement with OTD TC LLC and OTD TC2 LLC, uh, authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute all necessary documents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So, I have a motion by Councilmember Rowe, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Lamont. Um, Stephen, what I understand is changing in this is, um, the percentage of how, uh, the TERs funds that are collected is used to reimburse the town for its funds. Is that right?
That's correct.
And so, it's increasing to get our money back faster, uh, for the willingness to participate in this.
That's correct.
So, so basically, in the, in the initial outlay of these terms, there was a cap of $1 million, correct?
Correct.
That, that we would provide.
That's right.
And some of that's already been provided through the Breadwinners deal that you-
That's correct.
That you mentioned earlier. So, what this is, is this is, uh, basically taking another, another chunk out of that commitment that we've made and establishing a, basically establishing the terms up, upon which it will be paid back.
That's correct.
And because it's now more than it was before, because we've now brought on a second, or not more, but now that we've, we've exhausted more of that $1 million commitment, we are also, we're changing the ratios to accelerate our repayment faster in proportion with the amount that we've exhausted of that commitment.
Yes.
Okay.
So, the tax increment of, uh, that entire TERs is changing fairly rapidly.
That's correct.
I, I think, as we discussed in our, uh, budget meeting, uh, a week or so ago, that both, um, the Holiday Inn and Homewood Suites, that a large portion of their increase in evaluation happened this new tax year. And, and with them opening, we should see another significant increase the following year.
That's right. And with Breadwinners opening, a very small piece of sales tax goes into that. What Breadwinners generates and what this new concept will generate over and above property tax will also come back. It also is a participation with Tarrant County, and they've been a great partner of ours to help foster economic development. We really appreciate their participation.
Anybody else have questions about this? All right, hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those approving the modification to the amendment, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Councilmember Perro moved, uh, Councilmember Kurtz seconded. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned at, uh, 10 minutes after 1:00.